Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone and wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, January 9th, 2024 City Commission. And to start us off this morning, it's a privilege to have Reverend Dr. Lori Hafner, Senior Pastor Coral Gables Congregational United Church of Christ with us today. Thank you for being here. It was great to see you over the holidays.
Thank you. We so appreciate it you being with us as we celebrate our 100th anniversary. So I invite all who wish to share together in this blessing on our meeting here today. A holy one whom we call by different names because we are a diverse people, but who has called us to live together in community, respecting the uniqueness and gifts of each and every person. Grant your presence among us this day. Help those who make decisions for this community to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. And help all of us to see the humanity and dignity of all who live, work, and visit our community, that no matter how weak or poor, we treat them with the reverence of your creation. And now may our presence and participation in form enrich and inspire our lives and also challenge us anew to live out the principles and vision that we share in common. Amen.
Reverend, thank you for being here with us once again. Please send our best to your worshippers and your well-wishers there who join you every single week in celebration. It was 100 years is a giant milestone, but more importantly, it's 100 years of service because what your group of individuals that serve, what they do in this community is to be commended. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you. I'd like to now for the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Fernandez, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item A1 on the agenda, Vice Mayor.
We have a proclamation declaring December 16th, 2023 Coral Gables Congregational United Church of Christ Day. It was on our agenda before, but the pastor was not available, so we were doing it today. Whereas Coral Gables Congregational Church was organized in 1923. And initially, we met at a parsonage on Columbus Boulevard that was donated by the Coral Gables founder, George Merrick. He hired the famed Pittsburgh architectural firm Kinnell &amp; Elliott to design the elaborate Spanish-style edifice, which includes a grand baroque entranceway and a graceful Spanish bell tower, reputed to be patterned after a church in Seville, Spain. And whereas after its completion in 1925, the church embarked on community involvement through civic service, faithful worship, Christian education, and promotion of music and the arts. Its justice work has been around issues of accessibility, civil liberties, hunger, living wages, farm workers, immigration, racism, homophobia, xenophobia, and voter registration. The church's compassion has been extended far beyond its walls to Haiti, Guatemala, and Peru. And whereas as the first church of Coral Gables and the first public building constructed in the city, the building was used for city council meetings until City Hall was completed. In the early years, the University of Miami held graduation exercises in the sanctuary. And whereas today, the church has the distinction of being the first church in the state of Florida to be designated a national registered building by the National Register of Historic Places. It was so designated in 1978. Whereas now, in its 100th year, Coral Gables Congregational Church of Christ has built a reputation for unparalleled commitment to progressive social action and justice. It is known for its community arts program, summer concert series, and conservatory, the early childhood center, the fair trade marketplace, vibrant and engaging worship, and its outreach to the community, and for the congregation which loves to dance. Now therefore, I, Vinslago, as Mayor of Coral Gables, along with the members of our City Commission dear, do hereby proclaim December 16th, 2023 as Coral Gables Congregational United Church of Christ Day. So I'll share with you, Pastor will say a few words, that we're called out of the box because we're a little bit different from the rest of the congregations out there. And yes, they do dance and they unfold the box and turn it into a dance floor and have a very vibrant group of people there that are engaged in our community. We're blessed to have you. It was the first church and it's directly across from the Biltmore Hotel. So you can see how the strategic vision was for Merrick to put it directly across from the Biltmore Hotel. Pastor, if you would like to share some additional history with us that I did not cover, I'd appreciate it.
You did very well, Commissioner. Thank you. And it's always such an honor to know that you, as a member of our congregation, are a part of the City Commission and helping to make decisions that affect our community. As the Commissioner said, we, and Vice Mayor, said that we are a church that uses the line that no matter who you are or where you are on your life journey, you are welcome here. And we truly mean that, that our doors are open to all. And as part of that, we mean not just members and those who attend regularly, but the community. And we have always served in the congregational tradition as what is called a meeting house. And the meeting house in the congregational tradition sat especially in the northeast and in New England and as the pilgrims arrived in the center of the community, in the center of the town or the city in which they resided and lived and worked and worshipped. And the idea was that the doors would always be open so that folks could come and be educated, that they could be nurtured, that they could have public forums and political action and be engaged in the community. And we believe that George Merrick brought that vision as the son of a congregational minister to Coral Gables Congregational United Church of Christ. And we've continued that tradition to make sure that our doors are open and not again to our members, but to the entire community. So we are honored to have shared 100 years here in this community. We thank you for this acknowledgement and we invite any of you at any time to come and be a part of our community, our concert series, all the many other offerings that we have. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Anybody have any other comments? We could get a photo. Ready?
Thank you.
Trip on myself?
Recognition of Coral Gables Fire Department Rescue Four Crew by the City of Miami Fire Department. Welcome, Chief.
I'm gonna have to work from this side since City of Miami took over that podium, but uh... Good morning, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. On September, excuse me, December 3rd, our crews responded to an inter-facility transfer request at Coral Gables Hospital. It turned out to be a very significant call of a City of Miami Fire Department employee. And they're here to recognize our crew and I would like to welcome Chief Zarabro to our commission chambers and let him explain their recognition and request for that. Chief?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Peter, hello, City Clerk. My name is Joseph Zaralman. I serve currently as the Fire Chief for the City of Miami Department of Fire Rescue. And as the chief had mentioned, it was important to us to come out here and let you know a little bit about what your fire department did to help ours. We are currently undergoing our physical agility tests for the process to hire our next group of firefighters. Sometimes we have city employees that are even part of the department, but not firefighters, that go out and take the exam in an effort to become a firefighter. This particular individual had a, or has a son who is a firefighter with us. So his desire was to become a firefighter and work alongside his son and, you know, let them both experience this life together. And he currently works for us as a heavy equipment mechanic. And he went out, he trained, when you see him, you'll see he's in excellent shape. He trained for the exam and he killed it. He did it in under four minutes and did absolutely excellent job. Shortly thereafter, he started feeling bad. He pulled off to the side of the road. He was driving. He pulled off to the side of the road. He called one of our members that he works with in logistics. But he was disoriented. He did not know where he was. He could give some indications of what he thinks he passed. So our firefighters, our members, were driving up and down the street looking for him, turned on their lights and sirens and said, "Do you hear me? Do you hear me?" And shortly thereafter, he said, "I hear the siren. I hear the siren." And then he said, "I see you. You just drove by me." So we were able to find him. And when we did, he looked so bad that there was no other choice but to throw him inside the pickup truck and take him to the closest hospital. The closest hospital was Coral Gables Hospital. When we got to Coral Gables Hospital, shortly thereafter, his heart stopped beating. He stopped breathing. And it was full-blown, all hands on deck. Let's see if we can save a life. And that was the premise under which one of your rescues from Coral Gables was called and asked for assistance because we knew even if he was able to regain a heartbeat and start breathing on his own, he was going to need definitive care outside of Coral Gables Hospital. So your team was dispatched. They arrived at the hospital and they actually assisted in the cardiac arrest. One might say ran the cardiac arrest. I haven't met the lieutenant yet, but I'm eager to meet Lieutenant Carlo Meltow. Did I say that right? Melito. Because my understanding of my team's assessment of his skill and capability was that he controlled the room, he was calm in the face of potential chaos, and really assigned tasks, told people what they needed to do. And what we learn in our business is the calmer you can be, the more directed and focused you can be, the better chance you have of saving a life. And he did exactly that. He directed everybody in the room and he did an excellent job. We were able to successfully get our family member breathing again and bring him back with a pulse so that we could get him over to Jackson Memorial Hospital and get that definitive care that he needed. And it was in large part due to the quick action, the participation, the recognition, just the capability of your crew in Coral Gables Fire Rescue that allowed us to be here today and recognize your crew, but do it with one of our family members present. Because one of the things that makes us the happiest that we could possibly be is when we reunite victims and rescuers. And in this particular case, the victim happened to be a member of our family and your family saved ours. So we are indebted to you. Thank you very much. So at this point, with your permission and with the chief's permission, we would like to give just a token of our appreciation to the rescue crew that responded that day and, as I said, was able to make a difference, make an impact in our family members' lives. And my initial plan was to give them each these plaques, but I think what I'd like to do instead is call up Mr. Jose Estrada. He's sitting in the back of the room. And Jose is the member of the family that I'm speaking about. He is here today because of all of you. All right, so dying was easy. Now you gotta read this plaque in front of everybody. Just read the plaque. I'll only make you read one for the three of them.
Thank you guys for allowing me to be here. Thank them for allowing me to be here and saving my life. I mean, it's beautiful plaque. Probably a lot of good information on there, but I would like to say something to them. I would like to thank them, thank them for their hard work. I know they must have a lot just to bring me back. I mean, I don't know what to say. You guys brought home a husband, a father, a grandfather back to his family during the holidays, during an important time, you know, it was something that I would have missed on. I got to see my youngest son graduate. My oldest son is sitting in here. He's a firefighter. And you know, you guys brought me home, brought me back to my family. So that's, you know, incredible. I'm glad you guys were the ones that showed up. I'm glad, you know, you guys, God put you guys in my path and thank God that he did because let me tell you, I wouldn't be here today to be honoring you guys. This would have been something different. Would have been at a funeral instead of at a celebration. So thank you all you guys. Thank you for your hard work. You know, thank the City of Miami Fire Department for everything that they do. I'm, you know, I'm blessed to be a part of this and I'm blessed to be a part of all of you guys' lives. Thank you guys so much.
You still have to read the plaque.
Says, "In recognition for your commendable performance and heroic efforts on the scene of a medical emergency on December 1st, 2023, on this day, you and your team rendering lifesaving treatment to one of our employees when seconds mattered as a result of your quick and decisive actions. Our Fire Department family members survived a life-threatening event." "You are a shining example of the pride we, in our job and our selfish acts, we demonstrate to save lives. For your extraordinary dedication to service, we hereby recognize with the 2023 Lifesaving Award presented by..."
Say my name.
I can say the Joseph. Josie.
Detective Carlo Melio. Firefighter Christina Miranda. Firefighter Emilio Martinez.
Also today with us is, as I mentioned, his son and his mother. And his wife also happens to be a nurse at Jackson Memorial Hospital. So the family runs deep. Again, thank you all very much and I defer to...
Chief, will you do me a favor if you can? You have some of the members from the City of Miami Fire Department who will also here. Will you introduce them?
Yes, absolutely. You can all stand up. We have, you know, I'll let you introduce yourselves. Eloy, start.
Assistant Fire Chief Eloy Garcia.
Assistant Fire Chief Robert George, MS Division.
Firefighter Christine Reggari.
Firefighter Robert Garcia.
Chief Christie, Special Operations.
Assistant Chief Robert Harvey, Civil and Justice.
Assistant Chief Robert Jorge, Fire Department.
Captain Earl Hope, Fire Department.
So Chief, the reason why I asked you to do that is because I've had the pleasure of working with a few of these individuals in my professional career. One of them is Eloy, who I've dealt with on multiple occasions. The level of professionalism of your employees, they're by the book. They're very firm in regards to the code, but they're the consummate professionals. Eloy has never cut me any slack. But he is an individual along with other members who are here. And I wanted to take that opportunity to thank you for the work that you're doing along with our fire chief. We always heap a lot of praise on the men and women who do their job selflessly every single day on behalf of this community. But the City of Miami is blessed to have these individuals who are here today. And it's a testament to the relationship that the City of Miami and Coral Gables have for many years. And the hardworking men and women who, again, while we sleep, they work. And we're blessed to, we're blessed to have you here today and congratulations. You have a new lease on life, my friend. You have a new lease on life. Make the most out of it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And I could not agree with you more, the relationship that we've had. I've actually been here 34 years. I started when I was 18 years old. And throughout my entire career, the things that I've learned in special operations began with what we call now vehicle and machinery rescue, which is vehicle extrication. I learned the vehicle extrication from Coral Gables Fire Rescue. You guys taught me my first special operations class. So you're right, our relationship does run deep and we're proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So just to wrap up, we take it for granted because it's our job and we love our job. As Chief Josie just mentioned, after 35 years, I'm blessed that I have this job. I wouldn't do anything different if I had to start it all over again. But we often take for granted that every critical call is like an orchestra. And an orchestra makes beautiful sound, but it takes individuals doing exactly what they're supposed to do at exactly the right time. And today, we're blessed to witness the significance of that team working together and their efficiency and competency and knowledge. And there's always extreme pressure when you're mitigating an incident like this, but it certainly compounds when it's a family member. And in this case, that's exactly what it was. So thank you to City of Miami for recognizing these gentlemen. And thank you to my firefighters because, as the gentleman so eloquently stated, he couldn't articulate better the significance of that call than he did. So with that, as our families come together, I'd like to take a moment of privilege, Mayor, and call up firefighter Murcena. Today's the last day I call you firefighter. Congratulations to you too. All right, that's it. I think we're done. A2.
Let's attempt to take a photo with all the firefighters.
I'm Q.
Chief, we're gonna move on to...
Yeah, in the meantime, he doesn't...
Chief.
That's not a choice.
Chief, let's move on to item A3 if we can.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'd like to ask Director LeBarrieta to join me up here as we discuss our firefighter of the month. And as I stated before, on our, the side of our trucks, it says committed to our community. And that commitment goes beyond running 911 calls. And this gentleman is a shining example of when we discussed our brand and the Coral Gables brand and our participation in the community. He is a member of our benevolent association, and even though he is very active in our community with that, he takes special interest in organizing. Every year, as you know, we go around all our streets and Santa delivers candy canes to the kids in our city. But there's always children that can't participate in that because of special needs and special challenges. And through the disability board and working with Raquel, he takes it upon himself to make sure that those kids get to experience Christmas and experience Santa doing special visits. So I ask Raquel if there's anything you'd like to say before we bring up our firefighter of the month, which is firefighter Nicholas Balsera.
Thank you, Chief, for allowing me this opportunity to thank firefighter Balsera and recognize him. I think he's done this for the last three years. He's taken it upon himself. He and with, obviously with the support of the fire administration, but he goes out to families within the city of Coral Gables that have children with disabilities. And I think there's a couple pictures that I think Billy's gonna try to put up, and he visits, Santa visits them with the fire truck, and they provide different gifts for not only the child with a disability, but also the, the siblings. And I think it's, it's a great opportunity. You'll see from the pictures, if they do come up, the faces of the children, the families are all really appreciative, and this is something that he's done all on his own for the last three years with the support of, I think, this year it was a firefighter, or actually a driver engineer that had retired, Derek Robles...
Help Santa.
Who came back, who came back to, to assist firefighter Balsera. So once again, thank you so much. It really means a lot to us in the Disability Affairs Board. Oh, there are some pictures.
Quick video, as you can see.
I introduce firefighter Balsera.
Just wanna say thank you to the fire chief, fire administration, obviously the fire benevolent itself. This was started by retired Chief James like three years ago. Firefighter Robles and I were part of it when we started it with him. We decided to keep it going because of the impression it left both of us. So hopefully with the years to come, it just gets better.
How many, how many toys did you collect this year?
So as the Benevolent Association, we, we get the toys, we purchase the, the toys ourselves for the families because they have specific needs for the kids. And then we include not only the special needs kids, but like every kid in the household.
It's a wonderful thing. Maybe, maybe next year, possible, if you're interested and you have the, and you have, maybe the commission as a whole.
Absolutely.
I did it this year with the clerk, and Mr. Clerk, I think we, would you say we collected maybe about 100 toys?
Yes, sir.
We collected about 100 toys, which are donations. I bought a lot of them at Target, you know, the, the kids just want something simple.
Exactly.
Something, doesn't have to be so excessive in nature, it's just something to give to these kids who don't have anything. And we were able to donate them to the League of Cities. The clerk and I went over there and did that. Maybe next year, we can work together.
Absolutely, sir.
We can tag team the commission, the clerk, the city manager, city attorney, along with the employees of the city and your organization to take it to the next level so we can deliver as many toys as possible. I think that we work together, we'll be even stronger, so I think it's a good opportunity to do that.
Yep, absolutely.
You're welcome that, I mean.
Absolutely. I'm always welcome to making things bigger and better.
I agree with you. So let's, let's work together through the chief and through the manager...
Absolutely.
And see how we can coordinate that and then have, have everyone on the commission engage on that. I think it'd be something that'll, it'll show unity and it'll be a good opportunity to really deliver, just keep stacking on, you know, the Christmas season, the holiday season, whatever you celebrate, celebrate something, and I commend you for, for the hard work. It's beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. Let's take a quick picture if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Sitting here stretching. So if I lean towards you, I'm actually stretching my hips.
Vice Mayor, will you run, will you run A4 really quick?
Sure. Next items, A4, congratulations to Officer Michael Alamon, recipient of the Coral Gables Officer of the Month Award for October 2023. So where are our police?
There you go. It's good to see you walking in.
Let's get everybody in here.
Yes.
And fire kinda took up all, the entire room, but now it's your guys' show.
Exactly.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioners, manager, everybody. Obviously, these are some of our, you know, greatest things to be able to recognize officers and the work that they do. I think it goes unnoticed a lot of times, they just go out there and do their jobs, and they do it for what they love to do. But in this particular case, for the month of October, Officer Michael Alamon is being recognized as the officer of the month. In October of 23rd, there was an audible alarm that went out at a business at 3800 Southwest 8th Street, the Cafe Italian Restaurant. Officer Alamon was one of the first arriving officers. And this is where it's not just going to the call, it's actually seen when you get to the call. He observed a male in a parking lot of a business next door that was kinda suspicious. He kept watching him, they were separated by a fence. He, he was in the back of a different business at 800 block of Galliano where he detained him. A second alarm had gone off earlier at the Pizza Hut, which was right next door. And when they did their investigation of the businesses, they realized that there was a rock had been thrown through the window of the businesses and all, all the businesses there. They went to look at all of them, they found out some of the items that were missing, the damage to the three different businesses there. Detective came out, was able to get them to confess to all three of these businesses, and not only was his subject involved here, the same similar way that he got into these businesses, City of Miami, South Miami, Kendall and Hammocks districts from Miami Dade County had similar MOs, and they were looking at the subject to see that he might have been involved in theirs. So this is like an outstanding recognition of what goes on. He not only went to the call, but he actually was observant because most people would not see that right away. He actually observed a suspicious person, and it turned out to be a subject to have broken into three businesses. So to me, it's a fantastic job by Officer Alamon, and for that, he's been elected as the officer of the month for October of 2023.
We're blessed to have you, and like you, for you to say a few words.
Sure. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for having me here. Really happy to be here, and it's a, it's a big honor to be honored in this, in this setting, in this environment. I know my partners love to be here too, and whenever they get recognized, when they, when they do. I was just doing my job that night, just a normal call at the time, and, and like I said, I was doing my job. So I'm really happy to be here. I'm very thankful for my family who showed up in support and my, my supervisors who showed up in support as well. I also wanna say it wasn't only me that night. I had my partners there the entire time, helping me along the way, so thankful that they were there as well, and thank you again for, for this recognition.
Congratulations. How long you been on the force?
I've been sworn in for about two years, sir.
How do you like it?
Loving it. I've been with the city for two years before that as well, so.
So to, to receive this recognition within two years of, of being of service is something to, to really be proud of. I know that they're very diligent in regards to selecting who gets this award, and it's a testament to not only your hard work, but it's a testament to these individuals that are behind you, the command staff, which have done their job when they released you to start working on our chief who's not here today, to ensure that you provide the best service, so. And it's amazing, it's amazing, and I see it, I see it in my neighborhood, I see it in other neighborhoods. A lot of the young ladies and, and men who are, who are now joining the force, you know, go that extra mile. You know, at nighttime on the way home, I see the lights are on, they're looking, they're searching, they're, they're passing through neighborhoods, they have the lights on, and you know, they're making sure that they're present and they're felt, so. And that's a testament to the command staff that's here and all the hard work that they do, so I just wanna say thank you to all of you. I know we're honoring this gentleman, but thank you, and we can always take an opportunity to say thank you for your hard work. So congratulations.
Congrats.
Take a picture.
First with the commission, and then we'll get your family.
It's time to get rid of the point setters. What do you think?
Why are we up here, why's the family up here?
Get up here.
You're not gonna get out of this one.
Before, before we're up here, you're up here, so.
We'll take a picture, don't send it to the box. Get up here. Get next, get next to, get next to this gentleman. Introduce this.
I think you are.
Everybody ready? One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three.
Okay, a little bit of challenge?
One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Do you know that the guy who did that drank glass of wine?
No.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
B1, regular city commission meeting on November 14th.
Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Call in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Moving on to public comment.
First speaker today is Michael Maxwell.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here with us.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. Clerk, and Ms. Attorney. I have a little present, I'd like to speak to you today about the, the issue of streetlights. I know I've spoken with most of you regarding this issue, but I'd like to bring up a little something here just to share with you to continue that conversation. I'll also be back to you later this morning, you know, for a resolution item, you know, by the Historic Preservation Board. I've put together just a simple, you know, citizen's presentation here for you, just, just to go through, just for a few minutes. Regarding the streetlights, streetlights, as, as all of us know, are more than just lighting. It's urban design, it's decoration, it's branding, it's what our community is. And so Coral Gables began installing streetlights in the early 1920s as part of its master suburb, and the street lighting was always unique to Miami Dade County. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There's a 1923 photo of the country club all of us go to and enjoy, and this is outside of the park, they park right now, and you can see that those are two streetlights that are not only representative of what we had, but they were the majority light throughout the community as Mariup developed and into the 20s and, and even after the city sold the lighting system to FPNL in 1926. You can see that here in the commercial district, there's a representative of streetlights. All of the streetlights that were put in were called white-way lights at that time. So streetlight was not a term that was generally used, it was called a white-way light, and it didn't matter what kind of light it was. It was a white-way light because we had whiteways. Most of the streets were darkways. Next, please. Thank you. Here's an advertisement in the January 4th, 1923 Miami Metropolis. And you can see that in the picture there, Dammers and Gillette are advertising the beautiful streets of this city. And what kind of streetlights do they show? They show the standard city silver streetlight that we have today. Next, please. At the time that the city was developed and really into the 30s, these were the three standard streetlights that the city seemed to have. I'm sure that there were others mounted on a wood pole or something, but this is what we can see mostly in pictures and in correspondence. You can see the Fink Light, which, this is surrounds the Douglas Entrance, and those lights were used at some of the most important places in the city. They weren't on Coral Way, they weren't at the De Soto Fountain, but they were at places like the Douglas Entrance. There's a, you can see the standard metal, and then you can also see what I call this transit line fixture. You know, we had a wonderful trolley that went through here, and those lights are attached to the electric lines, you know, that the trolley went to. The fountains and the, all of the monuments and entrances that we have all had the same type of what we call a luminaire. So you can see that the fixtures in there all match what was there. Everything was silver, everything had a look so that when you came into Coral Gables, you knew that you were in a special place. Thank you. You can see the transit light after the war over here on Miracle Mile and... eighty, and began working diligently with not only the Historic Preservation Board and the Board of Architects and other advisors, but with the Florida Power and Light Company and Public Works Department. After a while, about a year, it was, it was an Arcadian fixture, which you can see right here, was selected, and it's actually in the catalog of this company, and it's called a Coral Gables Light Fixer. And this is the one that's been in use, you know, really since that time. So they provided this to FPL, told them FPL, and FPL came back and said the following: "Company-owned fixtures will normally be mounted on poles of the company's existing distribution system and serve from overhead wires. On request, the customer, you know, of the customer, the company will provide special poles and underground wires at charges specified below." In other words, this is their rate base. We all know that FPNL has a rate base, they have to go to the Public Service Commission, they have to take everything that everybody asks them for, and then have it approved. And what we're asking for is to come back and take a look at that, if you would, please. So that, you know, in nineteen eighty-six, FPNL purchased these lights and installed them for us. We don't have the capability to do it. They first went in on Segovia, they're still there, they look great, haven't been taken out, and so this is what we have. The light I'm showing you right now, though, isn't on Segovia, but it's exactly like the one there. This is over by the Douglas Entrance and was just installed. And if you look at the ground plane, you'll see that there's a new base, and there's the, the markings out for the new wire. So they put this in, and yet they're taking out poles exactly like this and putting in black poles, which are really not appropriate and haven't been here. If you would, please. Thank you. You know, being a guy that's been involved with cities for over forty-five years, I have to have a map. And so I went around town, and, and all these, the red lines that you see on the map, that's where the silver standard white-way lights are. Now, they're intermixed with some of the Denman Fink lights, and, you know, I'm thrilled to have those back, that's just the best thing, I've been advocating that for years. And Mayor, and all of you here on the commission, I really applaud your efforts for it, it's so unique, and I hope that we take advantage of that and continue to use those lights in even more special places. But the whole idea here about this is to say, look, we have a lot of these things already, let's don't change them, let's reinforce it. Let's also look at, see what we can do to, if you would, please, go to the next one, to change these streetlights, because these are the most common streetlight that we have in Coral Gables. The wood pole that you can see, the one mounted on a concrete pole, or the Cooley Hack concrete pole, if you, go to the next one, please. And then we have other streetlights. And these other streetlights are generally, with the exception of the one in the middle, and that also happens there, too, are generally at private developments, but they're on city right-of-way. Why doesn't the city say, hey, we've got a brand here, use our streetlight? You get to put it in, you get to pay for it, but please use ours, and you could use our great Denman Fink lights if you wish. If you go to the next one, please. We have, the one in the middle is about four of them, and they're over at the French Village on Hardy. The one here, let's see here, on your, on your right, is all throughout the northeastern apartment district, and they've been there since close to dirt, because I remember them there over forty years ago. And then the one over here that you see on the far left, that's the Highway Department, and that's on Eighth, you know, Calle Ocho. And then if you go to Bird Road, the Highway Department has another one entirely, which we don't have a picture of. I could go on and on and on, we've got lots of these things, you know, but the really cool thing is, when you walk in, when you cross that line, from wherever it is, from Dade County, or the City of Miami, or South Miami, and you come here to this special place, you know, it's street jewelry embraces you. If you would, go to the next, please. We have a new monument, you know, that we put in, we put in the black lights, nobody really thought about that. And then we have these other kind of street poles that I really like, those are the ones that should be fixed, and there's quite a few like those, ones without hats, or ones that are broken, or that are severely tilted over. So, if you would, please. So really, this is, this is not just about history, it's about brand and urban design, it's about how we want our city to be, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit further. And I highly recommend to the board, and I will do it again when I read the resolution, that we take a look at this and we do it in a deliberate way, that we take this opportunity to not only continue to brand and make our city great, but also to come up with standards that make it easy for us to not only identify where we are in the community, you know, no other city, no other area, you know, in South Florida has streetlights like we did, nor the color that we have. We are unique. So with that, I'd really recommend, you know, to consider this, and I look forward to speaking with you again about this issue shortly. Thank you very much for your attention, and thank you for anything, if you have a question, I'm happy to answer.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting that together, it took a lot of work, I know you took your time, so really make sure you drove home the point of the importance of restoring and reviving our history. I think we're gonna go over it a few times, I think there's two items on the commission that we'll hear together that address this issue, and I welcome you to come back again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think you'll notice also from the commission, I think we're all on the same page in regards to what we want to see. I just think that we need to bring FPNL, which is my understanding that FPNL will be attending the next commission meeting, to have a conversation in regards to, to what can we do to, you know, get a little bit of uniformity as we address lights moving forward. And you brought up something that I hadn't thought about, I think is a great idea, is the issue as developers continue, you know, to build throughout this community in one form or another, or we invest in this community, there should be uniformity on that front. Even if it's something that's existing, we should, like we're doing with the white-way lights. We just got back ten, I was there the other day when they brought them in, and we're gonna get about another eight that are in really good shape, that are actually working. So those, again, will be refurbished, and they'll be put somewhere prominently, wherever the historic preservation and the manager deem appropriate. And I think that's something in the works that shows our commitment. Now, the issue is the standard lights that we really need to focus in on and see how we can, you know, achieve the goal, achieve the goal, because the costs are pretty significant.
You know, the cost, I mean, Mayor, you know, one of the things that I really enjoy about FPNL, and I do enjoy FPL, I think it's a wonderful company, and they've really proven, you know, that they're good community citizens, but, you know, I want to, I want to bring your attention back to a few years ago, when FPNL said that it was gonna cost thirty thousand dollars a house to Underground, and how in recent past, not too long ago, it's now not going to cost anything. So, you know, I mean, these things have a way of working, not only working themselves out, but, you know, to the benefit of the entire community, making it better.
I think, I think to your point, and you bring a very good point, I worked with the manager for years, meeting with the president of FPNL on multiple occasions, to see how we can bridge the gap so I wouldn't have to go to a referendum vote and have to spend close to, I think it was two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars to Underground here in the city. And we found a way, a compromise, and we got that project started last year, and it's something that hopefully over the next ten or fifteen years will significantly revamp our infrastructure here in the city. Not only revamp it, but also make it more redundant and beautify the city, especially our tree canopy, which in some areas is killed or destroyed as a result of the power lines that run through them. So I agree with you, I just think that this is a process that we have to be honest with ourselves, it's gonna take time. Like, for example, the white-way lights that we're refurbishing now, we had to take out almost two mil, I think it was a little over two million dollars from Art and Public Places, which, again, was something that I didn't want to do.
Right.
I didn't want to do, but I pushed that forward because I think it's something important, and we can see these lights as, not only historic, but also as art, and we're able to bridge that gap with the help of our city attorney to find a solution for that. But this is a multimillion-dollar situation that we're in, and we have to have real conversations with FPNL and see how we can bridge that gap, and maybe somebody on this commission needs to be named. I welcome any of my colleagues, whatever they like to name, so we can have someone dedicated to work on this issue with FPNL to find a solution. It may take six months, it may take a year, it may be resolved in two weeks, who knows? But I think that once we have further conversations with FPNL, I think we can find that uniformity. But I agree with you, future developments need to come online and, you know, find that uniform color, that uniform look, so we have something a little bit more standard across the board.
And if we go back to even replacing some of the lights that have been in, you know, that's not a problem, because these lights are reusable, the wiring's reusable, everything. You know, we've been through lots and lots of hurricanes on these things, and the lights have all been there, and they're still there, so we're having an enjoyable time, and, you know, our record shows that we've had a wonderful conversation, just as you said, Mayor, with leadership by the mayor, by the manager, and by the commission to do this. And this was a multi-year process that previous commissions, previous managers, and all went through to come up with what we've got. And, you know, it takes a long time to evolve, you know? So when we've evolved into the best city in South Florida, if not the best city in Florida.
Thank you for putting it together, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, we have a complete presentation ready for the next commission meeting.
Okay.
And we also have asked FPNL to join us at the next commission meeting.
So what I would like to do, when we have that presentation for the next commission meeting, I know it's Commissioner Fernandez put the item on the agenda, I'd like for you to be here, obviously, anyone you'd like to bring as part of the board, that's one of the reasons why I sponsored the Landmark Advisory Board, I pushed that forward, to bridge that gap and to find an opportunity to make sure that we are addressing our landmarks and that they're not falling behind, because I'd rather, I'd like to have the landmark, you know, making noise, advisory board making noise that these landmarks are falling behind, we need to address these issues. And there's a lot of people on that board that are very, very well-versed on issues of historic preservation, landmark, and we have a great team here. So I'd like to have you here at the next meeting, to make sure that you're part of the conversation, and it should be a conversation that's had by everybody in this community.
And it is a conversation, Mr. Mayor, there's no accusations of anything, this is a positive, you know, this is a positive direction for our community that will only make it better.
We started, this was started before, this was started like in the nineteen, when was the time that this was approved, this rate?
About five or six years ago.
No, but before that, it was, it was like, I think it was twenty years ago, wasn't there a discussion on it, on the light poles? I don't know where, maybe I'm confused about some.
But the new, the new rate started about five or six years.
So, again, the point is that we gotta, we gotta figure out a solution and find something that's appropriate, and we'd love to have you and everybody else in regards to that conversation.
Mayor, thank you, it's an honor, it's an honor to be with you, and I thank you all for your consideration and your time. Thank you all.
So I'm gonna take the moment just for a short advertisement. My landmark advisory board appointee has sent me an email indicating that she needs to step down. So if you know of anybody that is interested in serving, I'd like to have a reappointment for the next commission meeting, so that slot is filled. It's, you know, it's an important board, I think we've, you know, this commission is consistent that we, this is an important issue, we talked about it during our joint meeting with South Miami about branding, and so I'm happy we're moving forward on this.
And if I may, I think Marlon Ebert is seeking to be appointed to a board, I think that's something that might be right in her wheelhouse.
Yeah, probably, probably is, so I just got the email yesterday, so I've been reaching out to various members who are also interested in historic preservation, and Marlon I've known for years, so I know she would probably fit well.
Next speaker is Tom Wells.
Sir, good morning. Good morning, my name is Tom Wells, I live at thirteen-ten Coral Way in Coral Gables, and my law firm office is at nine-oh-one Ponds, which is the American Airlines building also in Gables, in the Gables. I spoke at the commission meeting on December twelfth, and was told that the monthly construction schedule for John Bell Construction, to complete the renovations of Burger Bob's, will be published and accessible to the residents to monitor the progress. Here's the page of the construction projects currently on the website, I'll give that to the city clerk when I complete my discussion, it was last updated in May twenty-twenty-three, there's no reference of Burger Bob's on that construction page. In addition, the, I can monitor the permit, the current permit right now is twenty-three dash oh-eight dash one-eight-seven-seven. Unfortunately, that only tells me about the inspections, it doesn't tell me about the construction schedule. On the John Bell Construction Contract, Section nine-point-one-three requires monthly updates, and so it would be good for the residents to understand the progress of Burger Bob's renovation. So I'm just here to request what I requested at the last meeting. Please post the construction schedule for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Would you be so kind to give us an update in regards to your schedule?
Substantial completion is for July twenty-ninth of this year, substantial completion.
Okay. July twenty-ninth?
Of this year.
Okay. And quick question, where are we right now? I haven't driven by in a few weeks, so I haven't, I haven't really seen, how's the progress coming along?
The progress is coming fine, it just started, and the progress is coming fine.
Okay, can we, can you do me a favor and do the commission a favor, please? Can we have the, the construction schedule up online by the next commission meeting?
I will check, I thought it was up already, we've been, we've been working on, on the Firehouse Four, Firehouse Four, the contract was signed Friday.
Okay.
And so now we're gonna jump on this. The project manager for this project has been out for two weeks on vacation, so we will, we will take care of it.
So if you may. Good morning.
Good morning, Martha Pantin, Communications. We did put the information up in the Parks page, I will send you all a link, and if you would like me to put it in any other location, we're happy to do so, and we did include photos as requested by the commission at the last commission meeting.
So the schedule is up?
The information we have is up, I will send you the link shortly to all of you, so that you can see what we have up, and obviously, we are happy to make any changes that you would like, and if you would like us to put it in another location, we can do that as well.
Can we put it on the homepage?
If I may.
Pardon me?
Can we put it on the homepage?
On the homepage, we can put it under news, we cannot put it as one of the five things, but we can put it definitely under the news section.
Do we have a Burger Bob section right now?
No, we do not have a.
I'm gonna make it even easier. So what I would like to see is, for example, we use a project, a system in construction called Procore, we're not gonna put a Procore for access, but what I would like to see is there to be a link, Dropbox, where people can go in there and see the schedule, the schedule for the project, construction, and monthly update photos. Maybe we can put it on the first of every month, we can have an updated schedule, and we can have updated photos, maybe ten or fifteen, and it can be just its own simple link, it says Burger Bob's.
Okay.
That way you don't need to have it on the homepage, you don't need to have it on the Parks page, you don't need to have it anywhere except for just on Burger Bob's, and it literally will be updated like we do the first of every month.
Mayor, Commissioner, the monthly update will be done very quickly, as I mentioned, the project manager is on, is on vacation, just got back today, yesterday, and that will be updated very soon.
Okay. So can we have that, can we have that done?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, and one more request, just have them test it in the search bar, if you put in Burger Bob's, it can link right to it.
You said you were gonna send us a link, right?
I will.
Can you take a moment and sit with Mr. Wells and show him how to go into that link? You said there's already a schedule up?
Yes, it's under Parks Projects and Updates, so I will definitely.
Thank you.
Let Mr. Wells know, and I will send it to all of you in case you get any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pantin.
There is a link on the city's homepage for current projects, correct? In general construction, there was.
For general construction projects, but those are planning projects, these are not just, these are not city projects.
But I thought we had added city projects to that.
I think they're from, and I don't want to speculate here, because I'm not exactly sure, I do believe that they are for sort of bigger projects, general projects, but we will definitely look into it and see what we can do.
Okay, and if, I mean, if that already exists, if we could add it to that as well, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pantin. Mr. Clerk?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda?
Before the vote adopting the consent agenda is taken, is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
No. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Perfect, I'm gonna take E-four first, we have people here, and I'd like to see if we can get everybody out of here a little earlier.
Mayor, E.
And then I'll be taking E-eight, because I know we have the chamber and a few other people here also.
Okay. E-four is in ordinance of the city commission, amending St. Philip's School Site Plan approved under.
I think they're from, and I don't wanna speculate here because I'm not exactly sure, I do believe that they are for sort of bigger projects, general projects, but we will definitely look into it and see what we can do.
Okay, and if, I mean, if that already exists, if we could add it to that as well, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pantin. Mr. Clerk?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda?
Before the vote adopting the consent agenda is taken, is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
They have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Perfect, I'm gonna take E4 first, we have people here, and I'd like to see if we can get everybody out of here a little earlier.
Mayor, E?
And then I'll be taking E8, because I know we have the chamber and a few other people here also.
Okay. E4 is an ordinance of the City Commission amending St. Philip's School Site Plan approved under Ordinance Number 3576 to replace an existing building with a new pre-K building located at 1109 Andalusia Avenue, Coral Gables, Florida. All other conditions of approval contained in Ordinance Number 3576 shall remain in effect and providing an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial item, so anyone who will be testifying today should be sworn in by the city clerk.
For those who will be appearing on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial provided today will be the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Laura Russo with offices at 2334 Ponce de Leon Boulevard, and I am here this morning representing St. Philip's Episcopal Church and School. I have with me Reverend Mary Beth Conroy, Ed Diaz, who is Chief Operations Officer, Norma Diaz, who is Head of School, also supporting us is Sissy Slesnik, who is a parishioner, Octavio Santurio, who is the architect of the project. I'll give you a little bit of background, St. Philip's has been in the city of Coral Gables as a church for 80 years, the school has been in existence for 70 years. For those of you who don't know the exact location, it is located on the block that is bounded by Coral Way to the north, Andalusia to the south, Columbus to the west, and Cordova to the east. Back in 2001 through 2003, St. Philip's underwent a master plan process, and in that process, it was proposing a new building, but during that process, it underwent a total review of its operations, conditions were imposed, limiting the number of students, setting up the drop-off operation, legislating certain landscaping, making sure that any changes to a site plan would go before a public hearing process, making decisions with respect to colors of the building so that the school would blend into the residential neighborhood, parking for employees in the lot to the east of Salvador Park, and also dealing with special event permits for the special events that were held either by the school or by the church. Again, to put it into geographic location, the school is located immediately north of Salvador Park, that as you know, has a whole playground section, tennis courts, a pickleball court, the little parking lot to the east, and a dog park now. The request that we are making today is to demolish an existing building that sits at the southeast corner of the property on Andalusia, and replace it with another building. The idea is, well, the reason for it is the building was old, had sagging floors, and had a lot of issues, and it made more sense to demolish the building and build a new one. The new structure will be approximately the same size, it will house the same two classrooms, pre-K 3, pre-K 4, a multipurpose room, and storage area. The difference in the square footage is that there is now a covered walkway that is a canopy, and it's an awning, and that for security purposes will be enclosed, and it will connect to another building on the campus. Let's see, the Board of Architects has approved the new building, we went twice to the Board of Architects, they wanted windows on the eastern side of the new building, one of the conditions that was imposed in the 2001, 2003 master plan would be that no building would have any windows on the eastern side. Board of Architects insisted that it would look too institutional, which is what we were trying to avoid, and so they asked that we change that condition, and the windows are fixed and operable windows, they're meant for an aesthetic purpose, not to function, they are actually on the portion of the building that's closest to the front, which is adjacent to the driveway and garage of the adjacent neighbor to the east of us. The balance of the building, which is in back, which would face the single-family neighbor to the right, is solid, and there's extensive landscaping that's several feet wide that was put in back in 2003 as part of the condition for the original site plan. We appeared before the Planning and Zoning Board, staff recommended approval with three conditions, that the windows remain fixed and inoperative, that we keep every other condition, including the limitation on the number of children, and that we heavily landscape the front part of this building. During COVID, the front part of this building was gravled in order to facilitate the drop-off when we first started going back to school, and so it has remained gravel, that gravel will be removed after construction, and that area in front of this will be heavily landscaped. So right now, the drop-off is set up, there is a drop-off for the older grades, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade are dropped off in front of the school, four parking spaces are coned off, and the parents come in going east to west so that the children can be dropped off on the sidewalk side and not on the street side. A neighbor that, who is here as well, has appeared at the Planning and Zoning Board, and an additional condition was added to the approval, and the condition was that the church landscape and maintained the swales of the properties from Coral Way to Andalusia. And so we are here to respectfully request that we make, that we keep the conditions that were imposed by staff and eliminate that condition, and I'd like to explain why. First of all, those are not adjacent neighbors, those four properties, one of them happens to belong to the church, the one on the corner, the northwest corner of Coral Way and Cordova belongs to St. Philip's, the other three are not adjacent meeting, they don't abut the school property. We are not proposing an increase in students, so we are not making a bigger impact, the same number of students, 180 have gone to this school since 2001. We are in an area where the increased activity and need for parking has come from the beautiful playground equipment that now adorns Salvador Park, having used it as a mother, it is a vast improvement from what it was 30-some years ago. There is also, as you know, very active use of the tennis courts, starting from early in the morning, now that one of the courts has been designated a pickleball court, one of the most popular sports in, in the country. And you also now have a dog park, so it is a neighborhood that has a lot of activity. The school, I mean, is there 172 days out of 365? Yes, the church does have its activities, but I would submit to you that the school is not the only reason why there's an issue with parking, and I think it's not fair to penalize the nonprofit school and institution that lives there, but rather we should try to work as a community, both the city and the church and school, to see if we can find a way to alleviate the parking on swales. I brought, I want you to know, the school tries very hard to make sure that parents don't park in the swale, that doesn't mean they don't, but they try very hard. And I just brought two samples of newsletters, so this newsletter is published monthly, and it goes out to all the, the school parents, and I highlighted, there's a whole section on parking, I'm gonna pass these around. So it's not, it's not something that they say once at the beginning of the school year during orientation and just say, okay, we hope you guys pay attention to it. No, they're reminded on a regular basis, and I can tell you that Ed Diaz, who's Chief of Operations, has been called by parent, by nearby residents to ask parents to, you know, leave the driveway or whatever, so we're well aware of it and we try working, hard to prevent it from happening. But I think the burden of landscaping and maintaining non-adjacent neighbors is just, seems more like a penalty to a school. If I were asking for an increase in students, I would say, yeah, of course, because we're gonna now have a bigger impact on the community, we're bringing more cars to the area with more students, but we still had the same students, the same number of students for the last 22 years, so let me pass this around.
Since this is a quasi-judicial item, I would like to disclose that I have received emails regarding this item.
I've received emails as well.
Same here. So have I.
I think everybody has, so moving on.
All right, so would I respectfully request that you approve the proposal for the new building along with the staff-imposed conditions, and eliminate the condition of landscaping the, the properties between Coral Way and Andalusia on Cordova. And we're here to answer any questions you may have, and I would like to reserve some time for rebuttal if necessary.
Madam Director? How are you?
Good, thank you. So, good morning, Jennifer Garcia, client official, if I could have the PowerPoint, please? Okay, so we're here for a major amendment to the approved 2002 site plan for St. Philip's School. As indicated, this site is south of Coral Way to the east of Columbus, north Andalusia, and to just west of Cordova. This is an aerial of the campus, we're talking about just the southeast portion of the campus, which is now a existing house typology, which has converted into a preschool. So the future land use designation is religion, religious and institutional use, the zoning is special use. So the ordinance of number 5, sorry, 3576 is what approved the site plan, and then there's conditions regarding any changes to the site plan, have to require client zoning board and city commission review and approval, as well as the no openings on the east facade. So again, we're talking about the southeast portion of the site, and looking at the proposed building, it would have classrooms 1 and 2 for preschool on the front, the backup house equipment is located west of the building, away from the single-family adjacent house, restored swale on the front of the, of the, of the structure of the proposed preschool building, a front yard, the storage is gonna be acting as a buffer between the existing home to the east and the actual preschool area, and in the back is the multipurpose room and playground. This is rendering what that looks like, again, this was approved by the Board of Architects. Went to DRC back in April of last year, Board of Architects a couple of times, an approval in August, they had their neighborhood meeting in October, client zoning board recommended approval in November, and here we are for first green and city commission. So the letters were sent to the property under 1,000 feet, as required by code, and that happened three times so far, it was posted twice, three times for website posting, and once for newspaper advertisements. So staff has determined that it's consistent with the comp plan, and it complies with all the findings of fact, which is part of your packet in the staff report today, started to conditions of approval. The first one is the non-operable fixed windows on the facade facing the adjacent abutting neighbor, neighbor to the east, this swell improvements on the front, and as she'd indicated, the client zoning board wanted to expand that and have it on Cordova as well, between Coral Way and Andalusia, to prevent parking and other issues that the school, I guess, has been dealing with for quite some time. And all other conditions that are listed in Ordinance Number 3576 would still remain in effect, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you wanna see, I have a little PowerPoint that just shows you a little bit, if we can get it.
Perfect, thank you.
Put it up a bit PowerPoint, please. Next slide. All right, this is the existing building, so this is the building that's being replaced, the one again on the southeast corner of the campus. This is the new proposed building. This is the, the area behind the school, behind that particular building, and this is existing, and you can see there is a, this particular house had an old detached garage that actually sat on the property line, so one of the requirements of the original site plan is that this building ever came down, that garage that's on the property line would have to be removed, and needless to say, all setbacks would have to be observed. This is what the back will look at, it will now be set back from the neighbor to the east, and again, the building that you see without the arches is the one that faces the neighbor, and that has the blank wall, the building with the arches is the one that will have the fixed and operable windows near the front. This is what the space will look like. This is the multipurpose space. I'm sorry, the other, the classrooms, this is the multipurpose space, that will also be able to work so that activities, depending on weather, as you can see, it opens up to the backyard, and that's it, just wanted you to get a little glimpse of what we're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have several members of the public requesting to speak on this item, the first is Norma Perez.
She just, she's decided not to speak.
Okay.
They just signed in in case they wanted to speak, though.
Edward, Edward Diaz? Mary Conroy?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Conroy, I'm the rector of St. Philip's, I've been here for 14 years, and when I moved here, I thought I had a great vocabulary, but I did not know the word swale, and so I've learned something about it, and thanks to my friendly parishioners, they taught me that I was to maintain my swale, and that it did not belong to me. And so for all the many years I've lived here, I have replanted my swale, like I'm sure many of you have, I've endured neighbors doing construction projects joyfully, and I'm happy to be in a community that works together so that we can live together in harmony. I will say that St. Philip's is in a neighborhood that's in high demand for parking, and we struggle with the same issues that our neighbors do and those who want to attend and use the glorious park that has been provided by the city. It has only increased and become more challenging, and as Ms. Russo pointed out, we continue to ask people to ride-share when we have big events, whether it's a large funeral, whether it's a big event for the school, we ask people to observe no parking signs, to be mindful of the neighbors' driveways for their own safety, and we try in every way we can to be a good and gracious neighbor. And we're happy to work with the city and with all of our neighbors and all the constituents to try to find reasonable solutions, but I strongly believe that asking St. Philip's to take on in perpetuity to plant and maintain a non-adjacent neighbor's swale is not only unfair, it's unneighborly, and so we're here to really ask your permission to build a new building for our youngest learners, and I hope you will support us, thank you.
Octavio Santurio?
No, he's, no.
Cecilia Slesnik?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, everyone on the dais. Cecilia Slesnik, 721 Navarre, Coral Gables, and many Coral Gables addresses before that. As nearly a 23-year-long parishioner of St. Philip's and a lifelong resident of the city of Coral Gables, I know the issue of parking, I know the issue of swale, a word which, by the way, is constantly autocorrected if you've ever tried to spell it. And I know how special our church community is at St. Philip's. So as a parishioner, I understand the challenges. As Ms. Russo pointed out, the enrollment at the school is not going to be increasing, and as you saw by the picture, actually, I think aesthetically, it's gonna be a nice improvement to the block, and will make it all feel much more cohesive, which I appreciate as a Realtor. The second thing, as was noted, is that the swales are public property, and I remind that to my neighbors in my neighborhood, and as I'm selling homes in Coral Gables, I remind the homeowners that the swales are to be kept by you, but they are public property. So that's where- So that's where your visitors should park when they come to see you. If you have deliveries, if you have people coming to work at your home, that's where they should park. They should not be blocking the sidewalks. And they certainly shouldn't be blocking pub, pub, parking in the streets like you do in other municipalities. So as a nonprofit, as a church community, which I know many of you on the dais can appreciate as churchgoers, and all of you are going to go to churches in this vicinity, you can understand that it feels a little unfair. Public is, public parking is a bigger issue, right? Especially on the footprint that we're looking at. The most welcome improvements to Salvador Park. Speaking as someone who swung on those rusty swings in the 1980s, and if you did, you'll remember that they swayed a lot. And it was really fun to see how hard, high up you could go and not land in a tennis court. So the improvements are welcome. My children love them. Every Sunday when I park for, to go to church, I hear the ping and the pong of the pickleballs and the tennis courts. And my golden retriever has loved the dog park. So all of these improvements bring not only joy and excitement to the city, but obviously it creates a little bit of congestion that everyone in the neighborhood has to work with, right? The neighbors on Venetia, the neighbors on Columbus, all of the neighbors have to. So although I'm not speaking on behalf of the School and Community Relations Committee, you all know that I am a member of the School and Community Relations Committee, right? S C R C, School and Community Relations Committee. And I'm not speaking on their behalf, but because I'm a member and have been, I know that every school in our community has its challenges with our ever-growing, ever-evolving, and ever-brightening city. So let's just keep that in mind as we go through this first reading and we move on to the second reading, that every decision that's made in and around schools potentially sets a precedent for all of the other schools, right? For your children at St. Teresa, for the children at ECC, to all the way to the children at Ponce and Gables and Gables Prep, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you all so much, and I hope to see you all at the Bozart Festival this weekend.
Sorry, I won't be able to make it. I'll be in Montana.
J.C. Tojos?
Mr. Tojos?
Good morning.
Good morning, J.C. Tojos, 1044 Coral Way.
Waldo Tojos, 1044 Coral Way.
And we're here to speak against what they're talking about. I mean, I'm shocked at the fact that you decided not to do what the Planning and Zoning Committee recommended in order to help the problems that we're having with parking. But aside from that, we had sent an email to you guys because we have, looking into this issue, found some other issues that we'd like to address that are important, not just to me and my family, but to our community as a whole. First, we would have really appreciated for them to reach out to us to let us know that they were no longer planning on doing what they said they were going to do. So it was kind of shocking for me to hear now that what they, we thought were going to do as far as the parking situation to help alleviate it, they're not even going to do that. And I've also been a part of the community for over 30 some odd years, and he was born here. So he also went to Salvador Park, and he was also coming to the area. And we also have five children that are, that were raised there. So we know the community really well. So this is also our family that is being impacted, not just by what they're planning on doing, but their future families. If God bless, they decide to stay in Coral Gables. So the first thing is the landscape. I can't believe you guys backed out of that. I think it's unconscionable to do so. I do think that the reason that we're having parking issues is because of the parents in the school. And the reason for that is because it's during the time period that you guys are getting, picking up your children and the children are being dropped off. So I do think it's a responsibility that the school bears, and I do think that you guys should take care of it. Second, what we found during some research is that the school's growing. They're saying that they're capped, and they're saying that they're keeping their covenant. I couldn't find the covenant to review it, so I haven't, oh, you found it?
I have a copy. The covenant is recorded in the public records of Miami J. County.
They're growing. And not only are they growing by square footage, they're growing in acquiring homes right across from my house. They bought the house right across from us, and they're using it for their school activities. So I think that the covenant has been broken, simply because if they were originally just going to be a school with their original homes and the original square footage that they have, their square footage has already grown with the new addition and changes they've made. And if you look at the plot lines of the lots, they've encroached on them. In other words, one lot encroaches on another lot, and then they expand on that classroom. And then when they bought the house across the street from us, I don't know what you guys are using it for, I'd like to know, because they do have a lot of activity going on in there and a lot of kids and parents coming in and out. So there are questions that were brought to my mind that weren't there before because of this issue. And if they've, they are going to make an amendment to the covenant, I would like some things changed to that covenant going forward in order for this to be approved. Okay, maybe.
I think that, how do you call it, first of all, this thing about what the Planning and Zoning Board, it wasn't us to ask for the, for the swell improvement. It was the Planning and Zoning Board that said, hey, you, you guys, this is on you. It wasn't us asking the Planning and Zoning Board. We, we just went up there and, how do you call it, said, we have a traffic problem. They're blocking our driveways. You know what I mean? And this happens, how do you call it, constantly. And I kept, I keep on hearing it's the Salvador Park, people who come to Salvador Park, the dog park, the pickleballers. I don't see people with pickleball rackets coming down, you know, blocking our driveways or doing it. We're trying to just keep our swales like any normal one. Yes, we have normal use of swale, delivery guys, postal service, whatever. But at least with that, we could maintain our grass. We can maintain our grass. Their side looks like a desert, okay, on Cordova's side. One of our neighbors behind them has had his swale with, how do you call it, landscaping now for, as long as I can remember. We, you know, we've owned that property for over 20 years. They've had it for much more than that, so they dealt with it. Our backdoor neighbor, Mary, and, and this is what it looks like. This is what the neighbors do to our sidewalks.
And this is what the other neighbors have to do to make sure that they don't block them when the pickup and drop off.
This is barricades put up by, by, I guess, the city. The signs are being used to hold the, the, the signs alone are not enough. This is what they use to keep the people off the corners, that the intersection visibility doesn't get blocked.
Sometimes I can't get out of my house because people are blocking my entrance and exits.
Black, backdoor neighbor, she had to put it because her driveway's in the front, so Andalusia, corner of Andalusia, and right behind us, and Cordova, they had to put landscape in their front. Now their side is still buried. They can't do anything. It's, you know what I mean? We can't maintain our grass. And it's not the people using the dog park. It's not the people using the pickleball courts or tennis courts. It's parents. And we reached out to the pastor, with all due respect, in 2022. We went in and we sat with her. Nothing's come from it, nothing. The Planning and Zoning asked them, hey, reach out to the neighbor, just try to take care of the situation.
They didn't reach out?
Nothing. We've tried to be neighborly and to say that we're not, that asking that neighborly. No, it was the Planning and Zoning Board. All of them agreed that, hey, this is on you guys. This is not on them. So we just want a solution, but we also want to know, there's two issues here. They bought that house in 2060 and now has a exemption. So they're paying $67. So I imagine if they're having a school, a necessity educational exemption on that property in the corner right across from us, and by the way, we're only 130 feet, we might not be adjacent, but our radius, we're 130 feet from their closest property line, their campus property line. So if they're there and they're claiming that exemption, what's the use of this property? Because this is what's causing the issues. If they're going to keep on buying single-family homes and converting, converting them to school space, defeats a purpose. They have no parking. They have zero parking. This shouldn't have been done with 30, 40 years ago when they expanded or they did the disamendment and all that stuff. They shouldn't have taken place because they just didn't have the parking. This is the, they have unique circumstances that other schools, okay? St. Teresa, Ponce, Coral Gables, all those schools, they have parking. They don't have parking. They do not have parking. So we need to come up with a solution, okay, where, where they actively patrol or do something, but they're not doing that. But then we also need to know, what are their future plans? Are we going to keep on, they're one single-family home away from owning all of Coral Way? Okay? Hernandez's home and the one that they bought here, and that's it. We're done. So what is the future plans here? And what are we going to do about the parking? Because, yeah, we do want it addressed. We don't want our parking, our driveways blocked, and we don't want our grass dead. We want to be good neighbors, and we want them to have their building. We don't have an issue with their building. Who doesn't want that? You know what I mean? I don't have an issue with the building. We do have an issue, two things, future plans, expansion, and our parking situation. It's not actively being dealt with. You could put that in those papers and those newsletters. Hey, how many emails do we send out? And we just go, pass, 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 pass. That's the newsletter. Same thing here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But before, before you leave, Mr. Clerk, how many, how many individuals do we have?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. Okay, so we'll close the public comment.
I'd like to, okay.
Just want to put something on the record for my colleagues. Is there one or two readings here?
Two readings, sir.
Three, okay. So we may move forward as a commission today. I think it's important to continue to strive for the best education for the community. I mean, again, we're having major issues here in South Florida, especially here in Coral Gables. And addressing the needs to educate our young children here, we have a disaster. I mean, I get calls constantly from people, hey, help me, help me try to get my kids into the school. And I tell them the same thing, I said, I have no power to get anybody into any school. Call your school board member or call the owner of this school and see if they can help you. But again, at the end of the day, we fail on that front. But I also, I also, I also have an issue with the encroachment in the residential neighborhoods. There has to be something done for the future. We got to start working together in, in planning. I'm going to say something that you're not going to like, and maybe some of your residents may not like, but we need to figure out a way to either build some sort of parking structure, one or two floors, something that works for the community that can be done in a way that, you know, wraps the front, the first floor in maybe offices or educational, because if they're going to continue to expand, you know, at the end of the day, you're going to have to address the parking issue because you're not going to be able to meet the parking needs. You're not going to. And there's also, I was looking at the, at the minutes from the, from the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. They were clear about, obviously, a swell package. That already exists in legislation. It's there. I wrote that legislation. It's very simple. It's something that, again, doesn't cost anything. It's, the permit is free. It gives you guidance in regards to a swell package to put on, to basically avoid any parking on the swale. Your biggest concern right now is the issue of parking and the, and the condition of your swale, correct?
Their growth.
Too.
I understand that. But the growth thing is going to be a long-term issue that, that, that they're going to have to work with their lawyers and the city to find a way to address it. Because if you're going to continue to grow, and like you mentioned in other schools, they don't have the parking. They don't have the parking if they're going to grow, if they're going to grow. They haven't told me they're going to grow. I don't know anything about that. But you're making a statement that obviously their plan is to continue to move, to grow their footprint.
How many single-family homes are we going to keep on taking down that shouldn't be taken down?
Again, I understand that, but I just wanted to put on the record that we're going to have to find some sort of solution, and the solution's not going to make everybody happy.
Well, I think a parking lot there, structured mayor, I think that you're going to definitely get the neighbors out. And guess what? It's not going to happen.
Okay. But then let me tell you, then what do we do? We're going to park people, let's say, at the billboard and, you know, bring them in?
You see, that, this is where, that's not what we signed on for.
I understand.
And let me tell you something, the other ones are expanding. It's not us. We haven't broken the covenant. They have.
Okay. Well, we don't know if they broke the covenant or not. So let's be very careful what we say here because at the end of the day, we're under, we're all, we're here.
Are they allowed to knock down this house according to the covenant?
They are allowed to. That's my understanding. But again, we deal with this, we deal with this with a lot of other schools that come before us. For example, Gulliver came before us in regards to an expansion of, of their footprint. And, and they have to provide documents on a continuing basis to, to show how many people are actually enrolled in the school. A lot of schools have these covenants in place to show that they're following the rules. This is nothing new. So I have to look into that with the city manager, and my colleagues will do the same thing. They'll look at that with the city manager and with Ms. Russo. They'll look at the documents to make sure that they're adhering to the documents that must be submitted as per their agreement. If we're not going to talk about expansion today, that's something that we're going to talk about in the future, fine. But I just want to put on the record, there has to be a solution, has to be found in the neighborhood because obviously this is not working. And if the swale, the Planning and Zoning Board is asking for cooperation from your client to put together some sort of swell package, I want my, I want input from my colleagues to see what do you think is the best opportunity here? And I know that Ms. Russo wants to respond, so I'd like to hear from her first really quickly before we open up to the group. But we got to find an answer here because it, it can't be, it can't be no swell package. Then the only option that we have is we got to get a public, a public safety aide to basically be parked there. You know, when, when school drop off and pickup, to make sure that nobody is encroaching or blocking, blocking, blocking the, the, the driveways. Because by the way, we've dealt with this before. We dealt with it with Sunset. We had multiple meetings on the ground. I mean, we had irate neighbors who were telling us, listen, I couldn't get out of my driveway for 45 minutes. People were so desperate to avoid the line on Sunset that they would park their cars. And then what ended up happening was, you know, I had to wait 45 minutes to go to work or to a doctor's appointment because I couldn't get out. And this is nothing new. It's just, again, it's the, it's one of the things that we're dealing with as being one of the cities that everybody wants to live in and send their kids to school.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sensitive to the need to the community in regards to, how do you call it, their educational needs for the broader.
But you also want quality of life, and I respect that.
Specific to this location, we're probably at the point that we shouldn't have been at because of prior decisions made here with single-family homes, that should have been schools with no parking. You know what I mean? And for me to be given right now a solution that, hey, maybe we build a parking garage in this neighborhood, that will go, that's going to go rarely.
It wasn't my intent.
I know, I know.
My intent was that we need, we need to find some sort of solutions outside of, you know, to, to, to alleviate parking. And what are the two options? Three options. Either you bus people in from somewhere else, you build a surface parking lot for that. You got to buy more properties and knock them down, or you have to build a parking structure. There's no other way to do this.
Here's, here's the only solution, like, one of the.
You already have parking issues.
We already have parking issues, but we also have single-family home that has been purchased by the school, which has single-family zoning. And I'm bringing it to your attention today, on this day. So they go, let it go on the record, okay? That we do not want this continued expansion of single-family zoning and single-family homes, okay, being built into future classroom space.
I want to address one, one point before we hear from Ms. Russo, okay? So we can, we can approve today, moving on to second reading. But one of the things that I would want is for there to be a real discussion between you and the school representative Russo, and that the manager, the manager's team be engaged on that front. Because there has to be, I will not approve this on second reading if we don't have a solution to, at a minimum, because we're not going to find the parking solution today. We're not going to find it in the next five years. You know, we have, at a minimum, we have to find something so that your quality of life is not impacted. Okay? I haven't been on the ground to see the, you know, the drop off and pickup. I've done it in other schools, and I know my colleagues have also. So this is something that maybe we should see firsthand what we're having. And I've done it where we don't even, we don't announce that we're going. So I want to see it when it's really happening. Now we're, now when parents have been notified. But I think that what we need to do is, we need to do is, we need to have a conversation between first and second reading. Maybe the city attorney can also join the conversation to find a solution to address what the Planning and Zoning Board and what your requests are. There has to be common ground. Ms. Russo?
Mr. Mayor, we did that, by the way.
I know, I know, but let me, let me hear from Ms. Russo.
We've reached out several times.
Then I want my colleagues to give me input and give me advice on what they'd like to, would like to.
So I'd like to rebut a, a couple of the statements. So with use of the swale, I'm going to submit some, some photos that were taken, not only of the neighbor's home, but of the church house across the street. And Reverend Conroy will come address the use of that property. And there are people parked on the swale of the church property that are cars that visit the home across the street. So the use of the swale is being used as, you know, a public right of way for parking. So I just want to submit these pictures because it's not just happening on their side of the street. It's happening on the church property and people that use his home. And some of these are taken at six in the morning, so they're not taken, you know, when drop off.
Should I also put these pictures in?
Yes.
Just make sure the clerk has them, please.
Give it to the clerk.
And so I can let you know that I've been representing this school since 2000. I believe it was 2000 when I was first hired, 2001 through three, when we did the master site plan. And I can tell you that the, that the master site plan did involve a new building. The church, as you know, owns a home in which Reverend Conroy lives. They also own a home on Coral Way. They have visiting clergy, and all of this was addressed in the declaration. They have visiting clergy, and all of this was addressed in the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants. We are here precisely because one of the conditions from the Restrictive Covenants was that if any building were to be demolished, that it would have to go through the public hearing process and be approved and go, and, you know, be approved by the Board of Architects and be approved. Because a church owns a property, doesn't make it part of the school, but for that, I'm gonna ask Reverend Conroy to just slip in the rebuttal, the response to that.
Still, Mary Beth Conroy, still confused about swales. The St. Phillips has had, bought a series of homes throughout the years, long before my arrival in two thousand sixteen. The home at eleven hundred Coral Way became available, and we purchased it for residents, for our head of school. We rented it for two years before the head of school moved in. We had a head of school who lived there for two years. And then since that time, we have housed clergy there. It is not used for classroom, it is not used for children, it is not authorized for use for children, and we have no intention of growing the number of children at our school. What we want is better space, but that house has never, ever been used as a meeting place for children or teaching or anything. We have a visiting bishop who comes for a month or two at a time. We have, um, that's really all we've used it for, is a residence. So it sits there empty a good part of the time, and occasionally, we have someone stay there. That's, it, it's a residence.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Ms. Russo?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I would just like to say that, once again, I think this is a, a community, a neighborhood issue. It's not an issue that should lay solely on the, on the shoulders of St. Phillips. I'm aware of the swale package. In fact, one of the neighbors, we did have a neighborhood meeting, which the Toys did not attend, but the neighbor, Dr. Foraci and the Lopez Cotardi, we talked about the ability to landscape your swale, since there's been so much use of a public swale. I happen to live on Country Club Prado, so I'm well aware how people use swale all the time to enjoy the city park. And if I were to be so inclined to keep people from parking there, I could avail myself of this. Dina Bell-Llewellyn has done a great job of recommending native plant material and other materials, you know, shrubs and up to a certain height, et cetera, and doing this without having to pay for a permit and facilitating the hand-drawing of it, et cetera. And I shared that information with the neighbor who attended the meeting. So once again, I ask you for approval of the building. We understand the neighborhood dilemma, but I ask you that we join as neighbors to try to figure out the problem and not lay it solely at, at the feet of a nonprofit that is not increasing students, okay? Because if, in fact, there were an increase in students, I would be saying, yeah, we're gonna have a bigger impact, I think we should do something. But we're not, and I know the school complies with the affidavit as do the other schools with respect to the student cap. So, you know, we do not want to enlarge the school, we wanna keep it a very small neighborhood school. And again, it's been there for seventy-some years.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that reminds me.
So, uh, long before I ran for office, I dealt with parking issues in neighborhoods in our neighborhood. I live within a block of Lejeune Road. There was a construction project coming in of a multi-story building on Lejeune Road, and spoke to neighbors, and we came up with a resolution, and, and the neighbors voted to have, um, one neighbor wanted a grass put in, but we went with residential parking permit signs. I warned my neighbor who parked all the time on his swale that his grass would not live, and it didn't. Because once you start driving on it, it dies. The heat of the engine, the wear and tear in the car, you have to irrigate it, all those things go into, to grass or anti-anti-planting. And then we have other areas in our city that have high traffic. We have Venetian Pool, the Biltmore Hotel, around the United Congregational Church of Christ, uh, they have high traffic as well. My neighborhood still had high traffic. In fact, I had Mercedes-Benz employees parking at my property, instead of them paying for parking for those folks. So I had a few words with Mercedes-Benz, I said, I'll be darned if I'm gonna pay for parking at my employee, so they can park at the building and you're, and you're burdening my property with all your employees. So there are solutions, and I'd like to hear, you know, I'd like for our landscape division to go out there and discuss some of the solutions with you all, because if you want landscaping, you're gonna lose parking. If you want landscaping to live, you have to water it. You have to realize now you're not gonna have the parking. But there are other solutions if you do want parking for yourself, for your guests, such as we have the fancy coquina, the, the nice gravel, all part of the swale pa-package. There are items in the swale package you can put in that require less water, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that they need no water, you have to get them established, and you can't be parking on top of them, you know? One of the challenges that one of our, our residents has, has met is you put in landscaping and still, you know, people don't care, and they roll over it because it's not their property. So, um, we, once upon a time, we required FP and L and Comcast to put plantings around their boxes. Slowly but surely, that has come and rest upon the shoulders of, of the residents. I think if you want a planted swale, you need to make some decisions on what you want, because you're gonna have to maintain it, because if you don't irrigate it, you can't expect it to live. So take a look at the residential parking permit program. The residential parking permit signs are much, much prettier. Each one of us gets some emails from particular residents that don't like parking signs, they consider them ugly. Why do we need all the signs? We have sign pollution. But the ones that are residential parking permit are green poles, extruded, and a much nicer sign and blend in with the community and don't upset some of those other resins we have in Coral Gables that don't like no parking signs. They call it sign pollution, and they wanna take the signs out. In fact, in my neighborhood, I'm getting a list of all the no parking signs from all the neighbors that want them out, so I can just have staff come out one time. And, but I would like staff to come out there and help advise between, between parking programs available. I can tell you the folks that faced the Salvador Dog Park, uh, we had a long discussion about it. I told them the options, and they said if the parking became an, an issue on their side, that they were gonna go with the residential parking permit. That was their choice. And in closing, I'll give you the history of the word swale. And I know it's, it's funny, it's a funny word. I thought it was funny because no one else spoke it except for me at one point in time, until I moved into Coral Gables. And I learned that the etymology of it, at least locally here in the United States, came from Pittsburgh. And it's not, you know, a hidden fact that George Merrick came from the Pittsburgh area, the Philadelphia area, and that is a word that was brought over from, you know, UK English descent type word. So you won't find it heavily used outside of Coral Gables, it was transplanted here from the Northeast, and they called it Pittsburghese. You can look at, get a dictionary of Pittsburghese and find it. So...
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do have a couple of comments. I'm in the area quite a bit during pickup and drop-off, and I have to agree, during drop-off, the park should not be an issue. The park is not heavily used at drop-off time. During pickup, I do see your argument that the park is heavily used in the afternoon. A lot of parents pick up their children from other schools and bring them to the park. I think that's something that as we continue to renovate our city parks and improve the city parks in other areas, including Phillips Park, hopefully beginning next year, we will see some, a shift in, in that use, but it is something that must be addressed. Because just seeing your pictures, I've seen the cars parking in the swale every morning, and I've seen the effect that it has on, on residences. Like Vice Mayor Anderson stated, I myself have been a victim of people parking and blocking my driveway on a regular basis because of a business at the end of my block. So I have seen that impact, and in some cases, we've tried to get the people to move, and they just refuse to do so. We've had to call the police in order to get them out and remove them from blocking driveways. What I would have liked to have seen prior to this is some sort of resolution between the school and the neighbors, instead of having to get to this point where now we're basically airing the neighborhood laundry here in the city commission. Between first and second reading, like the mayor said, I think there needs to be a sit-down and some sort of resolution between both sides on something that will work going forward. If the plans are to expand, I do have concerns, because there is no parking there, and that will be something that, that must be addressed. But I think the mayor brought up a very good point of including the manager in this conversation and the city attorney, because I think it's also encumbered upon us in the city. If we have made all these improvements on Salvador Park, that we are not creating more problems for the neighbors in the area, and that we are part of finding a solution. So I think it's something that we need to work together, city, the school, and the neighbors, on finding a solution that works for everybody.
Mr. Menendez?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of Salvador Park, I drove by the other evening, and I noticed a great many cars parked, um, I guess, next to the dog park. Is that, have we always had folks parking? Because it's not, it's dirt, basically, um, between the playground area and the dog park. I just see there are parks, cars everywhere parked there. I don't know if that's officially a parking spot, or...
Mr. Menendez, we're, we're looking, I've already talked to, after the dog park, we opened the dog park, I, I noticed that that was a mud area, and we talked to Poliworks about changing that into some type of rock, like a, like a granite, so that it can, it can be used as a parking area, yet not turn it into asphalt.
Okay. Because it, it is pretty clear that people are looking for parking spots where there aren't any, and I don't recall in the past seeing cars there. I too have, I feel the same way. The project in and of itself, I think it's a wonderful project, well-presented, well-thought-out for all the right reasons, but the fact that the different parties haven't come to a meeting of the minds taints the whole process. We should be here celebrating a wonderful project that everybody can embrace, but unfortunately, there are a lot of loose ends. So that's not a positive, not only with this item, but with any item that comes before the city commission. We've had plenty of items that just seem to un, sometimes unravel, because one string is loose, they pull and everything comes apart. So let's try to avoid that. I have a couple of questions for, I guess, the city attorney, is, um... So the, the number of students that are allowed, um, let's start there, that's written where in terms of...
In their prior approval, and there's a recorded covenant as well. So, and they're not asking for an amendment to that or a change in connection with this amendment?
Exactly. And I'm not saying they are or that they will, but to understand the legal ramifications of that agreement or that document, what happens if a school does expand?
They would have to come before you and request that, you would all review it and request approval of, of an amendment to their prior approvals.
And if we find out that they've added a hundred more students or fifty more students, then what would the city have?
So they have to, and maybe the planner can come up, but I think annually, say, they submit an affidavit, isn't that...
So they, I believe they submit something every single year, every single school year to...
I, I think it's done toward the middle of September?
January.
Right, right. Each school has it a little bit differently. I think some have it at the end of September, but all the schools I've represented that have, um, student limitations provide an annual affidavit on the student enrollment.
So it's a viable legal binding agreement?
Correct. And, and if there was a violation, then we would take action to enforce the covenant, is what we would do. I'd do our request.
And I agree. There are other schools, I know the charter school on Segovia, uh, when they were approved, all the schools have their limitations. But I know people are watching, they wanna go, well, is there, is it binding? So that's good to know. In terms of the footprint of the school, Madam City Attorney, when two thousand and two, there were agreements, things that were approved, was this, the, the footprint of the school, uh, limited in any documentation?
So there is a site plan that was approved. This is one of the buildings that is part of that site plan, that it's, it was, it, the existing structure is smaller than what they are proposing. They're proposing to demolish the existing building within the site plan and, and construct a larger building.
The building itself is the same size, the extra square footage comes from the now enclosed concrete walkway for security purposes, so that you would want children know that you can't, you don't want access to children.
So this, my understanding is that this request does not change the, the boundaries or, you know, of, of the site plan?
That is correct. The boundaries remain the same.
My follow-up question, and I totally understand having a property that people can, visitors can stay, you know, close to the school, the church, when they acquired that property, and I totally support and understand having it for guests. Did that change the footprint of the campus, or is that something they should have notified the city that we've added a property adjacent?
No, they, they have a right to purchase and own property. It has, it is not connected to the site plan.
Right. And, no, I just wanna check off the boxes.
To connect it, let's just say, we're not going to do it, but let's just say, it would have to come before DRC, it would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Board, and it would be a change in land use and a change in zoning and a major amendment to the site plan.
Like I said, the fact that you're not having classes or events, it's, I understand the need for it. I just don't want to cross that line at any point, because it's not good for the school, the church, or the city in general, or the, obviously, the residents. I totally support the direction my colleagues are headed with between first and second reading. I personally suggest, don't bring this back on second reading unless there's a true agreement, because we don't wanna repeat today. And with regards to signage, um, the residential permit, I asked the city manager, that area does qualify for it, but again, things have to be enforced, and we all know, because we have traffic circles, we have speed bumps, sometimes physical additions are required, because people just, regardless of what the sign says, do whatever they want. So I'm in support of the direction my colleagues are headed with this, first to second reading.
Okay, so, so we can close this out between first and second, if I'm, if I'm getting the vibe of what this commission is headed. So we're gonna move forward on first reading, move forward, obviously, we're gonna take a vote now. What we're requesting between first and second is, okay, would you like to say something?
No, no.
I just wanna make sure.
I'm just acknowledging that we're gonna be a meeting with the city attorney and city manager.
What I would like is for there to be a meeting between the applicant and the city, city attorney, city manager, and yourself, if any other residents would like to join, to make sure that we address the issues with the swales. What are we talking about? Swale package of one form or another, or what the vice mayor said in regards to the opportunity to address resident parking, which has to be enforced? Again, that puts another, another burden of proof on, on you, because I'll tell you why, because you have to call, if someone parks there, you have to call and, and get it enforced. When you have the swale package in place, you're not calling anybody, because no one's, no one, unless they're, you know, destructive individuals and they park over the swale package, I don't think many people are gonna, are gonna park over that. At least in my yard, which I have the swale package, the ferns, you can't park on the swale. There's no, there's no opportunity. But if you really wanted to, you could, you would potentially get your car stuck in there. So my point is that we're gonna move forward between first and second reading, but there will be a meeting where you will be there. I'm also asking for the manager and for his team to please pick a date that they do not notify the applicant during school hours, to make sure that we visit and we understand, we understand exactly what's happening, either during drop-off and pickup, to get a better understanding of, of where we are right now in regards to what they're facing in that neighborhood. Are there anything else that we need to add as requests between first and second?
I just, with those conditions, I would move it, you know, they, they need to have a, a meeting also with our staff to understand what the choices are, you know, on these also with our staff to understand what the choices are, you know, on these residential parking permit signs, because then you have a decal or a paper that goes in on the car, and someone will be ticketed if you call, if they park there without having that permit sign. So make sure you study your choices and so you can make the best informed choice. You know, everybody likes something different. We don't all like the same flavor of ice cream. So the, really, the choice is in your, on you.
The goal, we didn't want to be here. But the reality is that we've reached out and...
I think I'm going to take the words, I think I'm going to take the words out of your mouth. The intent of today is to turn a new leaf and hopefully start building a relationship between the school and yourself that is, somewhere where you can become partners.
We're open to it.
Become partners, because you're not going anywhere, the school's not going anywhere, the parks aren't going anywhere. So what we need to do is work together so that we just continue to advance quality of life in the neighborhood.
Agreed.
I think Ms. Russo had a comment from a resident that you, that you, that you want to maybe deliver?
No, that was just Ed Diaz, and I told him, he came up with an idea, and I said, let's save that for when we all meet together.
I just wanted to make sure we put your idea on the record and please...
He's the chief operating officer, so he deals a lot with the, with the parents and asking them not to park on swales when notified.
We welcome all ideas between first and second. So I need a motion, if I may?
I'll move it.
Second.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Nago?
Yes. Do you know when this will be coming back, Mr. Manager? Do you know when this is coming back?
So it'd be, I think, up to the applicant when they're ready to come back, as long as we have time to provide mail notice.
I think we need to work on a few things before bringing it back.
Yeah, I think one meeting is going to be a little bit too quick.
Right. I think, I was going to say, I think we should make it for the second meeting in February to give us enough time with all our different schedules.
I think that would be, I think second meeting in February is right.
Because I think that we can, I think we can potentially resolve this fine middle ground with, with those signs that the vice mayor mentioned could be really, could really be an opportunity to really resolve it. And any, and again, now's the time to address other issues that are both beneficial for the school and for yourself, and maybe the city can do better in that area. Maybe we can be a better partner in one form or another.
If we go the route of the signs, I'll tell you right now, the signs, and the reason I smile is because the signs are being used with tape lines to hold barricades that are, that's a...
And that's what we're going to, and that's what we're going to talk about.
And they're not being enforced.
That's why I said to meet with the landscape department, they're fabulous. They can tell you, we have a nice swale package.
And maybe someone from Parks and Rec could also be at the meeting since, you know, along with the city manager and city attorney.
Mr. Manager will make sure that his team is...
I think, I think we can at least Salvador issue, park issue out, so I expect them to be there.
Thank you. So we'll, then we'll, we'll be hearing you from the, at the end of February, correct?
The end of February.
That gives enough time to have meetings and everything like that. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break so everyone can go to the bathroom, and then we'll be back for E8. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Mr. Clerk, moving on to item E8. Commissioner Fernandez, is your item?
Mayor, E8 is an ordinance to the city commission, providing for a text amendment to the city of Coral Gables official zoning code, amending Article 11, Signs, Section 11-107, Real Estate For Sale, Lease Or Rental Of Property Or Buildings, to apply same regulations to signs pertaining to the sale, lease, or rental of property or buildings in any used district, providing for severability clause, repeated provision, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. I've asked the deputy city attorney to please explain what the proposed ordinance sets forth.
So just a little on the, on the background, why I put this on the agenda, came from a resident who had asked me, why is there a difference between the size of signs that are allowed in residential neighborhoods versus in commercial? And started looking into it and started driving around downtown Coral Gables, and I did see how some of these signs are pretty large, and you have windows that...
Recording in progress.
Just have the sign up.
You need to rewind it right now.
Yeah, start all over. So, if we are doing so much to ensure the beautification of our central business district and our business area of our city, we invest so much time in ensuring that we have the right window coverings, I think it's important to also reduce the size of some of these signs that are being placed on windows, some of them for an extended period of time when they are for management companies, just to ensure that we maintain a uniform look. If we're talking about a uniform look for our lights as well, uniform look for our signs. I did have conversations with a few commercial real estate agents before putting this item on the agenda. The general consensus I got from them, and I know there are differing opinions because we have received some emails from Realtors about this item, but the general consensus was that they have not seen a lot of clients lately that have just been driving around the city or walking around looking for property. Most commercial clients have a Realtor that they are familiar with or that they use, and they work with them to find the property. So, the larger signs are not necessarily as important.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, just to give a brief overview, as you mentioned, just to give the specifics here, actually. Currently, signs in SFR, MF1, MF2, MF3, and MF4 districts shall not be larger than 40 square inches with an additional bottom sign with certain language. And then, signs in MX1, MX2, MX3 districts shall be no larger than 250 square inches. So, this would change the requirement for those MX1, MX2, and MX3 districts from 250 inches down to the 40 square inches that is permitted in those more residential neighborhoods that we discussed.
Would you like to hear a public comment? Or would you like the commission first?
Let's go ahead and do a public comment.
Mr. Clerk.
First speaker is Sarah Hernandez.
Madam Chair, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to stay here today and give you the opinion of the business community as through the lens of the chamber. As you know, the chamber only became aware of this ordinance late Friday. It has significantly hampered our ability to speak to our members and see how it's going to affect their businesses. These include companies like the Allen Morris Company, Terranova, Avison Young, as well as the Miami Association of Realtors, the Commercial Alliance. We believe we have previously addressed this issue for available retail space in our downtown area when we worked together with you over a year ago on the Window Wrap Ordinance for Leasable Space. That took into account the signage for the brokerage and the property owners as well. We have also learned that the commercial brokers are required to list specific information on their signs. And by reducing the signage from the 250 to the 40 is going to hamper their ability to stay in compliance with the DPR. Finally, even in this day and age of leasing and selling commercial properties, it's critical that available space be advertised in the window, especially ground floor retail space. We spoke with our city consultant, Midge McCauley, who reiterated this need and the fact that even the 250 square feet inches on these signs are small, less obclusive than you might see in other municipalities. We would simply ask for more time to present to our Real Estate Committee and to our business members what the commission is proposing, and allow us to look at the pros and cons and work together to find a solution that would work for the city. Of course, we want the city to maintain and continue to be beautiful, but we'd also like to make sure that we're not impacting the economic engine, which is the business community. Thank you so much for your time, for listening to me, and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Manny Chamezo.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Echoing, good morning, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. Echoing my oldest friend.
Can you put your name and-
Sure, Manny Chamezo, 1507 Sunset. My oldest friend, not because I'm old, it's because we've been friends since second grade. Great, great presentation. Echoing exactly what Sarah had mentioned. For me, it's, sign pollution is critical. I get it. You drive around the city, other cities, and you see billboards, eight by 10, huge billboards. I don't see that issue here in Coral Gables. To your point, Commissioner Fernandez, as a commercial practitioner for 38 years, I can tell you that the signage is important. It's important to identify the buildings, especially when it comes to commercial real estate. I'm not sure who you spoke to. Most of the dominant players, I know who they are. And not all property is listed on the internet. Sometimes you have to walk it and see it, especially when it comes to commercial real estate. It's not as, fortunately, it's not like residential real estate where it's a little bit more specific. Vehicle count is very important. Foot traffic is important, parking is important. So, there's a number of other things. So, my biggest question is, what's the specific reason? I mean, other than the fact that I'm cognizant of the pollution. I mean, these signs are 12 by 10, whatever the number of square inches are, and you're having this reduced to the smaller version or proposing to have it reduced. I'm wondering, with the hundreds and hundreds of other signs that I see that are billboard-sized signs, including the wrapping of the outside of these buildings when they're supposed to be temporary, but I see them being there permanent, what's the impetus? I'm just wondering, and I'll say it in a simpler, why pick on us? I'm asking you specifically, it's your-
Absolutely. You're entitled to an answer. It's really not picking on anybody. I think it's just about uniformity. It has worked in the residential space for years. I don't remember the date that I was given as to the change when it was made for the residential signs. But most of the traffic that's in front of our businesses, which are blocked by parking, is pedestrian traffic. So, the argument could be made that you're closer to the sign, so a smaller sign should not have that much of an impact.
That argument, unfortunately, doesn't hold true in the commercial space. I mean, as it is, we all wear glasses. I'm getting older. I can hardly see the little ones as it is right now. So, and if you see the font on my phone, you'll see that it's huge. You can probably read it from the dais. Moving forward, I think that echoing what Sarah had mentioned is, I believe that although it's well thought out, and I believe that your intentions are good, I believe that you need a little bit more input from the community and understand, having done this long enough, I can tell you that I don't like anyone stepping on my toes if it's something like this where it could impact our business. So, again, I thank you all for your time. I make it brief. Let's reconsider. Let's get the input from the community and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Thad Adams.
Good morning, sir. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, pleasure to be here. My name is Thad Adams, 121 Alhama Plaza, here on behalf of the chamber as well, as immediate vice chair, and also happen to be like Manny, 35 years as a commercial real estate professional here, along with 10 years of experience at the Beacon Council as an officer as it relates to economic development. And so, we just had a nice chat out there. I appreciate the goodwill and the intent, Commissioner Fernandez, of you trying to make the city beautiful, more beautiful. But there are some things, had I not been in this business for so long, that may seem intuitive, but they're not, as Manny had spoken. So, we actually believe that this is an 84% reduction in the sign. So, you're going from, you're really going to a postcard. And real quick, as we discussed, people think signs are obsolete and that everyone uses the internet and the listing services. That is absolutely not true. I have had multiple clients of mine that actually drive. Even if I do a survey, they're still going to drive and make sure. And there are properties that have signs. And it's mainly the small businesses that don't know how to put their property on the internet, on CoStar, on LoopNet. They're the ones that rely on those signs more than any of them, than any other business. So, I think it's very important. And I'll tell you that the City of Coral Gables is already known to have the most stringent sign code of any municipality in Miami-Dade County and beyond. We are in a competitive market right now. We are fighting to make sure that we maintain as much occupancy of our buildings, which is in the best interest of everyone, including to drive our economy and city revenue. And to take away any aspect of marketing a property, in my mind, will result in the potential of a reduction there. And then, further, unlike, as Manny had mentioned, you would think residential's the same as commercial. It's not true. It is a completely different world of being a residential broker and a commercial broker. And unlike residential rental and sale signage that has worked with the postcard size, commercial real estate signs are materially more important to business and property owners. And again, most of these are small businesses. Many tenants and buyers actually, as mentioned, drive through the city. And so, again, I respectfully disagree that the proposed ordinance's stated business impact of essentially limiting how many business users of these such real estate signs. I do think it will hurt our economy, have that potential to do so. It is something that doesn't just affect the real estate community. You have tenants that have space that need to sublease their space. It's their responsibility to sublease their space. If they don't sublease their space, especially in a timely manner, it can damage that business. So, there are direct implications to the business impact in this. So, I know we would, as a chamber, would like to have ample time to vet this, six months or whatever the appropriate time is, and then come back, and then let's see what the impact is, and let's have more edification on this before we move forward. Thank you for your time and for hearing my comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else in the commission?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor.
I just learned about this item really when it was published, to be able to actually take a look at the language. Language does matter. I don't think there's been adequate time to weigh the compliance requirements of the DPR, Department of Business Professional Regulation. I'm looking up some of it right now, versus the impact on the commercial real estate individuals who do this as a profession. But I do know from my experience dealing with commercial leases and entities that have to do the subleasing and so forth, and my own experience going around and looking for commercial space, I'm walking and looking for these signs, and to have these little postage stamps on there, especially when you're talking about, you know, requirements, how many square feet, you know, am I even interested in looking at it, type of thing, is a tremendous impact on the ability, not only for practitioners to be able to do the marketing, but also for the customers themselves. If I'm looking for new office space, where am I going to go look? I'm going to be walking in an area that I want to be, and I'm very particular because I like to walk to my office. So, you know, that's how sensitive some of these issues are. Or you want to be near a different type of business because you don't want to have too many restaurants next to each other. You want to go walk that area and see, how many restaurants are there? Is there a clothing store there? Is the clothing store wanting to be near the restaurant because the traffic that goes to the restaurant is going to be browsing then the clothing and going and buying that? So, the walkability of the area and the parking, et cetera, is a critical, critical issue. So, I respectfully ask for this one to be postponed until another meeting later so that we can have additional input.
Commissioner.
When I had this item discussed it on the gender review, I had a difficult time grasping visually the difference in the two sizes. I think staff, yeah, has examples of what one is. No, just if you want to go, so everybody can see the difference in size. Because I was trying to, the size of a TV, you know. Thank you, I appreciate it. It's good to know. Sometimes it's important to have visuals. You did very good. You can do Wheel of Fortune one day.
It's excellent, great idea.
Dana White.
Thank you, Belke.
I spoke to a few folks in the commercial real estate industry, and, that was a pretty good line. And they made a comment, a thought, that, and probably holds true. First off, what department in the city is tasked with making sure signage is the right size? Do we have a-
That would be code enforcement, sir.
It would be code enforcement.
It would be a code enforcement violation to violate our sign ordinance.
Because one thought was that it's possible that folks are putting signs actually bigger than what is allowed. And if that's the case, we may first want to make sure have code enforcement spend a couple of months trying to see how many businesses are using signage above and beyond what's already allowed. Because what I'm hearing is the folks in the industry want to keep it as is. They're not saying, let's go bigger. But if some are going bigger, they're tainting the businesses or the reputation of what's happening by those that are abiding by the law. So, my preference would be to see, have code enforcement, see what they can find out in terms of, are folks actually going above and beyond what's allowed? If that's the case, why don't we crack down on those individuals and then come back and see if that perhaps helped the situation that, you know, perhaps is out there? That's my take. Thank you.
Commissioner, we'll be happy to have code enforcement look at it. And they do enforce it when it's, basically, the residential's four by 10, and the commercial's 16 by 16 inches, or just a hair below that. And they should be enforcing that, but we'll make an issue and we'll-
The fact that it's now a discussion publicly, you know, we all, code enforcement, we all handle a million things. And sometimes it's, you know, we shine a light on an issue. Let's focus on that issue and see what we come up with.
Commissioner, you have any comments?
Yes, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them a little more time for some community input in your Real Estate Committee as well. And then, I guess we could take it from there.
So, I just want to talk a few points on this ordinance. First, I'd like to have Belke come up for a second so we can kind of compare. When we talk about the wrap ordinance, I know I didn't ask you to do this before. I was just kind of found out about this ordinance on Friday, so we really didn't have much time to really go over it. And I thought about it over the weekend. I didn't want to bother you over the weekend. So, when we talked about the wrap ordinance that I sponsored in 2022, how long, how long did we work on that? How much input did we garner from the community? Because we transformed wraps, the wraps that we put on the businesses now. How did we do that?
It was a process. It was, I would say, probably two to three months that we worked on it. And we refined it. We looked at other communities to see what they were doing. We talked, I personally talked to the City of Miami Beach.
We met with March Rowbridge?
Obviously, we involved the chamber as well.
The bid back then?
Yes, and the bid. Because it was, it was an iteration that we took of the Business Improvement District. They had a wrap, but we basically wanted to do it citywide also. So, it wasn't just, you know, the central business district or the bid area. So, yeah, it took a bit.
Yeah, and I remember that I also, if I remember correctly, and the clerk can make a follow records request, we also put it as a discussion item to get input from the commission before we even embarked on the ordinance process to see if there was buy-in. I try to do that as much as I possibly can just to make sure that if anybody has any input, they can, you know, provide that input, and they can, we can move forward on a process that has some sort of legs before we move further. I'll give you an example. So, the photographs in the front of homes that we see now in driveways, that was something that I put as a discussion item. I think probably one or two times, we brought it on first reading. And then, obviously, Commissioner Fernandez requested that I go to BOA. BOA was resoundly in support of it. It came back and it failed with the commission. That's what I would recommend. I would recommend that, in my opinion, is that you get some input from the chamber at a minimum, the chamber. They are the heart and pulse of the business community here. We have a great chamber. Get Mark and the chair to really give some input, to sit down. And as a licensed Realtor, I can tell you, who has purchased a good amount of commercial real estate, some of my best- real estate, some of my best finds, some of my best finds have been walking by a property. And one of the things that we're not discussing today, and I can give you examples of that, where both in the city Coral Gables and outside the city, I've been walking or driving by, and I have found a piece of property where, you know, there was a sign, I hadn't even engaged LoopNet or I hadn't even engaged the MLS. That's number one. Number two, a lot of people don't even have MLS. They don't, they don't want to pay the fee. It's not a requirement, and they don't have LoopNet. Another issue that I'm seeing is obviously the DBPR. This is something that I was researching, researching very quickly. We, we as a commission got multiple emails from Realtors and calls in opposition of this. I didn't have one person that told me that this was a good idea. But I'm always willing to look at the other side of the coin, if it makes sense. But one of the things that they brought to my attention was, listen Vince, the DBPR has certain language that's required, that's required to be exhibited on the, on the for sale or for lease or for rent signage. It makes it incredibly difficult to fit all that language on such a small, you know, little, little, little piece of document that is exhibited for sale or for lease. Another issue that we haven't discussed, but I think is something that you should consider when you're talking with all these leaders of industry, I talked to the head of the, of the real estate, South Florida Real Estate Association, which is located here in Coral Gables, adjacent to, to the, to the fire station. I know that they're in opposition of, of this issue, was something that I just thought about right now. What about for sale by owner? I bought one property for sale by owner from a lady who, in, you know, in the building that I was living in, I happened to just walk by, and she had the sign in the apartment building, when I used to live in 100 Edgewater, over a decade ago. So I happened to walk by, she was selling it for sale by owner, I negotiated with her, and I ended up buying the property. How are we going to address for sale by owner signage, which I think is something that needs to be considered? Because when you go to, let's say, Home Depot, or you go to Office Max, I haven't been there a while, but they sell for sale by owner signs, you go order them online, you just have to put your information on it. And how, how will we address that? So to me, I think that what I would recommend is that you go back and we speak with multiple community leaders to find a way to bridge the gap and to better understand what are the benefits of this ordinance? How, what, what are we going to get out of it? Because when we talk about sign pollution, and I'm a huge proponent of it, I've driven with code enforcement probably four or five times to try to remove as many signs as possible throughout, throughout the city on the trolleys. I think there's always an opportunity to reduce sign pollution. And we have a resident who, I'm not sure if he copies everyone here, but he probably does, who sends us probably on a weekly basis signs that are throughout the city that are, you know, blank because of sun exposure, that serve no real purpose, three signs in a, in a one-foot radius that make no sense. And so I, I think there's an opportunity, but this is a little bit different. Let us not forget, let us not forget that when you're talking about the City of Coral Gables, our central business district accounts for almost 40% of our tax base. So we need to be very, very, very thoughtful and very methodical when we make certain changes to how, how people can access the sale and lease of, of real estate properties here in Coral Gables. I mean, I commend you for bringing this forward, but I think there has to be a lot more discussion, a lot more, a lot more opportunity to flush this out. And as I think as probably the only licensed Realtor on this commission, I think we, we really, we really should always engage South Florida real estate, community, the chamber, any other community that, that engages in the sale or transaction of real estate.
I appreciate the input from my colleagues and from, from those in the room. I think the reason that a lot of the members of the community and the, the commission only learned of this on Friday is because of the timing of the holidays and the release of the agenda. It's something I've been working with staff since the, the end of last year. So it, it isn't something that has just come about in the last few days. That being said, I think I'm always one to get more input and be open to getting community input on these issues. And Madam Chair, would you be willing to host a, a meeting of, of your Realtors and members of your, of the chamber who are willing to sit down and have a conversation with me to discuss potential changes and how we can improve the signage in, in the central business district?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Chair, please come before us, please.
I will say, I think that Commissioner Menendez said, it could be that there's a lot of people breaking the law and not going through the ordinance that is causing, you know, somebody to come to you and, and kind of complain. So I think I'd be very interested to see what that, you know, report comes up. Absolutely, we will host this and we will bring our, our community leaders to the table to speak with you. And anyone else who would like to join?
So I would like, if we can do it in the next 30 days, just to have that conversation. I know staff will be working on the, on the code enforcement portion of it so that we can, when we bring it back, we can have your input taken into account as well. I know Mr. Trowbridge also told me he wanted a little more time to have conversations with the members. So always willing to, to listen to what our business community's needs are.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And thank you, Mr. Chamezo and Mr. Adams for being here as well, and, and the members who actually, who sent emails.
One might write them, Manny Chamezo, once again, echoing Commissioner Kirk's comment. There are a number of signs that are currently out of compliance. I can tell you, I've been here 41 years, I'm sure you've been here just as long, neon signs. You know that neon signs are not supposed to be on the windows. They're there. I mean, I see them. They're supposed to be, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it has to be six feet from the actual window. You can have neon, just can't have it up in the windows. There are hundreds of violations. So that's why I'm kind of like, hey man, what happened? You know, why are we, are we going to go out there now? We're going to go with, with, you know, an actual measuring stick and start measuring if we are two inches above or one quarter of an inch? Because there's so many violations. So I think that the first thing, if you want to start cracking down on signs, start cracking down on all signs. And then we can start focusing in on the commercial real estate signs, which may or may not be in compliance. Thank you again.
I mean, while, while I, I appreciate that, and I think that code enforcement should do a better job of enforcing, I think that the conversation here is specifically about the real estate signs. And I think the focus of what Commissioner Menendez was saying was about the real estate signs. So that being said, I guess I'll defer the item.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. Moving on to item two dash one, I think there's another item on the commission, if we may.
Yes, Mayor, do you want to bring it up as well?
Yeah, which one is that?
It is, um, item F11.
Okay. And then we'll do also my white way lights one after, which is just a-
So Mayor, if I may, two one is a resolution of the Historic Preservation Board. F11 is a proposed resolution by Commissioner Fernandez. I'll read F11 into the record, and then you can have both of them heard at the same time.
Okay.
F11 is, excuse me, is a resolution of the City Commission directing the city clerk to schedule a joint meeting between the city's Historic Preservation Board and Landmarks Advisory Board to discuss the replacement of certain Florida power and lights, streetlights throughout the city.
My item came about before I even was aware that this resolution was on there. That's why they're, they're mirroring. But basically, we had the conversation last meeting about the silver light poles in, specifically the North Gables area being replaced with the black light poles. And a member of the, of the board reached out and said it would be a good idea to have the Landmarks Advisory Board and Historic Preservation Board sit and kind of give guidance to the city on a uniform light pole. And I think that's something that as a commission, we've already had that conversation before. There was a developer that came before us with some light poles that were completely different from what we were, we had throughout the city. And, and we voted it down because it was an art in public places concept. But it changed the look of Coral Gables. I think this is an opportunity that we have to kind of hit the brakes, go back, figure out what direction we really want to move forward in, and make sure that we have a uniform look for the City of Coral Gables going forward. With these volunteer members of these boards that are giving their time and their valuable input, a lot of them with experience in this field that can give us some guidance on a, on a proper path forward.
So I'd like to add a couple of comments, because I don't know if we all get the same emails. There was one resident very, very happy about the new lights because they lacked light and they just wanted more light. So what I'd like to see is a little broader meeting to also include the residents in the affected areas so that they can provide that input. Because sometimes the, the light is too close to the tree and it needs to be moved. I do think it's an important issue on branding, that, you know, we have this discussion in an open way. I don't think it's necessarily a historic preservation issue, but thankfully, the Historic Preservation Board, you know, spotted this and said, you know, for our, our city, that we need, do need to have this conversation. So no, I'm not opposed to the meeting, but I would like it to be more of a sunshine meeting for the public, so that those who are concerned with it can participate and provide their comments. It might be a comment on the, the color of the light, the Kelvin rating. The Sustainability Board spent a lot of time on that issue. So they could chime in as well and provide information on that. Because I did look into the Kelvin rating for the lights that are being put in, and it is a, it is not a, what would be considered a blue light. It's not a 5,000 Kelvin type light. It's more like, I think, 2,500 or, or 3,000, which is softer. So it's important for involvement, so.
Another point, another point to, to what you're stating, Vice Mayor, is also the direction of the light. I've had maybe two people, one of them, the manager was with, with me when we walked on the golf course, and, and the conversation was that the light was pointing into somebody's room. So we need to put a special adapter to the light to make sure that the light pushes one way. I've said it before, it's not the first time I say it in commission, for the first time since I've been in my neighborhood for 12, 13 years, we've never had the lighting that we have now. There's a brand new poles on Camposano, on Santa Maro, and it's been incredibly well received by the neighborhood. So I just, I also got that email today from the resident, who out of the blue, I don't know who the resident was, for some reason, they only copied a few of us, stating that they were, that they were in favor of the lights and that they were very happy just the fact that they had lights. And they mentioned that they were fine with the black poles. Like I've said before, I don't have a problem whether they're black or they're silver. But we also have to be very careful what we say. These are not historic poles. They're not historic poles. They're not. They were installed in the 80s. They're fiberglass. And I recommend, my colleagues have all done it, but I recommend that everyone walk these poles so you can see the exact condition of these poles up close and personal. A lot of them are in very, very poor shape. So it's not only about returning the poles, if that's in discussion, it's also about finding a solution to, to bring new poles, if that's what's going to happen. Because they were in pretty, pretty rough shape. They're made of fiberglass, they're not steel poles, they're not concrete poles. So they get some damage on them very easily if something hits them. One of the items that I'm going to be bringing up here, this has nothing to do with this, but I'm just bringing it up, is the issue of maintenance for the white way lights. They never, they never, for years and decades, they never maintained these poles. That's why we're putting something in place, this commission, to really address the white way lights that we've spent millions of dollars, and we're going to spend millions of dollars forthcoming on all the new ones that we found in Broward, to make sure we bring them back to their original splendor. But we got to maintain them, because they're not every 15 years, 20 years, we're going to have to redip them. And again, we've seen what happens with a water tower. It was a million dollars, now it's going to be $2 million as a result of the escalations in construction costs. So this is a, I'm more than willing to have this conversation. I'm in favor of it. I hope that FPNL is feeling generous and they want to help us. Hope we can find a solution. Maybe we can take the existing poles, maybe we can paint them, maybe we can change the fixture. I'm up for an entire conversation on something that will make the community happy, beautify the community. But we also have to come to the realization, you know, what we're going to ask, they're going to push back, and we're talking about millions and millions of dollars here. So.
Commissioner, you got something you want to say?
Um, well, quite honestly, and I mentioned it in the gender review, the discussion of the white way lights and everything that's come after, I've never tapped on light poles so much in the last few weeks to see if it's fiberglass or what material it is. I didn't know it was fiberglass, and still, thanks to you all, I started tapping on them. It's, it's-
Commissioner, can I, can I ask you a quick question? Since that, since now you told, since now you said you've been visiting, and I saw you out there, I drove by you when you were looking at one. Did you take a close look at the, at the base to see how bad, poor condition the base?
Oh, yeah, no, no, they're-
You know what that's from, right? That's from cutting, cutting, you know, cutting the grass and, and, you know, you can't-
There's rust on the ones that aren't. I mean, it's, you know, until you get close up and you start observing it, you realize there's a problem. I, I think I'm, I'm supportive of having that joint meeting. I think what the Vice Mayor was saying, also to open it up. Perhaps they can find a venue that allows room for the public to attend the meeting. But just like the mayor said, open to solutions. And I think the best way to start finding solutions is to open it up for community input.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The next commission meeting will be presented, we'll have a, a presentation concerning, we have the lights, we have quite a number of different kinds of lights. We have the white way, we, the silver lights, we have the white way lights, which are cast iron, and those were, were done quite a number of years ago. We also have another group of lights that are cast aluminum that we maintain, that we replace. And then we have another silver lights, which are the, the fiberglass lights, which are a cheaper light, smaller, cheaper light. So there's actually three types of silver lights. And, and then we have a, we have Cobra lights, which is probably the most, one we have is concrete and, and the Cobra head. So I think we, we, next commission meeting we'll have a, a presentation showing all, all the systems that we have, and it's quite a number of them, and also the, the cost involved in, in replacing them. And the cost involved whether the city maintains it or, or the, or FPNL maintains it. And I've already contacted FPNL to see if they can jo, join us for the next commission meeting presentation.
Okay. So I, I think the discussion we had last commission meeting was not to halt the process on the installation of the light poles in the areas that do not have lights, like the area, like your neighborhood where there weren't lights before. I think the focus of this meeting is to find a process for the replacement of these silver light poles, which are the ones that, like you said, they're not deemed historic, but they are part of the historic look of Coral Gables and something that people have seen as the look of Coral Gables for years, instead of having these black light poles replacing them, which are the look of basically anybody who has ticked it off the list for FPL. So I appreciate everybody's input. I will, I would amend my resolution to include the Vice Mayor suggestion of having it being a sunshine meeting for members of the public to participate. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to move forward.
I'll second.
So, so just for clarification, a joint meeting of those two boards would always be open to the public because they are sunshine boards, each of them? So it's al, already open to the public?
I think it could be advertised.
Correct.
That it's-
Certainly.
You know, we advertise community meetings, that it's more than just two boards, that we're-
Happy to advertise-
We're encouraging the community to come out.
And you would, you would allow public comment out?
Correct.
Commissioner, why don't you direct the manager, direct the manager to publicize the meeting and allow for public comment?
Right, right. And make sure we include the-
We'll advertise the meeting, Mayor, if-
Okay.
And I, I would say, I'm sure it'll take probably a few weeks to get this going, because
I know that there's issues with the notices. We'll be discussing that later, because of the cost of, of notices.
These do not have to be published in the newspaper.
They're probably-
Okay.
So we don't have that issue with this one?
But historic preservation does need to be-
When it's a quasi judicial, certain, certain matters, but this would not have to be noticed in the newspaper.
All right. So what I would like to see done is for it to be noticed on the E-News from the moment that a date is given on each E-News going forward, so the folks are aware that this is coming.
Mr. Manager? That is, that is the commissioner's request.
I'm going to ask that you also send it to the liaison, liaison for the Sustainability Board, because they spend a lot of time on lighting issues, talking about the color of light, Kelvin rating, et cetera. So they feel included as well.
We'll let the boards know, we advertise it through all our mediums.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So that's my motion.
I second that.
Commissioner Fernandez? Yes. Commissioner Menendez? Yes. Vice Mayor Anderson? Yes. Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Yes. So moving on to item E1.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, on two one, I did have a member of the public requesting to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, go ahead, please.
Mr. Maxwell?
Thank you for taking this issue up. It's moving forward. There's progress. And I really appreciate all of you having an open mind about taking a look at this. Everybody wants a street light. Everybody should get a street light if that's what they want. You know, our streets are safe. But let, let's have a standard and let's have community discussion about it so that everyone can not only have input, and then we can honor what it is that we do and say as a community. So thank you for your efforts. And I'd still like you to pass the resolution.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, does anybody have any else they'd like to say? All right. E1.
E1 is an ordinance of the City Commission amending the Cocoa Plum Phase One Security Guard District as created by Miami-Dade County pursuant to County Ordinance 95-214 to expand the scope of services to include additional-
the scope of services to include additional security measures, including but not limited to security cameras. This is a public hearing item. Assistant City Attorney Gustav Ives can present the item.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Happy New Year. So this item has not changed from first reading. This is basically just modifying the special tax district to allow for additional security measures. I believe the intent is some cameras, but it's basically just expanding the scope of the existing taxing district to allow for additional security measures. There's no financial impact, there's no added change to the actual fee currently being charged to the district, so nothing's changed from the first reading.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, just for the record, are there any speakers?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, moving on to E2 and E3, which are related.
Mayor, since they're related, I'll read them both into the record, and I ask that we consolidate for purposes of the public hearing. E2 is an ordinance of the City Commission amending Section 1-2, Definitions and Rules of Construction, Section 2-464, Same Authority to Fix Schedule of Charges, Method of Determination, Section 2-1091, City-Owned Property, Sale or Lease Generally, Advertised Public Bidding Process, Section 18-2, Canvas of Returns, Duty of Commission, Declaration of Results, Section 34-60, Statement of Costs, Filing, Publication of Work, Costs and Leans, Section 34-239, Forfeiture Proceedings, Section 58-53, Statement of Costs, Publication, Section 58-119, Notice by Publication, Section 62-329, Procedures Relating to Applications, Section 62-331, Adoption of Ordinance, Section 78-281, Requirement for Underground Utilities, Section 101-109, Notices, Section 109-41, Permit Application Procedures, Class 1 Permits, and Section 109-42, Same Class 2 Permits of the City Code in Order to Provide a Definition of Publication, Remove the Requirement for Newspaper Publication, Providing for Repeated Provisions, Severability Clause, Codification, and Providing for an Effective Date. E3 is an ordinance of the City Commission amending Section 1-104, Jurisdiction and Applicability, Section 8-109, Moving of Existing Improvements, Section 8-106, Certificates of Appropriateness, Section 14-209.4, Section 14-215.3, Notice and Hearing Procedures, Section 15-102, Notice of the City Zoning Code, in Order to Provide a Definition of Publication and Remove the Requirement for Newspaper Publication, Providing for Repeated Provisions, Severability Clause, Codification, and Providing for an Effective Date, the Deputy City Attorney can present.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Just to remind you all, this is a change to our City Code and Zoning Code that was presented to you on first reading last month that removes the requirement for newspaper publication, but allows publication by a newspaper or an online website as in accordance with Florida statutes. There have been a few, not changes to the ordinance itself, but to our implementation of this that I wanted to mention to you. One, there was a change in the whereas clauses that while we are ready to do this, the county has not yet designated the official city website, so this change can still go forward. It just means we probably will not move to that online publication only until that county establishes that website. And as mentioned, we will make sure we do a big education push when we shift to that. And then just overall, just to, to remind you all that this does not prohibit newspaper publication, it simply allows online publication in accordance with Florida statutes. Once the county has designated that official website, we are ready to go and looking forward to it, and looking forward to the cost savings, but we need the county to designate that website before we can switch over.
Yes, sir.
I, I did speak with, the clerk and I spoke with Commissioner Cabrera's office yesterday. Commissioner Cabrera is the one taking the lead on this issue, but this is something that will not be happening for some time. They haven't even started the process, the legislation is still being worked on. I know other members of the commission have reached out to the Commissioner as well and have been pushing. The conversation I had with the clerk was on ways that we could potentially continue to notice but save some money. I know that the discussion that we had yesterday, Historic Preservation's first meeting, the notice for their advertising is more than half of their budget for the year. So I think one of the options was the Neighbor's Section in the Herald, and you had also talked about community newspapers, I don't know if you all.
Looking into that.
You're looking into that.
So community newspapers will not meet the legal requirement.
Okay.
As you pointed out, because it's published every other week, not every week.
So what about Miami Today?
Are they published on a weekly basis?
You need it?
Every day.
Every day, but is there another option?
We would, we could look at the circulation.
Yeah, we can look at any publication, the Florida statute says that it has to be published at least once a week. There's, there's other requirements as to, you know, readership and things like that. However, we feel that the, the Neighbor's Section of the Herald might be the one that is the most affordable. That meets the, the requirement as far as readership and the number of residents that receive it and things like that.
How many, how many people read Miami Today?
We don't know, we would have to review.
So we'd have to look at their audit.
We have to look at.
Yeah, there's an audit that we'd have to review and see if they comply with the requirements in state law.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see, I would like to see how many people read Miami Today.
Certainly, we'll work with the clerk's office on other options in the meantime, before the website is ready to go. Just one thing to keep in mind is that when we deal with the, these publications that don't publish as often as the Daily Business Review, we may have some more delays in publication and items coming back on second reading as we have to comport with those advertising schedules. But we will certainly look into all options because we, we want to save money as much as we can until we get this website rolling. As you mentioned, it's been a huge change in cost for advertising.
So do you think we'll have an update and that information from other publications by the next meeting?
Certainly, I think we can provide an update then.
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
Do we need to approve the publications that are used, or is that something that's up to staff to decide?
The clerk's always had that discretion.
But again, these two items today shouldn't affect our ability to use any publication or electronic publication in the future, it simply allows that as an option.
All right, um, we have no public comment?
No, ma'am.
Any more comments? I'll, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
I'll move the second item.
I'll second.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item E5.
E5 is an ordinance of the City Commission providing for tax amendments to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code, amending Article 10, Parking and Access, Section 10-112 with Selena's Parking Standards, creating provisions for considering reduction of parking requirements for affordable housing located near a major transit stop as required by the Live Local Act, Chapter 2023-17, Laws of Florida, providing for repeated provisions, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item.
So, good morning, afternoon, sorry, afternoon, Jennifer Garcia, Plaine Official. So staff, as requested by the commission, are going to give a presentation about the Live Local Act and its impacts on Coral Gables. We'll run through some excerpts of the act, highlighting different issues and how it impacts Coral Gables, and I'll close with legislation that was just written in the record about parking reductions. If I could have a PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So the Live Local Act, also known as Senate Bill Number 102, became effective July 1st of last year, 2023, and intended to address the state's affordability housing crisis by preempting local zoning regulations. It also allowed access to over $800 million of funding through various financial programs. So the city, according to Live Local Act, must authorize development, if the development has at least 40% of its residential units to be deemed affordable. And that's up to 120% of the adjusted median income, or AMI. And the development is only allowed to be in our mixed-use districts. So we have three mixed-use districts, MX1, MX2, and MX3, that'll be applicable to, and you can see that on the map here. The map on the left side is our northern portion of the city, which shows MX1 along H Street, MX3 more or less on Ponce León Boulevard, a mix of mixed-use districts in our CBD and downtown area, as well as on the map on the right side is our southern half of the city, and that's showing mixed use in our Design Innovation District along US1, as well as the urban center down by the city of South Miami at Red Road and Sunset. So affordable, affordable is defined by Chapter 420 of this Florida state statutes to mean the monthly rents, including taxes, insurance, and utilities cannot cost more than 30% of the local median adjusted income in AMI. In that case, it's Miami-Dade County, so it's not, it's not considered for a city for municipality, it is going to be for the countywide, and that's according to the Florida state statutes. So what is affordable, there's a resource at floridahousing.org that has these rent limits that we will be referring to. So you can see that from the snippet here that there's different percentages of, of the base of the AMI, which in Miami-Dade County is 74,700. And what's highlighted at the bottom is 120% of that amount. So for example, a studio in our city to be deemed affordable would be just over $2,100. And that would be the maximum rent that would be allowed. For another example, a two-bedroom would be just over $2,700. So the Live Local Act also automatically approves height to be the highest height within one mile. As you know, we have three zoning districts, MX1, 2, and 3, and that limits the heights. However, it's preempted that they will have the highest height within one mile. So these are maps that our amazing JIS team provided for us, and it's showing a radius from those MX2 and MX3 districts. MX2 district is a 70-foot height limitation that's shown in bluish-gray color, and the 150 is the MX3 maximum height, which is shown in the, the greenish color. And then the density is also preempted by the state to be analyzed citywide. So while the height is analyzed within one mile of the development, the density is analyzed to be citywide, to be a maximum. So the maximum density in our city is 125 units an acre, as a reminder, density is calculated by units per acre, and our maximum is 125. So we do have areas in our city that allow for unlimited density, that is our Central Business District and our Design Innovation District. And if affordable housing development would develop in those areas, they would be allowed to have also unlimited density, but not outside.
But there's, if I may, just, just as a refresher, there may be unlimited density, but you're still required a lim, a limit in regards to the size of the unit, correct?
Yes, so all there's.
So that's, that's kind of your bookend.
Yes. So all there's zoning parameters such as FAR maximum, such as open space.
I just want to be careful, because we're mentioning unlimited density, and people are thinking, oh my God, you can build thousands of units in, in one building. You can't, because, you know, you end up eating away at the square footage because you have a cap on a minimum size of, of, of a unit size.
Correct.
And parking, and parking.
And parking, so you, you keep going higher, and the higher you go and meet the parking requirement, the parking pedestal's going to eat away.
Yeah, so the FAR, the floor area ratio is very important to control how the scale of that development, because 3.5 FAR, which is our maximum in our mixed-use district, is quite limiting when it comes to reaching 190 feet. So the act also preempts approval process that has to be approved administratively for the density, the height, and the land use. So properties in our zoning code right now, we require a conditional use process for properties that are greater than 20,000 square feet, and that would go through the Development Review Committee, the Board of Architects, Planning and Zoning, and the City Commission. This would also apply for any development that would fall under the Live Local Act to go through that process, but the commission would, would consider other zoning code regulations such as FAR, such as open space on the ground level, parking as well, all those other zoning considerations. The, the commission is preempted to have considerations when it comes to use, height, and density. And any property that's less than 20,000 square feet would, would not require the, the lengthy review process, it would go through DRC, our Board of Architects, and from there go to permitting. So in summary, the preemption is for the use, the density, and the height. The use is for mixed-use districts, I just went through the map of where those districts are in our urban areas, the density is analyzed citywide, and the height is whatever's allowed within one mile of that proposed property. So the legislation before today is what the local, local, sorry, Live Local Act is requiring the city to consider, and that is parking reductions within a half a mile of, of the development. And the city can define what a major transit stop means. So your legislation before you is to find major transit stop as a metro station or the intersection of two or more major bus or trolley routes with frequencies of service intervals of 15 minutes or more, or less during morning and afternoon peak commute, peak commute periods. So taking a look at the live, sorry, taking a look at the better bus network, there have been some improvements to our, our bus system, and so this would apply to Flagler, H Street, Douglas, and Coral Way. Those would be, those would meet the kind of high-frequency bus routes. This is a map showing a half a mile from those intersecting points and also including the metro stop. So you can see it's, it's mostly along our urban, urban areas and then close to the city of South Miami. So the criteria to request a parking reduction from the commission would be half a mile of the major transit stop, it would have to be accessible route from one quarter mile of that property, of the development and the major transit stop. The commission would consider any impact that parking reductions may have in the neighborhood and making sure it's compatible with the surrounding area. And the parking reductions are based on the size of the property. So a greater, larger property would have less reduction, and a larger reduction would be for the smaller properties. And that would be to discourage larger, taller buildings that may be out of character with the surrounding area. And the commission can also grant any greater parking reductions if it's less than 6,000 square feet. And that's all I have. So staff is here, legal's here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I, I have one question on accessible route. Let's say that, that, you know, accessibility, is that defined as ADA compliant accessibility?
Yes, so I think we, we have in our, I can bring up right now what the ordinance had, sidewalks, ramps, crosswalks, any way that's easily to get to any proposed development to the major transit stop.
Okay.
I only have a, a question. I brought it up Agenda Review. You mentioned trolley stops and bus stops as triggering the need for this legislation or compatibility. And I think in the discussion recently, the county took away one of our several bus stops or bus routes that we normally have. So we'll be passing legislation connected to particular bus stops when bus stops now we know come and go. But once we approve this reduction in parking, even if those bus stops disappear down the road, we still have the impact of today's legislation. I know we're bound or required to do it, but it's sort of not well thought out in Tallahassee, but maybe that's the norm these days.
And that could be a consideration the commission makes, if there's a proposed development that wants to take advantage of a reduction in parking, maybe there's a line that you think is not used that often, maybe the, your concern that the, that the county may remove it in the future, and that's up to your discretion.
Right, in each instance, it would come to you all to consider and approve, if, if that's the will of the commission, to the, the parking reduction based on a consideration of the impact of the development on parking and the character of each particular neighborhood.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify, clarify that the ordinance doesn't tie a consideration to a specific bus stop, but it just defines a criteria to determine what a mass transit stop is. And so if a bus stop is eliminated, for example, it wouldn't require amendment, an amendment to the ordinance or to the zoning code, it just, that criteria remains static.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you for the presentation. You gave a good explanation of what we're facing with Live Local. Anything, any comments, any, any comments from the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have a member of the public on Zoom who would like to speak, is Aki Fernandez.
The floor's yours. Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Aki Fernandez, 1542 Mandavia. I'm a resident of the city lifelong, also an architect and a builder. Happy with this proposed, with this legislation. I think it's a step in the right direction. The only thing that I will say after sort of reading through it, you know, frankly, the reductions that are being proposed, while I think they're well-intentioned, I actually don't think it's going to go a significant way in terms of making the final product more affordable. To be frank, they need to be more generous, the parking reductions, if we're actually going to see some of this inventory get built. I'll give you an example. I have a project that I'm working on now, ten thousand square foot project. We can fit anywhere between fifteen to sixteen parking spaces on that parcel, surface parking. You know, under this legislation, a ten percent reduction would be a space and a half, maybe two spaces if I get a good interpretation. That's not necessarily going to make a huge difference in terms of how affordable the units are going to be. I think maybe something that would help sort of give some reference is actually a local precedent that we have in Miami Dade County. There's something called the Urban Center Program. And within the Urban Center Program, sort of very similar along the lines of, you know, trying to give parking discounts for workforce housing along transit. They basically have a, I'm happy to share it with the clerk, and maybe he can distribute it to you all. They have a tiered system, which basically gives a buy-right workforce reduction of twenty-five percent. And then when you are building within five hundred feet of a rail station, you can actually qualify for up to a hundred percent reduction. And then it goes in terms of, and then it reduces based on how far you are from a bus stop, et cetera. It goes all the way to ten percent reduction. And then the way that they do it in terms of parcel size is that parcels less than fifteen thousand square feet get up to a hundred percent reduction. And then parcel size between fifteen to thirty thousand feet get a sixty percent reduction. Parcels greater than thirty thousand get a twenty percent parking reduction. And, you know, that's kind of the way that they do it. It's just an idea. I understand that this is a new sort of program, and we have to, I think the commission is obligated to at least try to make some kind of accommodation for parking. But I think this is a reference that could sort of help guide the conversation, and I just wanted to share it with you all.
Aki, thank you. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Fernandez. He's a very bright, young architect who has an interesting vision and take on potentially offering affordability in this community, and he's doing some interesting projects, not only locally, but throughout South Florida. One of the big issues that we have to find a balance for, and this is something that I talked to with Mr. Fernandez, we've met on several occasions, is the issue of finding that balance when you're reducing parking. One of the issues that we faced today, as you saw with the school, was if you reduce parking, and we really don't have a sufficient transit system. That's why years ago, and I lost on this, I advocated and the commission supported me on a resolution to have actual rail on the South Corridor and not to do BRT. Because I knew that the hundreds of millions of dollars that we're spending on BRT were going to fall short on really delivering world-class transportation. Now we're seeing that already. To really be able to provide massive parking reductions like other cities have done, for example, New York, which some buildings don't even have parking, you really have to have a robust transportation system that really delivers on moving people. Our bus system is not where it should be, number one, and people are not going to ride one, two, not going to ride, excuse me, two or three or four modalities to get to work. What are the modalities? The bus, the people mover, the BRT, and then a metro rail. In certain cases, people are riding four modalities to get to work, two or three hours to get to work. They're just going to stick with their car. So if we do do significant parking reductions, which again, I think we need to do in the future, if we're really going to be able to address the issue of affordability in our community, especially for teachers, you know, police, fire, first responders, the issue has to be, where can we deliver on transportation so that people really, really don't need to use vehicles? So he has an interesting concept that he showed me, which I recommend that you show to other commissioners that deals with ponds facing the, facing the metro rail. And it would be something interesting if that metro rail connected to something, for example, Homestead, FIU, Miami Dade College, Miami Beach, where people could actually ride transportation and use one modality all the way from work and home. So I recommend that you meet with him. He's a pretty sharp guy.
So I'm going to just dovetail what you said because I was down there as well pushing for the rail. And more recently, you know, when I had meetings with our state representatives, I said, you know, don't do what California did. We're going to end up with urban sprawl and no transportation because people will have to have a car to get somewhere. If you want to have affordable living, you have to also have affordable transportation. We always expect these transit services to turn a profit, and I mean, that's just not realistic. We always have money for asphalt. We don't have enough money for putting it in a rail. And some of the feedback I got was, you know, Tallahassee can't put money into the rail. I mean, we're really dependent upon the TPO and for the county to fund that program and get it to happen because it needs to go where people need to go. You need to go out to FIU. You need to get to the colleges. You need to get to effectively get to the airport because our airport rail is not like the one in Atlanta, New York, and DC, where you can walk right out from getting your baggage and hop right on. It's, you haven't taken it, it's eye-opening to take it. And it'll, it'll be very, very patently obvious to you that it's inadequate in our county.
Two other points, just to add on to that because it's all intertwined when you talk about the reduction in parking. We also in this commission, before this commission, I think the, I'm not sure of the two, the vice mayor and the commission we're on, but we also wrote a resolution that I asked to oppose the highway, the highway that was being proposed from Homestead, excuse me, from Ken, though I apologize, that would drop off next to my office there near Blue Lagoon. They were talking about potentially having a savings of six or seven minutes on a commute, but it was a billion-dollar highway program. We as a city, along with five or six other cities, we were the ones, we wrote the resolution. We went to the county in an effort to stop that, and it was stop that, but invest that money in real rail. You know, invest that money in real infrastructure that will deliver and remove cars from the streets. And the second point that I think is critical, this is just since we're talking here amongst the commission, we never get to do this, we might as well do it now, I think it's important, is we have to be very, very strict, and we have to oppose moving the UDB line. There's no, no, do not move the UDB line. To me, it's catastrophic. I think we need to go vertical before we do more urban sprawl. Like you said, it's all about investing. When you move the UDB line, it's more asphalt, and it's more infrastructure that needs to be spent when you should be spending that money in the urban core to really, to really have affordability because people are tired of driving two and three hours to work. The cost is significant, so. Try to meet with them. It's interesting.
Yeah, during our trip to Tallahassee, we did have a conversation with Commissioner Higgins regarding the county's plans and the work that they're doing right now to expand the metro mover out west to FIU. And there was an appetite at the time, or I guess now, from Tallahassee to help fund these projects.
So I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to clarify, mover or rail?
Mover.
That's a long route for the mover.
It is a long route for the mover, but it is something that they're currently have commitments from Washington for funding for. So it is something that they are working on, and it looks like it has legs and will be able to move eventually. There are those on the county commission and in Tallahassee who are looking to maybe expand even further out west and further southwest. But it's, it is something that they're currently working on, and they look like they'll be able to get something done in the next couple of years.
Interesting. My husband worked for the mover. That's basically a bus on top of a, a platform. It's rubber tires.
Correct.
You know, so that, that's what I'm saying. That's a really long route for them.
It is. But I guess that's just the route, the way that they've decided to move. My dad actually was a quality assurance engineer for the metro mover for many years. He worked with our ACM when he was there in transit. So it's, it's definitely not metro rail. You can fit a lot less people. But it does have the ability to move a little bit quicker. That's the way that it has been explained to me. They'll have more of them on the route, and it's also cheaper to get the actual cars versus the rail cars.
So when I was in the TPO before the city was removed because of the census, I knew that we were doing a people mover to Miami Beach. I'm going to look up to see, I'm going to ask Representative, the director of the TPO to send me information because I know that they're trying to figure out ways to do it more affordable, and they think the people mover could be an opportunity to save money. But if they can get it out to FIU, trust me, it's a game changer. So I want to-
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to call, I'm going to call our director there and see if she can send us more info. Mr. Clerk, anything else? Any other?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to E six.
E six is an ordinance to the City Commission providing for text amendments to the City of Coral Gables official zoning code, amending Article One General Provisions, Section one dash one oh four jurisdiction and applicability, amending provisions for the siting of city facilities to include facilities for workforce housing that are owned, financed, or operated by the city, the county, or other public governmental entity as required by the Code of Miami Dade County. Section thirty-three dash one ninety-three point seven applicability in the incorporated and unincorporated areas, minimum standards, exemptions, providing for repeated provisions, severability clause codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Assistant City Attorney Naomi Levy Garcia will present.
Ms. Garcia, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This amendment has come about due to a requirement in the county code that cities provide an expedited review process for workforce housing developments that are owned, financed, or operated by a governmental entity. The code allows cities to comply with this requirement by expanding their governmental facilities review process, and that's exactly what this amendment does. It still provides for notice and a public hearing, and I'm happy to take any questions. It's not directly related to the Live Local Act, but same flavor as it has to do with affordable housing.
I think everything's fine. Any of my colleagues in the commission? Any comments?
I think we pretty much killed it the last time. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to E seven.
E seven is an ordinance to the City Commission providing for a text amendment to the City of Coral Gables official zoning code, creating Section five dash three one four window and hurricane shutters to regulate the closure of window and hurricane shutters and amending the City Code, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section one dash seven entitled penalties to provide a penalty for the closure of window and hurricane shutters outside of the hurricane season, providing for severability clause, repeated provision, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Assistant City Attorney Gus Aviles will present the ordinance.
Can I ask you a good question, Mr. City Attorney? Because I know I've had residents call me before or send emails in regards to code enforcement issues. Their neighbors have their windows closed, shutters for, how have we addressed this before with code enforcement? When those individuals have been turned into code enforcement?
So typically, code enforcement will go out, and our code doesn't prohibit the closure of the shutters. There are other parts of our city code that may apply as to an abandoned property if you have all the windows shuttered. And there's other characteristics you have to meet in order to fall under that definition of a abandoned property, and that's a different enforcement mechanism. This creates a simpler enforcement mechanism specifically for the purposes of shutters. We know what happens all the time. People put them up, and then they're, you know, next thing you know, it's February, and people still have their shutters up. Frankly, for whatever reason, whether it's laziness or they just haven't had a chance, haven't had a time, this is an enforcement mechanism that will address that particular item, independent of all the other issues with an abandoned property.
So what they do is they basically have a conversation with the property owner and speak to them about opening up their, about their windows.
Mr. Mayor?
Opening up the shutters. Yep.
I see something. It's also a building code issue because you need ventilation and you need egress. So you've got two building code issues where you have an unsafe structure at that point.
No, but my question was how have we addressed it? Because I know that residents have sent us emails over the years, said, listen, my neighbor doesn't have one window open in their house. It's all shuttered. How have we addressed it? I've even had it on in the garage, and they've complied through code enforcement. How did we, how did we get it done before?
So I personally have never had to deal with that particular issue before. What I can do is I can find out from code enforcement how they've handled it in the past. I can, I can let you know. I can look into it for you.
Okay.
And isn't it also a fire code issue?
Yep.
Just, just to give, that's, that's one of my major concerns and the reason that I'm putting this in here. I know that is a major fire issue. I've driven through parts of North Gables where you have homes that have shutters in every single opening that's visible from the street. I also think we are trying to keep a look for our city. We go through these lengthy approval processes to make sure that our homes look good and look appropriate to code enforcement. And this is one thing, I understand during hurricane season, sometimes you have that first storm that comes up. You put up your shutters, and it is cumbersome and difficult to remove them. We have folks who don't necessarily have the ability to do it themselves and have to rely on family members. So what I wanted to do was give a buffer so that you have through the end of hurricane season and possibly a storm that lingers after hurricane season and give a two-week cushion after that last storm or after the end of hurricane season for folks to take them down. But I think after hurricane seasons, complete those shutters should be taken down for the reasons that have been addressed.
Any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. I don't see a warning procedure in here. Most things that we deal with, and this is not a light, you know, we usually have a warning procedure.
So this isn't setting a specific enforcement mechanism in this ordinance? It would revert to our standard, which is we can always issue a warning.
Yeah, because some of these, I can understand why there's not a warning on some of the items here listed. But I would like, I would like a warning. Homeowners Association always tells somebody, you know, you have thirty, thirty-five days, take them down. Otherwise, you know, X, Y, Z penalty will be imposed.
And I'm willing to bet that, you know, when you think about it, the person who probably has their shutters up for a long time is an elderly person who, you know, paid somebody to put their shutters up, or a daughter or son to go and put their shutters up. They don't live in Miami Dade County, or they do, but they're busy with their own lives, and they haven't been able to get to it because it's an endeavor. And you're talking about somebody, you hit them with another five-hundred-dollar fine right off the bat, you know, it's tough, you know? And then we get the call, and it's like, remember how, you know how it works? It's like, we send it to you, we're like, show leniency. This person's ninety years old. What do we do?
My me likes had the same sort of thing, and I was the shutter installer.
Yep.
So I had to make time-
Or the person's disabled. Good example.
Like I said, it's not an easy process. I've done it, and it's just, it's not fun.
No, no, it's not fun, but that's why I think, you know, at least thirty days.
Correct. And I thought there was a provision that we would fall back on. That was my understanding.
So a code enforcement officer always has the ability to issue a warning before enforcement. If the commission wants to mandate in this particular regulation that a warning must be issued first, we can certainly incorporate that into it.
I would, if the sponsor would allow me, I would want to make sure that that's memorialized because at the end of the day, I'm pretty sure we're dealing with elderly people, older people, disabled people, who, I don't think anybody wants to live in their house completely shuttered like that. You know, I guess not a pleasant, you don't see any sunlight. So I think, I don't think it's a very pleasant situation, so I think those people probably need to be pushed or helped in one way or another to get those, to get those shutters off.
I'd be happy to amend it to add a thirty-day warning as the first course of action from the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do you have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Entertained a motion.
Move. Second.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E nine.
E nine is a resolution of the City Commission pursuant to Florida Statute one sixty-six point zero four five one approving a blank inventory list of city-owned real property within Coral Gables, which is appropriate for use as affordable housing. This is a public hearing item. Assistant City Attorney Naomi Levy Garcia will present.
Good afternoon again. So this is a Live Local Act requirement. The city and all other local governments are required to adopt and publish an inventory list of city-owned properties within the city that could be appropriate for development as affordable housing. I'm bringing forward a blank list based on findings that all of the city's real estate portfolio consists of parks, retail storefronts, parking facilities, community and recreational amenities, historic and civic monuments, and government buildings that are not appropriate for affordable housing, and that contribute to the economic vitality of the city and the quality of life of residents. This list will be posted online once adopted.
Perfect. Okay. Any comments?
No. No other requirement. I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item F one. I don't know if staff is, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Manager. I think we, I think we needed some more time for, are we ready to talk about it today or no?
Mayor, I think, I think we just got the proposal. I think we need a little more time to-
I'll defer, I'll defer to the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Moving on to item F two. By the way, thank you for being here and reviewing the proposal. I appreciate that. I know you got a lot on your plate, and that was sent to you late. I thought it had sent, was sent to you before. I would have removed it off the agenda if we weren't ready for it.
It's my fault.
I apologize. I know you guys rushed to take a look at that. So moving on to item F two, you want to just kind of put Pittman Park to, Pittman Park to rest? I think we have a graph there, not a graph, excuse me, a diagram, where we can show Pittman Park really something that I would love one day to be able to embark on, but I'm just a little bit concerned about whether it's even viable due to several different things that are, that are kind of, kind of in conflict. Number one, the neighboring, the neighboring building, the alley, you know, trying to close that street and connect the park. Is there anybody from staff that can show this? Do we have anybody from staff that-
Mayor, the Blood Works Director is-
Don't worry about it. We can move on to the next side.
He's coming up now. I'm sure he's coming up from the conference room.
Well, we'll, we'll come back to it.
He's right here. Thank you.
He comes running up the stairs.
It's okay. Caught you off guard there.
Catch your, catch your breath.
Yes.
I kind of give, I gave a preamble, I gave a preamble that this is not a, you know, this is a beautiful project. If we can get it to work, but it's not really going to work. Right. So- My, my apologies. So oops.
It's okay. We're just trying to make sure you get your steps in.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, Mr. Director, I was explaining that Pittman, the idea of bringing Pittman Park into Girada is a beautiful thing along with, along with, with a surface parking lot, but there's many conflicts.
Correct.
The building, the alley, and it just, it kind of makes, makes the idea and concept a little difficult.
So, so just a little backstory, eh, the current plan, which is not funded due to cost, it's some improvements to the parking lot behind the Girada Plaza to match the existing pattern, right? There will also to be some electrical improvements that will allow that park to, on an event, put some bollards, close off the parking lot. I think it's some upgraded electrical, so you could potentially put some, you know, maybe some musical equipment or, you know, some, that, that's the original plan. These plans have been completed, it's done. The current estimated, the last estimate that we have for this, which goes back to March of 2023, was $940,000. So obviously, you know, we haven't been able to fund this. So subsequently, you know, there was a discussion about the potential of joining Pittman Park with the parking lot, and obviously, there's, there's, like the mayor mentioned, that there's a number of conflicts, especially you do have an alley, which we need to make sure that we maintain access to, and the building next door has several entrances and exits that need to be maintained. So, you know, in a kind of general form, you know, there, there's a potential of closing the space in between, as you can see on the picture, on the image, while still maintaining access to the property and to the park. Obviously, at some point, if this is something that moves forward, you know, the county's going to have to get involved, the county has to allow for the street to be closed, there's the potential for some of the signals that may need to be adjusted. If this is something that the commission desires to move forward with, you know, we will need about $35,000 for a conceptual layout and $45,000 for a traffic study, just so that we can, you know, obviously, this is a very crude, you know, we, we can get some professionals to, to really tell us what this could be, and also start having the conversation with the county as to whether we even consider allowing us to do this, right? And, oops, so, that's it. So, you know, what we need to run eyes direction for the commission, whether, whether this is something that we like you, would like us to proceed with, and obviously, we will need the funding so we can start the process.
So, again, I, right now, I don't think it's feasible in regards to funding. I think this is a great project to do something spectacular, especially in the downtown, but I, I don't, I just, unless my colleagues can envision something else and can provide, you know, more guidance, I would love nothing more than to get Pittman Park activated and to do something special there, but I just don't, with, with that building right next door, there are very nice ladies who own that building, but I think that we haven't really, we haven't even had a conversation with them.
Right.
You know, I just want to talk to the commission first, but obviously, with a service alley and how we would have to incorporate the service alley and, and, and cut it adjacent to, to the building, I think it would cut in way too much into the, into the plaza, so it's kind of a tough, a tough project at the, at the current moment, but you never know what happens in the future.
It's a tough geometry, for sure.
Yeah, it is. Well said.
And I think there was, there was definitely an appetite to do something here, having walked the area. I agree, I just don't see a way to make it feasible. I mean, the only way that this would work out would be to close down Galliano Street, and I don't think the county would ever approve that. And again, you have businesses that would be impacted, the parking garage access, so I think maybe in the future, if there's a way to, to do something, it would, it would work. Maybe Park, Parks Department can, can try to find a way to activate Pittman Park with, in, in next year's budget, find ways to, to make it a little more attractive to get people out there. It's just a very small space, too. It's not a very large part.
I think the play there, the play there, and again, we're, we're, we're talking about, we might as well dream, right? Is the play is to be able to buy the office building.
Right.
Whenever it does come for sale. One day it'll come for sale, maybe 10 years, 15, 20 years. Nobody thought those lots on, on Granada and Bird, wherever, come up for sale, we found them, and they went up for sale. So that is, that is a piece of property that if it did come up for sale, I think would alleviate a lot of the concerns on the service alley, because we could potentially do something great there. Because I don't think any 18-wheeler goes all the way deep into that service, because they can't make the corner around that building.
No.
So maybe they're...
Even delivery trucks can't.
I don't, I think it's like, you could do a small little rotunda there in the back, you can do a small little rotunda, you could do something where it goes in, it goes into the, you know, in between the larger building and the building that I'm talking about that those two nice ladies own, you could do something there. But again, th, this is just dreaming, but if you could get, if you could incorporate that building, then you could do something amazing.
That's, that's a whole different conversation.
A whole different conversation. That is a whole different conversation, because you could put a, you know, a cul-de-sac right in front of that building, so if cars come, you can go, you could even go into Pittman Park and maybe take a corner of it and do something great. You would take all those parking spaces on both sides, and then you would have, you know, you'd have the, more flexibility to do something great. But I wanted to bring your attention, because if you see opportunities like this, which is something that I'm going to be bringing, not I'm going to be bringing, there's an applicant that's bringing a project next month that we've been working on for four years, I've mentioned to you before, if we think a little bit outside the box, this one will cost us money. But if you think, if you think outside the box, there's opportunities to get partnerships with developers, landowners, people who, who have a vested interest in, in the city to, to really, you know, do some great things. So this is something just to think about for the future, and, you know, put it away and, you know, see. I don't even want to spend the money on, on conceptual park layout, traffic study, because it's, you know, money's so tight right now that it's not even worth doing it, because we really, it's not feasible. Not feasible.
All right.
Thank you, Armies.
No, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate you working on that. Thank you. Moving on to F3, Commissioner Castro.
Number, number one, I would like to thank Tony Cilio, the city manager, and Douglas Ramirez for meeting with me numerous times and being so receptive to all my ideas and recommendations. And we've discussed so many things, and I know a lot of things have been implemented or are being implemented as we speak, right?
Yes.
Some, I know you have a presentation together, but let me touch base just on little subjects, and then I guess you can elaborate. One of the things that, that we discussed was the BOA, Board of Architects, digital iPads. They're the professional iPads. I know we started that last, last year, and it was well-received. I don't know how it's happening now, but you, I guess you can elaborate that, with that in, in a little bit. Requirements for application also had some changes, and now comments for the BOA are going to be able to be inputted live by the chair, and that's very, very good, because it saves time, and they're also going to be available to the public. When they're using iPads, they're going to be able to make remarks on the drawings. So I, it's very compatible with the flow that the building department, everything went digital. This was the last step to, to have everything electronic. I know that we were working on staffing and three new ones, three new employees. I think it was two for the permit counter, two from, well, three for the permit counter, right? Yeah. Have we done that already?
They, they have been hired, they've started, and they're in training right now.
Beautiful. And we can elaborate with the phone recording and how that's going, and how fast we're returning phone calls, or how long people are on hold. I know we changed a lot of things in the permit application process. I don't know if that's already happening or it's going to happen. I guess you can elaborate a lot on that as well. We also spoke about a standardized method of training for the whole department, depending on, on the, on the employer, the department. I don't know if we've touched base on that, or, or if we're working on it still.
I'll go into that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, I think I'll let you, are we working on the expired permits on NREG? How are we making sure that whatever happened back with the other system is not happening now? I want to make sure that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
That we're not stuck back in this situation. And I, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Douglas Ramirez, Deputy Director, Development Services. Let me start with the two things you mentioned that were not in the presentation, and then I'll go into the presentation. So you had asked me the last two things, one of them was, what was it?
The standardized method of training?
Yes, yes, thank you. So the, the standardized method of training, we, we have, obviously, you know, in Development Services in particular, we're, we're focusing right now on training for code enforcement and for the building department staff, so it's two different scenarios. I've, I've discussed with the manager for code enforcement, and, and we've, we've come up with a plan that we will, just so you can understand, code enforcement as a career, there's a certain core knowledge that you would have regardless of what jurisdiction you're working in, and then there's a secondary knowledge that is, let's just say Coral Gables specific knowledge. And the, the primary core knowledge you can, you can get from going to specific training that's for that career. There's face training, they have face one, face two, face three, face four. These are all classes that we, we had discussed sending our officers to, to get that foundation of code enforcement, the same way as police officers, they can be trained, code enforcement officers can be trained. Then we would also want to focus on training the local ordinances, the local requirements, the, the things that are Coral Gables specific, and that knowledge would have to come from team members that have been here, ideally a longer time, they know the history, they know what's behind the legislation that is in the code, they understand the desire of the commission to enforce those rules and, and how it's meant to be applied. So it's, it's a two-step procedure. We want to formalize and, and send all of our officers to the face trainings, and we also want to set up something where there's a, a responsible individuals for training so that it's consistent. Obviously, we'll have a training manual as well that, that we had discussed, but the training manual only teaches you certain things. The vast majority of the knowledge you need as a code enforcement officer, it's more related to the personal experience of how, how to enforce, how to treat the public. You can't teach that in a manual, like you have to know how to be courteous, respectful, but also, you know, clear on, on what the expectation is. So yes, education is, is critical. We're working on that, code enforcement now in the building department, changing subjects now because there's education there, and it's a little bit different. Yes, there's also certain standardized things that, and then there's Coral Gables unique things, but that, that's a lot more easy to translate from jurisdiction to jurisdiction when it comes to the building department. So there is a manual that is being updated. There've been so many changes in our processes, especially in the last year as we've gone digital, that we've been working towards, and we, we do have a manual, and a manual is applicable for that type of work, particularly the permit clerk. I mean, obviously, the reviewers and all that, they have their codes, but the permit clerks and all of them, it, it would be helpful to them if they did have a, a manual, and we're, we're working on updating the one that we do have, but it, it needs to be updated because our processes are constantly changing. As I'll go into later, we're, we're always trying to find ways to make it better. So those are the two items that I didn't cover in the presentation. All the other stuff, I believe you mentioned, is in there. So we'll, we can get into that, and if I missed anything of what you had asked, we can circle back to it.
If I could give a suggestion, and maybe it is, how do we train our, I, I did it right along with code enforcement, as you're aware of, right? And I think one of my concerns is, how do we know they really know the zoning code? Because there's no assessment or anything to it. It's just with time they learn it, or they don't, right? So what can we implement so that there's an assessment, so that we really know that they understand the zoning code?
Okay, so as I had mentioned, that, that, that's the Coral Gables specific knowledge that ideally you would get from a more experienced person who's been here a longer time, and I've, I've been working with the manager on that, if, if, if we can go into that with him perhaps, but, but like, we, we do have ideas of how to address that, that we had discussed.
Most, most of the code issues are, are general. The International Code Council, ICC, who establishes the, who's part of, who is actually the, the International Code Council, does the international building code, they also have training for code enforcement officers, which is quite general. We have a few things that, that we do extra. I, I don't, I think that those things, once you, once you, you have training, you can pick those up very, very, very quickly. They do have courses for code enforcement officers specifically for that, and that's what we've been, we've been working on, to make sure that they all take those, those, those courses. They can even be certified code enforcement officers through the ICC, through the International Code Council.
Correct, but there's nothing specified to our zoning code.
No, but once you know general, it's like a building inspector. We do have a few things in Coral Gables, but if you're a very experienced building inspector, you can pick those things up, up quickly.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a presentation. First of all, thank you for giving me a chance to come up here.
Absolutely.
Okay, so circling back to code enforcement, this year, thanks to the actions taken by this body, we have two additional officers for FY24. This is allowing us to have additional coverage of the city in general, and, and in particular, you know, the, the smaller lot areas where you, you kind of need the extra coverage, we're, we're gonna, it's gonna be easier for us to provide that coverage in those areas. Recently, we've also began to have extra officers in Miracle Mile and Girada on the weekends to, to keep an eye on things there, to make sure that the code's being applied. We also, in the last couple of months, we, we've implemented the use of body cameras, the same ones that the police officers are using. They trained us, thank you to them for the training, by the way, and we're excited about that, because it, it, it provides accountability in, in, in all, every sense of the word. We also updated the uniform designs, and we also, some time ago, we implemented a Tyler 311 complaint system. So what that system does, it is, it allows the citizens to go online, file a complaint, and also follow up with the officer as needed with the complaint that they provide, and it allows us to track them a little bit better than just receiving an email where you can kind of get lost in the shuffle that way. This way, it's all very formalized, and it's integrated to work with our NREG system. So as I was mentioning, this, this system, we, we've, we've rolled it out, not too many people know about it, and we, we've, we're trying to get the word out about it that, and you can see there how many complaints we've received since May, and it kind of fluctuates depending on how busy it is that time of year. Now, I do want to point out something that not everybody knows. It's in the Florida statutes, and it has to do with anonymous complaints. Basically, according to Florida statutes, an officer may not initiate an investigation based on an innocent complaint, but there are exceptions. I'll get to that. So a person who wants us to investigate something would need to provide their name So a person who wants us to investigate something would need to provide their name and address so that we could investigate it. Now, if we feel that there's an imminent threat to public health, safety, or welfare, or imminent destruction of habitat or sensitive resource, then yes, it can be anonymous, and we will act on that immediately. But I think it's important to understand that because sometimes people call us and they don't want to give their name. And our hands are tied in the sense that this statute exists. And I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit here to this body. Okay, so I'm gonna go briefly over this because this is well-known at this point that the telephones seem to be working well. We let out, we unveiled a new telephone system. And it's designed to handle larger volumes of calls more efficiently between different individuals. And as you can see on the graph on the left, the average wait time, you know, has fluctuated for the last several months. But it's three or four minutes right now from when you, from when the system answers, which it answers immediately till you get an actual person speaking to you. This is an average, obviously, there's outliers. But like, the data is pretty good, I stand behind it. And we're excited about that. Nobody wants to call the building department and be put on hold for 45 minutes. And in anything that happens like that, we aim to improve those kind of things. We don't want to see that happen either.
And this is so great because there's actually now accountability to who is taking longer, how long they're actually responding to a call. So this is really great compared to how we were doing before.
Thank you. The other graph I put in there is just to give us a gauge of how many submittals we receive in a month. I was just curious to put that up there, just to have an idea. And also the number of calls, and roughly how many calls a day. I thought that information would be useful. Another thing that we added was a callback function that would allow customers, like when you call, like other places, if you would like us to call you back, we will call you back, please give us your number. And now we have that option, and I'm being told that that's working wonderfully. Everybody's very happy with that, they don't have to wait, and they can get their phone call back. Okay, so here we have average wait times. Obviously, in December and January, like they've gone down, the lobby's been empty. But if all of you remember how it used to be when we were on the third floor and how crowded it would get up there sometimes, and we would put all hands on deck to help people. I haven't seen that in a very, very long time. So we're very pleased with the wait times in the lobby.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Like many other municipal authorities, I visit the city of Miami, Miami-Dade County. Don't you agree that besides whatever we're implementing, a lot of it has to do with the simple fact that you no longer have to go to municipality to submit your plans? You can submit them electronically. I think that the electronic process, if you avail yourself of the knowledge on how to use it, is a process that runs seamlessly. For example, you look at Miami-Dade County, and they're doing an incredible job when it comes to derm, Wassa. Every time that we submit something, our clients submit something, you can see it, it's done perfectly. I think a lot of it, a lot of it has to do, it's a mix of, you know, obviously, our staff, the new software that's been in place. And I think that people feel a lot more comfortable with coming to this new building instead of coming to the third floor, which was a little bit of a, you know, a little tight, a little tight. But I think it's a mix, I think it's a mixed bag.
That's an understatement.
A mixed bag.
I did that a few times.
So I remember, I remember that for a long time, so.
Yes, sir, it is nice to know the convenience of not having to come in and pay for parking and go... The time that you save, you could upload at 3:00 in the morning. You don't have to wait until they're open, and so it's very nice. I put a little more information there about number of visitors. But to get back to your bullet points at the beginning, yes, we have three new permit clerks that are gonna assist us with plan routing and with the call volumes. We're always looking for ways to improve the experience for the customers, whether it's when they're there, whether it's when they're calling, whether it's when their plans are there. We really want everything to go smoothly for everybody, as smoothly as we can possibly make it go. We continue to look for ways to improve. Not too long ago, we developed some overdue reporting so that I can, we can more easily track which reviews are overdue and how overdue they are, how many there are. And then also, like, the plan routing, if those are, if the plan routing is overdue and the feeing at the end of the project, when it's time to get your permit in your hand and you're ready to pay and everybody has approved, all of that, like, we have reporting now that it's very easy to follow up and say, hey, what's going on here? Please, would you get this done? None of that existed in the analog world, right? It would kind of go sit on a desk and people would work on it in order, and that's how it would work. So we're very excited technologically. We're light years ahead of where the analog world was. So we're very excited about that. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the IT and all the other departments that have been involved in all of this. It's been incredible, their team, HR as well with the new hires. I can't go into how much support we've received, but it's team effort, the whole city, not just Development Services. Okay, so the Board of Architects. We're finally moving towards digitizing that process. We've been working with IT, we're continuing to get the technology in the room to where it needs to be so that this can happen. We've already had some dry runs with the Board of Architects, without the Board of Architects, with the City Architect. To come up with a smooth process that's gonna work with the tablets, the board members will sit in their respective positions, they'll have their own tablets. The presenters will present on touchscreens, they'll be able to show you the project, manipulate the plans. And then the board can also mark things up as they see fit. And then at the end, once the motion is made and seconded, and they have voted and it has passed, they put the results on the spot with the applicant there. They can type it in, the applicant can see the comments. So if he's not clear about what he needs to do, he can clarify it on the spot. And as soon as they hit done, that's already posted. The applicant doesn't have to wait a week for our staff to input it, to write handwritten... The architects would write handwritten notes on the plans that you would then have to go look at later. All of that is finished. Now, it's all based on the motion, the second, the conditions, the approval, the disapproval. This is, it's all gonna be very clear, it's gonna be immediate. And we think it eliminates a lot of expense for the applicants, all the paper. It's a lot of time to print, to reproduce, assemble, the whole thing. So this is still in process. The BOA was out for several weeks as the holidays were here. We haven't been able to meet with them again about this. We're gonna meet with them again this week to go over the process that we were coming up to get their feedback. It's a back and forth between the City Architect, the board, and IT and us. To come up with a process that's gonna work as smoothly as possible, to make it as quick so the board members aren't there all day. Like, our idea is get them in and out as efficiently as we can. So we are looking at getting this done in the near future. I would hesitate to give you an exact date, but perhaps the end of January, early February would be great. I would love to see that happen.
Anything else?
Are you done with your presentation?
No, no, I still have more, I haven't answered all your questions. So, we've also published additional tutorials to assist others in their... There were only a few before, and then we've made five, six more. This is with the help of our Martha Patton's team. So another team, again, it's a team effort, the whole city works on these things.
Thank you.
There we go, okay. Permit application automation. So, in the past, the permit applications have to be filled out, as you know. And there could be a lot of back and forth, this was done incorrectly. So what we're doing now is, we're gonna have a wizard that you go online and you fill out the required information that will end up on the permit application. The system will not allow you to continue until you have corrected any deficiencies, right? So like, when you're ordering a shirt on Amazon, they don't let you put it in your basket until you say what color it is and what size it is. I'm not trying to say it's as simple as ordering a shirt. But like, we're mimicking that, where it stops you at the door so you don't waste a week thinking we're gonna do something. And then you're just gonna find out later that you did something wrong. You're gonna find out immediately. Now, the other thing is that, as far as the signature on the application, we've changed a few processes. Those things can be done anytime before the permit is issued. So we're not stopping you at the door for that anymore. You can still have your plans reviewed, as long as you pay your upfront fees. We will review them, and it will go around, and you'll get all your comments. And then the issues that you might still have that the automation didn't catch with your application, the signatures, that sort of thing, you could do it anytime before we issue the permit.
So before, the process was being stopped and that information was being asked for, but that was kind of, I think we modified it now so that we don't waste that time initially because we still have all that period for reviews. So, thank you for being so receptive.
That's correct.
So as soon as you pay, the application moves forward. If you do not pay, it does not move forward.
And we're gonna include a disclosure when they submit the application that says that.
Yes, there's verbiage there that we have prepared. We haven't rolled it out yet, we've been taking care of a lot of things lately. But we will, we do have the verbiage already written where it's gonna advise them about that. And that also, you know, if they wish for the owner to be informed that the permit's going to expire, they need to give us that information.
And to have an initial payment to apply is very important. That way, we don't get frivolous things submitted in which there is no, there is no way to... There needs to be skin in the game when you apply for a building permit.
Did we publish for job opening, for I heard you, all of a sudden I heard you say something about a wizard?
If you know anyone's from Hogwarts, they could apply.
There's a pool right there of wizards.
I appreciate that. That's all, I don't know if I covered all, everything you wanted to know about, but that's all. Thank you for your time, I'm sorry if I spoke a little bit too long.
No, 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 thank you, thank you, you were very informative. Thank you, thank you all.
Mr. Commissioner Minen, there's item F4.
Yes, I asked the City Attorney's Office to talk a little bit about Form 6 that now, it used to be the cabinet and the governor. Disclosure forms now it applies to municipal elected officials. And I was reading, and it's like, throughout the state of Florida, I think Naples lost six elected officials, they've been... It's created a sort of destabilized a lot of the local governments. And now, I think they're having special elections everywhere. I just wanted the community to know that there's a new requirement that's impacting cities across Florida.
Certainly, thank you, Commissioner. We have a very brief presentation, and in fact, you cut it in half with the description you just gave, so thank you for that. But yes, Senate Bill 774, adopted last year, requires mayors and elected members of a municipality to file the Form 6. As the Commissioner mentioned, it used to be a different group of individuals. So this just highlights the sort of three main changes. We are certainly working with our ethics experts to make sure we give you all additional training on this. But just for the public, just a brief overview from the change from Form 1, which is what elected officials used to file, to Form 6. So Form 1 is a review of finances over the course of a year. Form 6 requires a snapshot of a specific date, December 31st or another date. Form 6 requires net worth disclosure, disclosure of assets, liabilities, and all incomes over $1,000. It's a different threshold with Form 1. And additional secondary income disclosures at a lower threshold in Form 6 than Form 1. So it's sort of an additional disclosures at lower thresholds from Form 1 as a general matter. But as the Commissioner mentioned, it has been in the news a lot recently and wanted to provide an update to the public on generally this change. And like I said, we're always open to meet with you all and work with our experts on any questions you may have specific to that.
When I was reading the, sort of the breakdown of what's required, how it's required, it's a lot more complex than what was, you know, in the past, had been required, sort of generic. But it's complex, I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure this body, but other are gonna, when it's time, have questions of how detailed it is and how to proceed.
Certainly involves a lot of experts involved.
Yeah, we're gonna need guys, it's new for every city, so I just wanted to bring awareness to it.
So Commissioner, our office is working to schedule a presentation for you all on... We discussed it briefly during our annual ethics training, but now that the instructions have been put on, there's more information. And as we get closer, we're gonna have a presentation for you all on this topic. And we'll, of course, coordinate that with your schedules.
Appreciate it, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F5.
So just a brief topic of conversation. I was not exactly thrilled by our decorations on Miracle Mile this year. I think we can do better. I know that we did approve a budget for it. I know that there were issues with the timing and with storms and the lighting. But I would like to see going forward, and I did receive some complaints from residents about the decorations on Miracle Mile. I would like to see this central avenue in our city be a highlight which ends at the menorah that the mayor purchased, or Santa, which is over 60 years old, and the park that we have every year on our Christmas tree. I think it's important that Miracle Mile be highlighted going forward. So that's what I would like to, I would like to see going forward, is just an improvement. I know that we did in the past rely on the bid for some of this as well. But I think I would like to see an improvement.
Mr. Manager, if I may, because you and I have talked on multiple occasions in regards to, we've received some emails and some kudos from business owners and people who have visited in regards to how much better the holiday decorations look this year in comparison to past years, right, correct?
Yep.
Just to give a little bit of background, because I know that two of the commissioners, when I hear when this happened, when the bid, when the bid was basically removed from the picture, we were in the process of working with them to come to an agreement, and we had to scramble. To pick up the pieces.
We had two weeks to put it together.
Two weeks, your team did a wonderful job, along with the manager. This was basically like a dry run first year. In regards to the Santa Claus, you want to replace the Santa Claus? I probably received five emails from people saying that the Santa Claus is historic. And like, don't touch my Santa Claus.
Who wants to replace it?
I don't know, I'm just telling you, you said something about the 60-year-old Santa Claus.
No, I said leading up to it, we should, we should make sure that the avenue leading to all of our historic decorations and the menorah, it needs to measure up because I think...
I thought you wanted to replace Santa Claus.
Not at all, I think, I think, there was a request to make it, to render it historic. And actually, to that point, I think we need to do something to protect it because it's kind of just out in the open in a corner. We need to make sure there's something in front of it protecting it.
Besides that, how much did we spend on the park in the last three years?
On the park or on Miracle Mile?
No, no, Miracle Mile's another thing, on the park.
I don't know, I don't know.
And I know it was a big investment, Mr. Manager. What did we, because we hadn't changed the decorations in decades, correct?
We changed it about three years ago, and we are up on the new contract now.
No, but what was the number, it was massive, it was a lot of money.
Yeah, I think it was $250, $300, something like that, I know that...
So we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of money on the park. And obviously, we've also spent, how much did we spend on Miracle Mile so far?
Miracle Mile and Girada for the holiday decorations, $147,000. And my budget was $150,000.
Yeah, so the number, did we buy these ornaments, or these were just rented?
There's only a certain portion which was bought. Basically, they were handmade for us. So the ornaments that are hanging from the trees and the ones that are on the median, the stars that are on the median, that is the only thing that we will continue with for the next three years. So two more years we've got of that. And then everything else, so about $64,000, we have the ability to go out, and we are gonna go out, to get bids for the rest of those decorations. And we did that because we, you know, you know, I hear you, Commissioner, but I think decorations are really subjective, you know? Some people could like it, some people not. And so, we really wanted to start with a palette where you could see decorations. Last year, the ones that we had, it was one ornament per block. And that's the only thing we were able to get, and it was lit at night as well. So it had a lighting component to it, but there was only one per block. And I really don't think that was enough for the street. I don't think it was significant enough for the type of street that we have.
If I may, if you would educate the Commission, over the last few years, we've been talking about the lack of lighting, full-time lighting throughout the year of the oak trees and obviously, Christmas tree lighting.
Yep.
That to me has been, I think is priority number one. You know, when you talk about Christmas, the ornaments are beautiful and the Santa, but I want to see lights. I want to see, I want to see lights hanging from the oak trees.
Like, for a full year?
Again, I wouldn't have an issue with it. I don't have an issue with it. I think, but we have to, but that's something that would, people have talked to me about it, and it makes a lot of sense. We could do something beautiful, well-done, tasteful, doesn't have to be bright neon, it can be, you know, a softer, softer color. But I think that it would benefit the street significantly, and it would give a festive kind of feel to it throughout the year.
And I think that the lighting is really what detracted from the decorations because you couldn't even see them. I mean, the stars on the palm trees, I was hard-pressed to find them because you couldn't see where they were, correct?
So, so two things. The string lights that are on the trees that are on Miracle Mile, the swales, they're currently lit only up to the trunk. So we, this was a project that was put in place or to replace those. That was a project that had been started by the former Business Improvement District. They paid 50% of it. We are picking up as part of the budget process. We did ask for the $79,000 that it would cost to complete that project, and so I did receive that. That is going to be a project that's going to start in February. We didn't want to do it in the middle of the holiday season because we weren't sure when it would be done. And so, because our budget just started in October, we wanted to have enough time to be able to have it. So that's a year-round lighting that will be installed. And we have talked to that vendor, and they know that they need to go up some of the branches. I'm not sure how much string lights were purchased because it's not our project. But we want to go up.
But this is something that we've been talking about, Commissioner, for two years. I know it was the bid fell apart and everything that happened. But I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that we deliver on that this year, if possible.
I, to me, and I had a lot of feedback, and even on our, you know, comments in the community, and I think the mayor was touching upon it. It would, I would love to have Miracle Mile be a go-to place in the holiday season for folks. folks to come to Miracle Mile to see, I mean, it should, I mean, in my perfect world, Miracle Mile should glow during the winter, during the holiday glow. And people's like, hey, let's drive to Coral Gables Miracle Mile, so we can just see how beautifully lit, you know, and create sort of a winter wonderland concept. I think that's what, without that, you can, we can put all the decorations possible on trees, and it'll look like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree, which sort of, you know, it's dipped over. I would like to create the, what is it, the wow, I want people to feel wow, and the lighting is the key, I think. And since the mayor did mention that we have, the Commissioner Castro, Commissioner Fernandez weren't here when we were whole, you know, the whole bid, not now, but could you or somebody perhaps, maybe in February, give a history of the responsibilities for Miracle Mile and how we now have transitioned to the city doing it? So I think I want to fill in any gaps, because now, obviously, we're tasked with it, and we all want to put our best foot forward. But if you could do just a brief how we got here, that would be helpful. And perhaps, you know, go ahead.
So I'm gonna dovetail that. As I hand it out to you, this was a communication with residents, and it was on Nextdoor, so I wanted to make sure-
Very popular topic on Nextdoor.
That, remember, make sure I put my communication back to the residents. What they would like, you know, with the main complaint there, there was lack of color. So this was an invitation that I sent to them to participate, and there is a willingness of the residents to participate. But our, our history on trying to do something with Miracle Mile goes back when the bid was here, Jeanette Slusnik came in and visited every single one of us who were in office at the time, basically imploring us to dress up Miracle Mile. I brought in pictures from Winter Park's main drag showing what they had done.
I remember that.
People want some color.
Yeah.
People want some flash to show there, but I, but we don't want it too bright.
Right.
Either. So maybe, you know, I don't know if we need to dim down some of the other lights, so that the decorations are the showcase.
No sunglasses needed.
No sunglasses needed. So some of those vertical poles, and we talked about Kelvin rating, I don't know if we can either through a film or something, just kind of tone them down a little bit, so it's not hard to look at, and so that the, the lights on the trees and the decorations on the trees are the center of focus, as opposed to the glare that you get from some of the lights on, on the mile in one corner and then at some of the crosswalk areas. So I just wanted to share this communication with you all, with the resident. They are interested in participating. You might get a reach out from them saying, hey, you know, here's our ideas, and we can all collaborate, and we get a better, better pizza, so to speak.
I also think it's important to keep in mind that while we want something at night, we do need to, you know, get a good bang for our dollar, too, and make sure that they're really impactful in the daytime.
Correct.
Just, just, you know, keep that in mind as well, because we do have a big population in the daytime, and we want to make sure that they enjoy it also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had the opportunity to be at the Rotary Club meeting, I think it was in November, and they had a presentation by Dr. Feely from the University of Miami, who talked about the potential changes to our tree canopy if we continue to have a higher temperature in South Florida, this summer being a perfect example, and-
The same guy that talked about the oak trees and their tolerance to heat?
Correct.
Okay.
Oak trees and mahogany's as well, and the impact that they had to heat. And it was interesting, I think oak, live oaks, he was talking about a two-degree temperature change would probably kill off most of our, our live oak trees. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, and maybe have the city have a conversation with, with Dr. Feely, and make sure that if we are changing and doing a tree succession, that we do take into account potential changes to, to temperature, to make sure that five or 10 years down the road, if we do have an impact of a couple of years of, of two-degree or three-degree change to our, our temperature, we don't lose a lot of our tree canopy.
Dina, before you respond, could you give us a little background in regards to the existing tree replacement program that we've had going on for the last, I don't know-
Absolutely.
Almost a decade.
Hello, Commission Mayor, I'm Dina Bellouellen, Green Space Management from Public Works, for the record. Our current tree succession project, we launch every year. We have a commission-fed budget of $200,000 per year for that tree succession project and, you know, every year. Right now, there's, the 2023 project is coming out of procurement. We intend to award it to the contractor, hopefully within the next week or two, to start. We're planting 111 total trees as part of this year's project, and as soon as we finish this one, we roll right into next year, where we already have approximately 90 to 100 trees ready to plan. We put this out to bid with contractors, because of the size of the project is, is large. So it buys about 100 trees a year, average.
And if you go right now to, I was there last week, if you go to our Public Works Department, where the actual yard, you'll get to see a lot of the oak trees that are basically ready for, to be, to be transplanted from that office to the area where they're gonna be relocated forever in the city. So you can see all the trees are basically ready there for the contractor to take them to be planted somewhere in the neighborhoods.
Right. In our Public Works yard, we have about 40 oaks. We're trying to green them up with more water before we plant them. They, they dropped all their leaves, and they, they're a little brown for our taste, so we're waiting for them to green up.
I used to do that by sinking them in six inches of water or more, because they can tolerate about six weeks' worth of being in standing water, any of the ones that went into shock, and then I would see the growth. But right now, they're dropping their leaves anyway.
Yeah.
So a lot of, a lot of yellowing there. I mean, where we have the most heat generally is in our central business district. I've seen some, some plantings that, when they were put in, you know, depending on where the location is, the ones that are more isolated with more asphalt around them and reflection down are the ones, of course, that suffer the most, and then some of the others of the same variety of tree have no problem making it. So it's, it's planting, location, and conditions, and soils, and all those things that go into whether or not they, they will survive. So I did see live oaks out in El Paso when I was there. So I don't know if it's really necessarily the heat level or the lack of a freeze, and that's, I guess, some research that someone would have to do on whether or not they need a freeze, but I know that that's true with many other varieties of trees, and why we can't grow sycamores down here and so forth. It's not because it doesn't get hot elsewhere. It was 102 degrees when I was in Chicago one year. It's not the heat so much, it's, you know, does that tree require a freeze, and where is it, where is it planted? So it was a brutal summer. My kids wanted to go shopping. I just kept, is it air-conditioned? Was the only question I kept asking them. So yeah, looking forward to the trees getting planted.
All right. So what I would like to see done is just have a conversation with Dr. Feely and report back to us on, on what recommendations he would have.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm familiar with Dr. Feely's research. We've, our Arbors, our Senior Arbors and I have looked into it, we've read his articles.
You've incorporated, you've already incorporated some of his-
Yeah, so basically, just in a nutshell, I don't want to take too much time, but his concern is, due to climate change, any tropical tree species migrating up to different areas. And as we have a heat change in temperature, he was concerned live oaks might migrate further north, because they're, they're not a tropical species. So, but in our tree succession planning, and here's our list, and also, we had zoning code changes this year to encourage more tree diversity, and we're following a lot more tree diversity. And here's the list, if anyone's interested, but you can see a, a big variety of different natives, flowering trees, with a few oaks, because oaks are still very viable today. They're our most sustainable tree. Our, our Senior Arbors stands by them. They're so resilient in hurricanes. You can see the longevity of them in urban areas. Look at Coral Way, they've been here 80, 100 years. Today, they're still viable. And so the concept of what's going to happen in the future because of unknown climate change is, is good research to be familiar with, but we're not, we, there, there's so many different opinions on it. So that's where we are.
All right. I appreciate it.
Sure.
F7. Mr. Clerk, I have some pictures on, on the white-way lights that I'd like to put up. So after working on something for about four years, we were able to get the white-way lights, and I think that in a time where there's, there's so much negative news that we're facing, that we get, that we get thrown every day, I think this is a positive story that gets zero coverage from the news. But when you talk about historic preservation in the city of Coral Gables, you're talking about exactly this. Everybody talks about the city beautiful, George Merrick, and actually preserving our history. What you see here right now is a project that, for four years, we worked on, and it, it means a lot, and I'll tell you why, because it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, I think that we have less than 30, 30 white-way lights. How many white-way lights do we have in the city?
Somewhere around there, Mayor, I think it's 30 or 40.
Around 30 or 40. So we've seen a significant decline in, in our white-way lights, and this is, this is truly, truly our history right before our eyes. If you get a chance to see those white-way lights in person, you know, they're, they're, they have so much beauty to them, even in the current state they're in, because that's just minor rust. These were actually in very, very good shape. And the employees took so much pride in bringing, bringing these down to the city. What you have here is about 10 or 12 that are in good shape. You see them there. They don't look like they're in good shape, but trust me, they are. They're, you know, they just need to be treated. You see one that was even painted green in the back. They say City Miami on them, City Coral Gables. They have FPNL. Nobody really understands and has an answer of how they ended up, or they ended up in Broward, but I think it has to do with, with maybe an FPNL executive that lived around there, and then these were basically surplus and they were used. Some of these are 100 years old.
Amazing.
And then there's, and then there's currently, and there's currently eight more, eight more in Broward that are in pristine shape, in pristine shape, that they're actually up and operational, and they actually have the crystal on top. And we're also getting those, the manager and his team have been working diligently to get them. So I just wanted to, to kind of show the Commission on, you know, this is a project that, just like the underlying, you know, just like a lot of other projects that we've embarked on, that take years and years and years to come to fruition. And with persistence, our team has been able to deliver something that, you know, takes us back to what made our city so special, but also protects our city. These are the kind of projects that I, that I really enjoy highlighting, because these are, these are projects that, again, just are good projects to, to really showcase, and things that we've been working on for such a long time. And I want to thank staff for their hard work, and everyone here, and the individuals from Broward who cooperated with the city to make sure that we can get them here.
I remember when Dr. Carilia Carvajal came in.
Yes, thank you for bringing her.
I mean, without her input, we wouldn't have had these.
Yes, thank you for that. Yeah, Carilia did a big job, and she was awesome, and we mentioned her in all the, in all the media and social media that we put out there, she was instrumental in helping us out with that. So hopefully, we'll get the other eight in the next few months, and we'll start restoring them, and then we'll, we'll, we'll put them back to their splendor, so they can be in the city. Moving on to F8, this is something that I'd like to have staff, we brought it up last time as a discussion item, and before, I hope to make it into an ordinance, I'd like for us to, for staff to give us an update in regards to where we stand on this.
Can I please have the one slide? So right now, we're, we're going through the white-way lights project. I think we ended up already with a phase one, which has been completed, and at the last meeting, you, you expressed a very, very concern, you know, with the, with the weed whacker, you know, getting too close to the pole.
They've been hitting them.
Yep. So we had Dina, and her crew, maybe, you know, we discussed about maybe potentially putting a ring of like, Ulite stone. You know, obviously, if, if we agree to proceed with this, you know, have to put more sod around it, et cetera, but I, I wanted to show you guys, I wanted to show the Commission more or less what it will look like, so that if we get a blessing, we can go ahead and proceed with the ones that are already in place, probably within the next few weeks or so. And then moving forward, as the new poles get installed, you know, that will provide an additional level of protection to the existing ones. And as far as the, the maintenance, I think what we, what we discuss is to have, you know, bi-weekly, bi-yearly inspections.
Then, I don't want to give you more work.
Sure.
Twice a year, every six months?
Bi-yearly, bi-yearly.
You have 30, 30 or some of them, it shouldn't be that difficult, you know, I don't want to, I think every six months is appropriate to inspect them and clean them.
Eventually, it'll be about 80 of them.
That's a good thing.
You know, we have right now, I think it's 20-something that are in place, and a few of the older ones, by the time you add them up, you probably have about 30-ish or so, but eventually, we're gonna have about 80 of them. I, I, and it's gonna be a good mixture of restored and replicas that have been made. So, so you're absolutely right, you know, every, twice a year, we clean them up, and we actually have specifications from the conservator, if they need to be touched up, how to do it, the right kind of paint, and, you know, we have all that information already.
And the reason why, the reason why I brought this up, and I want to make it into an ordinance with the support of the Commission, and bring it back in the next commission meeting, is because I walked by several of them, and I was looking at them, and they had already started to get some pinging, a little bit of rust marks. Those were taken back, because they were there under warranty, but it's not, it's not that the, it's not that the process to restore them is, was faulty. This is my opinion, and I'm not an expert when it comes to this. I just think that wear and tear, if you hit it with a weed whacker, if you hit it with a bike, if you tie a bike to it, and you keep tying a bike to it constantly, 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 you know, it, it just wears and tears on it. If there's an accident to it, eventually, the rust, we live in a salt climate, will, you know, penetrate it, and then you'll have an issue in your hands where, if it's not, if it's not looked at every six months, just with a simple, you know, you clean it with a simple soft brush, whatever is recommended by your staff, but at that moment, they'll be able to note, hey, we have an issue with this, with this, with this white-way light, let's address it before we have to spend another $2 million like we did to, to refurbish the white-way lights.
And in addition to that, you know, the replicas are made of aluminum, but the, the ones that are being restored are cast iron, and cast iron will rust without, without a proper maintenance.
We need to have eyes on it.
They will have to be retouched every so often, so.
The sun will rust, Mayor, but it's very resistant, as you saw by those other-
No, no, they're in good shape.
It's a lifetime, it's a lifetime pole.
I had a simple question, but I think, Hermes, you answered it. In terms of maintaining and cleaning it, it requires a trained, somebody trained in doing it the right way, I would imagine.
The cleaning part, if it's just a matter of, you know, you don't want to pressure them, right? You just put a little bit of soft water to clean it out, because, you know, they get dirt on, they get smog, they get stuff, and I, I think that's just simple.
And I asked, because if it wasn't that complicated, I thought it would be a great community event, since the community is so supportive of our white-way lights, to have someone in the community and help clean and maintain, you know, an event kind of situation. But if it's more detailed, obviously, we need to-
I think washing them is okay.
I think it's a good idea, Commissioner, but these, these lights are electrified, so it's probably-
Right.
Yeah.
I'd be careful, I would just, I just want to be careful, I don't, I don't, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, just like we do a downtown cleanup.
I mean, we can, we can pull a name out of a hat.
How about, how about a photo op? Because not everybody does everything with the same skill set level as the next person.
They can do the bucket, the bucket challenge while doing it, I don't know.
I guess the direction that we need, I mean, how, how do you feel about the Ulite circle around the base?
I like the Ulite base.
Okay.
I think it's nice. I think, again, you were talking about only 70 to 80, so it's okay if we spend a little bit of money on doing something that's, that's respectful of this, of this historically important, you know, light. I think what we need to do is, is, Mr. Manager, is, is through the city attorney also, is for the next commission meeting, present an ordinance that, that explains how we're gonna protect the base, and when are we gonna clean it, and I want to codify that. I think it's important to codify, so it never falls through, through the cracks, to ensure that this gets done. Because trust me, when, I think it was three or four years ago, we took $2 million to expand our white-way lights, that was a painful, painful budget item, okay? Painful budget item.
Mayor, the 30 or 40 that are original are cast iron, not aluminum, so those require Mayor, the thirty or forty that are original are cast iron, not aluminum, so those require a little more maintenance.
Right, right. So I think the light on the bottom two helps get it up above the, you know, water that's sitting, it would help rust it as well. So the, what is the optimum thickness for that to be, you know?
Right. We'll work that out with Dina, her team, and I, you know, I think that's a good example. Obviously, eventually, you'll sod around it just to kind of log it in, but we want to make sure that, that the commission got a opportunity to see it before we proceeded.
Well, we will work it out from an aesthetic and also a practical point of view. We want to make sure that, that we protect it, slow it properly, and have the right aesthetic.
Is everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam, Madam City Attorney, can you help me draft something for the next commission meeting?
Certainly.
Thank you, Hermes. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to co-sponsor that.
So moving on to F nine, this is, this is a, a really important item that I've been working on for probably three years. And to me, if you don't know who Sergeant Carl Ennis was, he was a gentleman who passed away in the armed forces in, in combat, Coral Gables resident, young man. I know his family. His family has, the manager has met with him, I think, one or two times. I know one time for sure, two times. His story, it's a story that I want to give it the respect that it deserves, and I want to tell that story, and I want the commission to tell that story when we name the park. We've been trying to do this for some time, and I would like for the commission to honor the legacy of this Coral Gables family and this young man by naming a park after him. I know Fred's done a lot of legwork. Your team has done a great job. You've met with them multiple times, finding the right location, making sure that everything was appropriate. And I'd like for you to give a little bit of background about, about what we've been working on for. It's been a few years now.
Yeah. Thank you. It's actually been, we, we've gone through a couple of different iterations of what we were gonna do for Sergeant, for Staff Sergeant Ennis. It was, first we were looking at a memorial type instead of a park naming. Then we kind of looked at, the request was to look at a park naming. I did meet with the family, met with the, with his brother, then we had a subsequent meeting with his mother, and we looked at different locations. And what we were trying to find is we're trying to find something that was suitable, that had a connection for their family. Their, the family were Coral Gables residents. They attended, they lived more in the south area, so we were looking for stuff in the south. As you know, a lot of our parks, we don't have that many in the south. But we were able to find, we do have a location that is a small, open space that right now we call Tiziano, Tiziano Green or Tiziano Park. And at first, we thought it might be too small, but then after mom and the brother went and looked at it, they liked the location. They thought it was a good connection. So that's what we presented to them. We do have this park, but we also had, as the commission had directed us to go through a process for two or three other ones. So we were, we're, we, we have all of them on the docket for our Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting this coming Thursday for approval on all of them. It's this one, and you guys had directed us to look at a location for Dorothy Thompson and also for Sally Jude. So we were looking at all three of those. They'll all be presented at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, but we've, we've worked with the family. They're happy with that. If we're okay with that, we'll, we'll, we're gonna start moving on what we do there in terms of a marker, whether it's a sign, whether it's a stone marker, and we're gonna work with the family. They haven't told us exactly what they'd want as, as a naming monument in there.
Okay. So do you recommend that we wait after we're done with, with Parks and Recs, and then as a sponsor, I'll be probably bringing back all three of these?
Yeah. So what I'm gonna do is, based on the motions, hopefully, if everything goes well with the, with the advisory board meetings, we'll bring it back as a, as we do as a, as a advisory board item to point whatever will be on that, that agenda. And it'll have the recommendation, the motion for all three with the names and the locations. Because that was, with the other two, this one, we went and worked with the family on the location. The other two, we had to discuss some locations and things.
I just have one question. When we mentioned Thompson and Jude, we also mentioned Roxy Bolton. What happened with that?
I don't think I got direction on naming Roxy Bolton. I'll check. I, I was given direction on, from what I understood, was Sally Jude and Dorothy Thompson. I know there was discussion on Roxy Bolton, but I didn't know that that was a motion that was passed. But I'll, we'll look at that. I don't recall Roxy Bolton.
All right. My, when I was briefed on gender review, and I'm so glad we're doing this, and I'm glad we have this discussion. I'm totally supportive. And my only question was, at that time, did it go to Parks and Rec Advisory Board? And I'm happy to know that it's gonna go. It's, I just want to follow protocol. I know in terms of advisory board, they advise, and at the end of the day, the commission decides amongst ourselves what we think is the best path forward, taking everything into consideration. So to me, I just want to make sure that we follow, you know, our typical protocol. But I think this is wonderful. You know, I'm, this is the right thing to do.
All right. Just an update. Fred, thank you. I think we're, we're coming to the, to the finish line on all three of these. So I look forward to seeing them next, next commission meeting. F ten.
F ten is a resolution of the city commission directing the city clerk and city manager to schedule bi-monthly presentation and protocol ceremonies.
Good afternoon again. Just give you a brief overview of the resolution presented to you before, presented to you today, sponsored by Commissioner Fernandez. This resolution directs that the city clerk and city managers schedule bi-monthly morning ceremonies at the police and fire headquarters dedicated solely to presentations and protocol documents. That section of the city agenda, the exact date and month of the ceremony may be moved occasionally to accommodate staff and the city commission and the general public. And as time and urgency demand, we may still have presentation and protocol documents on our regular city commission agenda as drafted.
So this was, I had brought this up early on, I think back in April. We had had a couple of discussions about it. Our human resources department had gone back and done a survey of staff. It's, from the numbers that were presented to me, police was overwhelmingly in favor of, of moving the presentation protocols to this, this format. Fire was pretty much an even split. General employees were the ones that were in favor of keeping them here. But as the months have gone on, I think we have seen that we have residents in the room who are here to address items, members of the community, the chamber, and we continue to have lengthy presentation and protocol, which I think would benefit from a specific forum where we are properly honoring the individuals or the organizations that are being honored in presentation and protocols. So I wanted to bring it back and make a motion to move forward with having a specific ceremony to honor these individuals and these organizations that's not in the commission meeting, so that we can focus our commission meetings on commission business.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, I was gonna, go ahead. I was gonna address it. We just got an interesting email that I wanted to show you. May I, Madam Vice Mayor?
Well, yeah, I, I received it as all as well. Nadine Alaman, who was here this morning.
Will you post, will you put that up?
And says, good afternoon, all. This morning, I had the honor of being present at the commission meeting to witness a proud moment. My son, Officer Michael Alaman, receiving an award. The experience was not just a personal highlight for our family, but was made extra special by the setting, a platform where his dedication and accomplishments were recognized before the public eye. The presentation and the heartfelt words spoken during the meeting added an invaluable layer of significance. Integrating awards to our police officers into a commission meeting amplifies the significance of their achievements within the broader community. By incorporating those recognitions into such sessions, we emphasize the importance of law enforcement in our society and showcase the commitment and sacrifices made. This is true for all of our first responders and public service members. This inclusion allows for broader audience, a community, from community members to local officials, to witness and appreciate the commendable work done. Conducting these award ceremonies within commission meetings offers a powerful message of support and appreciation for our police force, and under, it underlines the transparency and accountability of our governing bodies, ensuring that the commendable actions of officers are acknowledged in an open and inclusive environment. This recognition not only boosts the morale of our officers, but also fosters a stronger bond between law enforcement and community they serve, promoting the sense of unity and mutual respect. I want to thank you for setting the stage with your continued support and inclusion of these important recognitions during the commission meetings. It is incredibly meaningful and impactful to, way to honor their service while fostering a deeper connection between the community and those who serve and protect it. So I, I understand your point, and we all can do our, our part on reducing the length of our, some of our comments. But I read this into the record to make, make it very, very clear how the feelings of the individuals that were here this morning. And if we reflect upon the last sunshine meeting that we were at regarding proposed change of our zoning code, I think we had eight or nine individuals of the public there. It's a huge difference when you have people here that, that watch commission meetings and watch reruns of commission meetings. They're unlikely to be watching reruns of a separate meeting at a separate time because they're interested really in what's happening here at our commission every day. You know, what, what is it that we're doing? So I, I think that Mrs. Alaman's comments adequately summarize my viewpoint on this and where I stand on it. I think it's, it's real important that we honor our first responders in a respectful manner and not in a separate meeting where they're less important and like second-class citizens.
So if I may, I want to dov, I want to dovetail off your comments. I horribly agree with you. So this was sent to the entire commission at twelve forty-six, and it caught me off guard because, you know, it was very well written. And she was so adamant about, about honoring, about having, having her son honored before the commission. The commission requested for a poll to be compiled, and we went through the process to really understand what the residents, excuse me, what the employees wanted, whether they're police, fire, or general employees, their employees. What were the final, what was the percentages in that, in that number?
I believe it was, the, the survey was conducted by HR.
Yeah. I'll ask the human resources director to answer those questions for you.
Yes. Good afternoon. The survey was conducted back in August of last year, 2023. So two hundred and five employees responded that they would like to keep the current practice of being recognized here before a city commission, and a hundred and seventy-four employees responded that they would like a separate ceremony.
So my point is that, listen, it's, it's something that works. If you look at it today, right now, it's two o'clock. We have, we have three items left that are city manager items that will, will fly by them. We'll be out of here by two thirty. I think, again, when you talk about the employees, all the employees that I've talked to, they like, they like to have these meetings, be present before the commission. And I don't, you know, I don't think it's really that much of a big deal. We went through the process to get input from, from the employees. They like it here. We want to move forward with that. And I think it's appropriate also when you hear from parents and from individuals who are being honored before the commission. It's their moment. It's their moment to shine. It's their moment to highlight all the great things that they do for the residents or for the business community. And I think it just makes sense to keep it here.
I don't think the moving it diminishes the recognition. And I think the Vice Mayor's comments of calling it second-class citizens is inflammatory and unnecessary. The change is just about making sure that the focus of the commission during commission meetings can be focused on the needs of residents, and the recognition still takes place in a forum which is specific to the recognition. And I think the, the, the conversation that we've had, and even Commissioner Castro added to make sure that there was some sort of reception following, so that they could interact with the members of the commission, not spend two seconds here taking a photo with a quick handshake and a photo. I think it's a place where we can focus on the individuals and focus on those that are being recognized and making sure that they're properly recognized, and that the focus of the commission during commission meetings is commission meetings. I've had several commission meetings since August where the presentation and protocols have been close to an hour and forty-five minutes. And that's time that could have been focused on the residents who are in the room waiting for their items to be called up. And we had, you know, in some cases, timed certain items that weren't called up in timed certain times because we weren't able to get to them on time. And we had at least one instance where a member of the commission was interrupted because another person had to leave the room, and we wanted to make sure that they spoke. We wouldn't have gotten to that point had we had a specific ceremony for our employees and for the presentation and protocol. And that's the reason that I'm moving forward with this today.
But, but I think you also have to also come to terms, and it's the same situation that we've had in the past with other decisions that this commission has made. Let's get, let's, let's test, let's test the waters with the employees. Okay? The employees still vote one way, we're gonna vote against the employees. You know, for example, the same thing that we were talking about, the possibility of, of doing November elections on, on, let's, let's do November elections, let's get the pulse of the community, let's vote on it. Now we don't want to vote on it. To me, I just think that it's, it's, you may want that, and I understand that, but at the end of the day, the employees who are the ones being recognized are the ones saying, we prefer to be in the commission chambers. Honor our request. If it was, if you, if it was the other way around, two hundred and five people against it, I'd say, listen, let's move forward with what the employees want. I don't have an issue with it. It's not the first time that we've changed, we've changed gears on, on issues. But I, I just think, with all due respect, I mean, I think that it's more agenda-driven than it is actually driven to, to benefit the, the employees. Commissioner?
I commend you for bringing this back. Thank you very much. I thought this was a lost, a lost item. I sincerely think that the way that the survey was worded was not to the best outcome, because I don't think the words of, the, the questions were to really make the employees understand that this was something special for them. And as far as me, I, I could pledge to be there every single time in any award ceremony. So if that makes it any more special, I don't know if the rest of the commission's gonna be there. I'm pretty sure most of us will be there, and it'll be even more special. So I ha, I'm like, with all my heart, I support this.
My question is for the administration, for the clerk's office, because I think this occurred, this issue came up because right after the elections, we were having an hour and a half, two-hour presentations and protocol section of the, and it was meeting after meeting after meeting. And we were, you know, here nine, ten, eleven hours at the end of the day. And how can, I mean, I'm looking for solutions. How can we better manage that situation? Are we the only city that has protocols before the commission meetings? Do some have it at noon? It can't, I'm looking for something other than one or the other. Is there a hybrid? Is there, because an hour and a half, two hours, which everybody's deserving, the people that are recognized, obviously deserved today was a perfect example. But why are we having an hour and a half to two-hour protocols when there are folks with items that we're, we need to get to?
And to answer your question, Commissioner, this would still allow for certain items to come before the commission on, on the day. This would not preclude us from having presentation and protocols during this meeting. It would move so that items that are known to be at a certain time and, and are, are recognitions of, of our employees to have a special ceremony to recognize them. So it, it is a hybrid, which we worked out from the conversations that came about during the, our initial commission meeting. Because originally, the resolution that I had presented was everything would be moved to, to this ceremony. This is more of a hybrid based on the input that was gathered during the commission meeting.
Commissioner, and this is, I want to give you another, another opportunity. Excuse me?
You're a little funny sometimes, but continue.
Okay.
Another opportunity, go. I'm listening.
Another, another opportunity to kind of see it another way. When Mayor Valdez-Falley was here, we used to start the commission meetings earlier, and it was seamless, and it wasn't an issue. We had it downstairs. I think people enjoyed it. It wasn't an issue. We started thirty, forty-five minutes early. We got here probably nine fifteen, and we moved forward pretty quickly. For some reason, I thought that maybe being outside pushed the protocol documents faster. Maybe I'm wrong, but it feels like it was kind of a much faster process. I said, let's get here earlier, and let's get it done. I'm more than willing to meet here at eight o'clock in the morning, at eight thirty, get it done. And we meet the goals of, of the employees, who they stated very clearly by the poll that we took, that they would rather have it here. And we meet the goal of getting here as quickly as possible, and the residents can get here at nine o'clock, nine fifteen, to have their items, to have their items heard in a timely manner without any delays from the protocol section of, of the, of the meeting. Does that, does that, does that opportunity work for you?
That's definitely one option. I know we discussed that when this first came up. Other than the presentations and obviously the recognition, employee of the month, you know, it's September, so we're recognizing, is there a way to manage how many protocol items are per commission meeting? Can we cap a little bit better? Because if you look at it, there are months that we have an hour and a half to two hours. Then there are other meetings that we have, we're done in forty minutes or thirty-five minutes. Is there a way to manage what comes before us?
I think there could be. From the employee perspective, there's not that many employees that we recognize. It's an employee of the month, at least from the general employees, right? So that's one employee per month, not including police and fire. They're recognized every month. And so what we do, what we tend to do is, we usually save, so right now, we're in the process of, of selecting our November, December, and January employee, and we're gonna bring them before you in February. So we usually do about three general employees per commission meeting every four. So we usually do about three general employees per commission meeting every four or five commission meetings. As to the protocols, that all depends. A lot of the protocols are directed by you all, right? It's certain disability awareness month, Alzheimer's awareness month. There's a lot of different types of protocols that HR doesn't manage, that's usually coming out of one of, one of your offices or one of the different departments' offices. So can we cap it? We can cap it, but then...
Then I have a suggestion. Can we identify, just brainstorming, identify those items that can go in the morning and perhaps have the other ones maybe at noon? Split it so that we can start the day getting to work and getting to business. Have particular, identify which ones would be the morning protocols and then at 12:00 or 12:30, we stop for 30 minutes to do the other. That way, at least we get the day rolling. Otherwise, we're, we're all here happy to recognize, but we're, you know, it really delays the ability to move the agenda.
I would support that.
I also have another suggestion as well. And we've been utilizing it, and that is these timed certain items. For instance, the time that there was an 11 o'clock timed certain, we paused for a moment because it was already 11:15. And I understand that Commissioner Fernandez was presenting at the time, but we paused for a moment so we could take a speaker, you know, who was a businessperson, a resident of our community and allow them to speak. So we can, we as a commission can better organize our commission agenda by having timed certens for things that people do want to come here and speak on, other than the general time that we have for public comment. We could even put the general time for public comment as a timed certain as well, so people know what time they can come in for the general public comment. It's just, you know, a matter of scheduling. I mean, I deal with schedules every single day when I'm dealing with courts and various people come in. And, you know, anytime that you ignore the overwhelming desire of the police or the fire people to be recognized in a general meeting where everybody's there as opposed to just eight residents showing up, and I'm talking about whether or not this commission shows up, I'm talking about whether residents are seeing what's going on, then it is a second-class designation that you give to somebody when they're not in a general meeting itself. Because that's, that's the purpose here, to recognize. You don't recognize somebody by not including them.
But I think second class is also stating an 11:00 AM timed certain, not taking the item until 11:57, like we did today, to give preference to another item because we had folks from the chamber here. I think we're bordering on just choosing who we want to select as first-class citizens when we are saying, "We're going to stop the discussion on this item," which everybody was listening to and we had members in the room willing to, who were here to speak on the item, residents, because we had one person who we wanted to discuss one item on and we decided to take that item first. Again, I'm happy moving forward with this. I do not believe that any employee is going to tell you that they believe they're second-class citizens because we're doing a special ceremony to recognize them. And I'm happy to make a motion to move this forward.
Before you make your motion, I think also what you're not recognizing, because you mentioned that we, that we're not following on the schedule, we're not keeping timed certain. We have one item that was timed certain today and the conversation ran long in regards to the school. But let's be also very clear, we're also incredibly lenient, incredibly lenient on the time that we give to all residents that speak. The gentleman who spoke not once but two times on the same issue, which is something that we don't have to do, spoke for probably 12 minutes. Because I was looking at one point, he had gone over by three or four minutes, which is perfectly fine. He had spent, he had spent a huge amount of time working on that, on that, on that presentation. If we were to do things like other cities, and by the way, I think we're the only city in Miami-Dade County that gives this much deference and this much time to talk and some of the, some of the things, I was trying to get things in line in regards to public comment. Again, not stripping public comment, not, we tried that, we tried to get it in line, but we give so much time in public comment that the meetings last very, very, very long, very, very long, you know, delaying. And then we also have, Kixen Point, we have actual debates up here, Madam City Attorney, we have debates. We just had those, those nice family members, the Tojos, were having a full-fledged conversation with the representative for the school along with our staff and we were going back and forth. As you know, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, does that happen in any other city that you're aware of?
I can't say, ma'am. We are very lenient, or I should say, very flexible in public comment and extending time for, for members of the public.
Madam City Attorney, I know that you want to be as respectful as possible, you know the answer is no. The bottom line is very simple.
It is the answer. It's not a yes or no answer.
It is a yes or no answer. Commissioner? It is. Because what ends up happening, and I'll give you an explanation, you know this very well, because you've visited many cities. What ends up happening is that they give you a public comment section in the beginning of the commission, in the city of Miami, city of Miami, Miami-Dade County, other businesses. You speak about your issue and then the item is presented and the commission deliberates and we come to a conclusion. There's no back and forth. I mean, I, I've seen other cities the way they do it. I'm not saying that we do it the right way and they do it the wrong way. What we do the wrong way, do the right way. I'm just saying that we spend a lot of time giving a lot of public comment. I think that Commissioner Menendez, you talk about finding a middle ground, you talk about finding, to being, to being on both ends of the discussion and taking a little bit from here and a little bit from here. If you want to move forward on this, that's fine, but why don't we apply what Commissioner Menendez said, which is, we do a little bit in the morning, we do a little bit in the afternoon, and that way we address both issues. And I'm willing to meet here at 8 o'clock in the morning. I think that's perfectly fine if you want to do it then. I'd be willing to meet here at 8:30. It's not a precedent, we did it under Raul and I think it's, and it worked perfectly well. I never had an issue with it and the entire commission was present, all the employees liked it. So I'm just telling you, meet, meet us halfway so we can get this done and move on to leave here by 2:30.
Commissioner Menendez and Commissioner Fernandez, would you be open to the idea of maybe having this first ceremony and then seeing what the input of the employees is, if they'd like it or not?
I think we've already done that, though.
No, 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 the actual ceremony, not asking the question with however we worded the survey questions, actually having it, them being in it, and then them deciding, "Yes, I like this more" or "No, I don't like this more."
As a pilot.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I think we, I think it would be great to just do what Commissioner Menendez said and we move on.
I like the option that Commissioner Menendez suggested. Let's, let's try to organize our schedule better.
I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I'm fine with starting earlier, but I know there are family, folks that drop off their kids and that time, you know, is precious to a lot of people. And we're already here for, we're already here for, and staff included. I would like the pilot to be morning and then like 12:30, see how it goes.
Okay.
If we get through it fast, great. If not, then I'm going to support a different option. But I look to you and the administration to identify how you group them. If it was me, I would group morning certain types and afternoons timed certain, a certain time, you know, and, and see if we move things forward. I'm just, if it doesn't work, then I'm going back to my original.
I mean, we can certainly look into that. I like the idea of maybe employees in the morning, most of our employees do start at 8:00 in the morning, so we, we can have the employees easily here at 8:00 or at 8:30 in the morning. And then maybe our standard protocols in the afternoon, that we can certainly try something. And if an employee works in the afternoon, then maybe that we can move that employee for the 12 o'clock slot.
And that's, I'm happy you mentioned it because I didn't want to, I was going to mention that to Commissioner Fernandez. Our city starts at 8:00 in the morning, we don't start at 9:00. So at the end of the day, the employees are here. So to me, if we have it at 8:00, it's even better because they get to work even faster. That was one of the issues that we had, we had when Mayor Valdez-Falda was doing it. So...
I want, I want to sweeten the pot, because why not? So just because we've had that conversation before on another topic, maybe we can have 12:30 protocol and take a break for lunch.
Yep.
That's how I sweeten the pot.
But there used to be a timed certain 12:30 for lunch, what happened to that?
Well, that's what I'm trying to bring back.
My stomach hasn't forgotten about it.
I know, but that was approved and it just was done away with.
So we'll do, you know, if it's okay. I mean, it's not my item.
That really, that really sweetens the pot.
Well, that's what I figured.
12:30 timed certain. My stomach approves.
I agree with that one.
I think I'm hypoglycemic right now.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we, to the next commission meeting, put together something that deals with a morning and an afternoon session and we see how that goes with the approval of the commission through the manager and we find our solution for that.
Okay, so I guess what you're suggesting is 9:00 AM, we start with presentation and protocol. 9:30, we do timed certain public comment?
Why don't we go earlier? Why don't we do 8:30? But why not?
Because there are members of staff who are coming, not from here. There are members of staff who live in Kendall, who live in Homestead, who live...
But hold on a minute.
You're affecting...
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager, yeah.
When do, when are employees supposed to be here working?
8:00.
Okay, so that's their job. So if they're coming from Kendall or from anywhere they're coming, at the end of the day, they got to be here by 8:00. So, so...
I will withdraw my idea. Look, simple.
Wait, my stomach objects.
I know, sorry. Trial run, 9:00 AM, protocol, obviously we do the, you know, pledge of allegiance, 9:00, maybe we're done by 9:30, 9:40, we go to public comments, timed certain, 12:30. And if we're having a good day, we have lunch right after, maybe 15 minutes, and we come back to wrap up. At least we have structure and I think if we're all supportive of that structure, it'll help us make it happen. So that's just me. If it doesn't work, we'll come up with another.
Is that a motion? Want to second that?
Wait, what time is the second?
Hold on a second, hold on, hold on.
No, no, because I have a question.
12:30.
I can, I can second, I just, I just have a question about what time is the second presentation protocol?
9:00 and then 12:30.
And then lunch right after that?
Right after.
Okay, I'll second.
So question, is this direction to start this next meeting or is this?
Yes.
Yes.
Out of favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
By the way, employees will still be here at 8:00 though, so we can start at 8:00. Moving on, thank you, guys.
Start with lunch at 8:00.
The way to a man's heart is through his stomach.
I'm good, trust me, I can keep going. Let's move on to H1.
H1, City Manager.
Yes.
You're on.
Celeste Walker-Harman, Chief Procurement Officer. This is a request to authorize a piggyback for a cooperative source well contract on behalf of the Fire Department, so that they can have access to fire apparatuses that were actually solicited through another agency. So we're asking for permission to move forward.
Any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, let me, let me just read it into the record, I apologize.
We're on a roll.
A resolution of the City Commission accepting the recommendation of the Chief Procurement Officer to authorize access to a piggyback contract through the Sourcewell Cooperative and Oshkosh Corporation in an amount not to exceed the available budget for firefighting equipment pursuant to Section 2-946, use of other governmental unit contracts in Section 2-947, cooperative purchasing under the procurement code.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to H2.
H2 is a resolution of the City Commission accepting the recommendation of the Innovation and Technology Department to waive the competitive process to purchase AT&amp;D communication service maintenance and support as a special procurement bid waiver pursuant to Section 2-691 of the procurement code.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
This is to continue paying for the 911 communication center.
Oh, wait, we, we, we got it.
High priority.
We saved you. And you waited this entire time for this.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to the final item, H3. So this is an item that I've been working on with you for a while and we're talking about North Gables, North Gables dumping, and I know that we're trying our best. So tell me a little bit how we're doing.
So we have implemented eight sites, four in the north, three in the south, one in the west, 15 cameras, low footprint cameras, easy to install, low, low cost. They have been very effective.
Yes.
So Assistant Director Nelson Gonzalez put together two slides really quick to show you the data, how this project has had an impact, reducing the number of illegal dumping issues.
Do we put up an illegal dumping sign? Have we put up a sign yet?
No.
Okay. Remember, we talked about it, how are we going to catch these people, how are we going to send them a fine, how are we going to curb this?
We are working with the CIC of the Police Department and Code Enforcement. And whenever there is a complaint, the CIC reviews the footage and then action is taken upon.
But how do we send somebody a ticket? Let me, let me handle this, one second, please.
Okay, I, I'm not sure about that part.
Yes, law?
So Mayor, as you know, there's, there's two ways to proceed. There's the code enforcement route or the criminal route, if it rises to the level of illegal dumping under, under Florida statute. But as you know, there's, there's challenges with that because of course the state attorney's office is overwhelmed with, with other, you know, crimes. And so sometimes perhaps these are not prosecuted as, as, as other crimes are. In terms of code enforcement, there is also a challenge there because we have to identify who's the person doing it and then the actual individual. And, and then of course the enforcement of the fine is also a challenge, as you know.
The issue that, the issue that we're facing, and you guys have done a great job with technology, I appreciate everything you've done, the issue we're facing, I'll give you a very simple example. You know adjacent to the school, school that we love so much up there in North Gables?
North Gables.
No, that's in the, that's in the south. The, where we have, they come and did the show here last week, two weeks ago. Crystal Academy, I was trying to clear academy, Crystal Academy. They have a, they have a four-unit building across the street from Crystal Academy. Every single week when I drive by there, there, there is beds, entire pieces of, you know, full, full bedroom sets. I know that it's not coming from that building. It's probably somebody who parks there at night and unloads and just leaves it there. It's every single week because I, I call Antoine and our staff, I send, I take a picture and I send it to our staff to make sure we address it, because there's a resident that lives adjacent to it, always calls me about it. So how are we, how are we going, this is more for the manager, now that we have all this information, what is our next step? Are we going to do some undercover operations? Are we going to, what is the next step? Are we going to put a sign that says, "You are being filmed"? Maybe that's a deterrent enough for some, for these people to go somewhere else? Because we're not the only city that's dealing with this. I know, I know a good friend of mine, Miami-Dade County Commissioner Keone McGee, who was a state senator before, is dealing with massive, massive dumping in Homestead, major issues. So how can we address it, Mr. Manager, so we can do something to really curb this? Because I know that the technology is there, that's the first fight. Now the second fight is how do we address it?
The problem here is how do we prosecute it, which is very difficult. That's the problem.
Can we arrest them if we do an undercover sting and they're dumping? You want to get back to me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, see? I don't want to put anybody on the, on the spot. So can we do this? See, look, check this out. Look at these guys, this is exactly what I'm talking about. They go, the TV, they don't even live in that neighborhood, they're probably just installed that TV in someone's home and instead of taking it to the dump, they just dump it in that trash pit. In North Gables, there's two handfuls of locations that I, one of them is right next to Bashur on an empty green lot that we, that we've mentioned several times, it's just full of dump, the residents are tired of it. So now we did the first battle, our very astute technology team, look, here's a, here's a mattress, just dump the mattress, walk away. They resolved their issue, now that mattress becomes an issue for the residents who live across the street. issue for the residents who live across the street.
We pulled stats a year before deployment, and it's been 10 months after deployment, because they were deployed on March 2023, and the reduction is 90% or more.
Okay, good.
So the cameras are deterring the dumping in the areas where we have deployed.
Okay, I need your advice, I need your guidance, okay? While we work on this for the next commission meeting, what we have at our disposal, what do you think about putting a sign up that says, you are being videotaped? I mean, maybe we can get it to 100%, nobody will dump there. I know.
I like that idea.
You are being videotaped by Coral Gables, look up, smile, you know, something to catch your attention, you know, smile, you're on camera.
Coral Gables, candid camera.
I've been working on this with you guys for four years. For you to tell me that we're down 90%, that's a big win. That's something that I'm very proud of.
They actually use the system where they get reported on.
And I'll tell you why, because it's a massive cost for the city that we have to absorb. We have the garbage, we got to throw it away. And number two, it's the real, it really affects the quality of life of those residents that live in those neighborhoods. They call me all the time, hey, listen, they just dumped an entire bedroom set on my block, what do I do?
So perhaps for the next legislative session, let's think outside the box and see if there's, you know, we have those tickets for people that run red lights, if we're able to hit people in a pocketbook.
What about if, what about if we showcase those videos? What's the legality behind that?
Not unless you hit them in a pocketbook.
The police department, they redacted them because it's an active case, so they cannot.
The cameras is after the fact, just so that we have it.
Yes.
Is it, take the mayor's idea, have somebody with a microphone going, hey, you, you know, stop.
That wasn't my idea. Wasn't my idea.
Or a hologram of a hula. A hologram, a hologram.
It could be automatic.
My idea, which will freak anybody out, is imagine you take out, you start dumping a, you know, big mattress or a bedroom set, I'm telling you, go to Crystal Academy, you'll see it.
Oh, no, it's bad.
I have pictures, dozens and dozens of pictures. Imagine you step, you walk up to it, you drop a chair, and you see a sign that says, you're under surveillance, look up, the camera by Coral Gables Police, they will immediately take that and put it back in the car. Because again, they don't know, they don't know the extent of what we're going to go to, they don't know that we're going to go to their house, they don't know if we're going to put them on some sort of notice or some sort of site, they don't know.
But to Commissioner Castro's point, are we able to propagate that video on social media? Because if we start putting those videos on social media, that'll be a deterrent, because that's going to start getting back to them.
So as a director said, you know, when it's during the investigation, we can't release that, but we can look into, you know, whether there's any kind of legal confines to kind of putting these videos out there and what the implications of that might be. I'm happy to look into it.
Can we do the signage that the mayor said, for something like that?
Mr. Manager, can we do the, while you work for next commission meeting, while you work for the next commission meeting, to put the item on the agenda with some, a little bit of guidance in regards to what teeth we have, can we also get some, an update on the signage? I like to have, I would like to have a sample sign in the next commission meeting that says that we can put on a light post, it says, look up, I don't care what it says, just something that says, you're under surveillance, be careful, or something to that effect. We are, we will take action, we will prosecute whatever the legal terminology is deemed appropriate by our city attorney, we move forward.
What's the amount of the fine?
We'll figure that out.
If we're allowed to fine.
If we're allowed to fine.
If we're, you know, that's why I talked about legislative session.
I just want to congratulate.
It will be prosecuted, prosecuted to the full extent of the law.
Exactly. I just want to, I want to congratulate you.
It's a toothless dragon.
I want to congratulate you, Mr. Manager, we've been working on this for a few years, I just want to say thank you, thank you to your team, thank you to Alberto Parhus in the back, the manager's team, you know, to me, when you tell me that we're down 90% in illegal dumping, you know, I know that we're doing better, because obviously it's a deterrent, when the people see the camera. Now when we put up that sign, I promise you, it's going to get even better. But again, it's a testament to your knowledge, to your hard work, and to your department, Ramundo, okay? So thank you, and make sure you tell all the guys, all the guys and gals in your department that we're blessed to have them, and thank you for the hard work, and that the proof is in the pudding because of your hard work, okay? And thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate you working on this meeting for a while. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. Madam Vice Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to mention?
I'll see you guys in the next meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Castro, we're going to go ladies first.
Happy New Year to everyone I have not seen, and see you next commission meeting.
Commissioner Menendez?
Is my image ready? Not to do with movies, we have our third community meeting to discuss green space, additional green space in our central business district. This time it'll be at the Coral Gables Museum, January 17th, at 6:30 PM, it's sunshine. We're taking the comments and the questions that were asked in the first two meetings, and we hope to come back with answers and a way to hopefully come up with a consensus on how we can move forward. It's an important issue, it's much needed in our central business district, we've engaged the community, and this is the third meeting, and we hope to come up with a plan of action going forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Fernandez?
A couple of items. First, I want to thank the fire department for an incredible drive-by with Santa, I think a lot of smiling faces throughout the process. Through the manager, what I would like to see going forward, I know that technology is there, Director, to maybe have a platform where people can enter their address and kind of see how far Santa is, and if he's already passed, because a lot of the calls that we were getting while we were on the truck was, oh, we missed him, we didn't see him, maybe there's a way to incorporate the route, and for them to do it, I know it's similar to what the trolleys currently have, so maybe we can incorporate that, they can enter the address, it'll zoom into their map.
We can see them.
And people can see, and I think that'll make even happier people going forward, because some people were out there two or three hours waiting for Santa, they know more or less what time, and they can have their breakfast and then come outside. The other thing, a familiar face is always in the room with us, Maria Cruz, her husband passed away today, please keep her, and your thoughts and prayers?
Our condolences and prayers.
Our condolences and prayers, wishing him Godspeed. I have two quick items. Number one, this weekend is the farmer's market, I recommend that everybody go out there and enjoy, it's going to be a wonderful opportunity to meet with your friends and your neighbors, it's the best farmer's market in South Florida, best vendors. The second thing is, my office is going to be embarking on a clothing drive for the next month, it's for men. What we're doing is, we've met with two different organizations, we're going to be accepting any clothing, shoes for men, suits, shirts, anything that you don't want, ties, these are opportunities for individuals who are hard on their luck, who are preparing to re-enter the workforce, and we're going to be preparing them for that next opportunity in life. And then we also are accepting just regular clothes for men, this is for a mission here in South Florida, we had the pleasure of meeting this individual in my office hours multiple times, and we're going to start putting something together, and I'd like for the employees and for any residents in the city of Coral Gables, we're going to start collecting the clothes in my office. And I ask you, just like I did with the clerk, when we did with the toys, you were incredibly generous, just bring, you know, any of your lightly-used, you know, cared clothing, shoes, socks, ties, jackets, belts, anything for men, we're going to be collecting it over the next month, and it's a great opportunity as we, you know, just finished the holiday season, to continue giving, because this city is very generous, and we have a lot to give thanks for. So I want to say thank you to everyone who joined us today, especially to our staff, who did an incredible job getting us ready for this meeting, I want to wish you all an incredible week. Thank you, God bless you, and God bless America.
One more question, what's the deadline to bring the clothes in?
We're going to be doing it till the last day in January. So you can come by, you can just drop off any clothes, no donation is too small, there's a lot of needy people in this community, and we welcome it, jackets, jeans, anything you have that can be reused by someone in this community.
Can you send a social media asset to?
I'm working on all that, our team is working on that, so we'll have all that information, but I wanted to get a jumpstart on it and put it out there, because again, we meet every two weeks, so I only have two bites of the apple to mention it on this platform, so thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.